Hello? Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Little Rock Planning Commission in February 13, 2025. And I know we have some people standing up in the back, and we apologize for that. We still have people outside as well. And this is going to be a long meeting, so please bear with us, and we will try to get through it accordingly. We have a couple of things here before we really get started, but what I like to do now is, since I called the meeting to order, I want to get a roll call to determine a quorum.
Yes, sir. This is the roll call vote for the Little Rock Planning Commission for February 13, 2025. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Hodges?
Here.
McDonald? Commissioner McDonald? Person?
Here.
Samad?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Trimble?
Here.
Russell?
Present.
Vickers?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, and we actually have a new commissioner on the board, and that's Commissioner Kevin Trimble, so we definitely want to welcome you to the board here, sir, and thank you for your service. All right, and this is actually, you know, because of inclement weather, last month, we were actually canceled for the meeting, so we have a big agenda. That's why we want to try to stay on court. We want to respect everyone's time in here. And going by, before we even get started with that, we just want to let everybody know, under each action item, there's a total for 20 minutes for the opposition and if you're for it, and that's total time. So if you have 20 people in here that's opposed to a certain item, essentially each person could have 60 seconds, all right? Or if you want to reserve your time, you can yield your time and give it to it. But I just want to let everybody know that because we have so many items on the agenda for today that, you know, time can go over. So we just want to make sure we be respectful and respect every action item, a timeframe, okay? And before we get started to move forward with any amendments or consent agenda, we actually have elections for the new year. So we will have the elections real briefly, then we will have a chair and a co-chair elections. So at this time, Brad, if you, if we will, will we have just members or the board making selections of who they want and then vote on it? Okay. So, all right, so at this particular time, we will start with the co-chair. If anybody would like to nominate anybody on the board for the co-chair at this time, the floor is open.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Baxter for co-chair.
All right. Second. All right. Do we have any other nominations? All right, well, we have, for the record, we have Commissioner Baxter here for nomination for co-chair. All right, and I apologize, we do have, for the record, Commissioner Alicia McDonald here, and she's present. And Commissioner McDonald, we did have a selections and nominees for co-chair for the Planning Commission Board, and the only nomination we have for that was Commissioner Baxter. If you'd like to make a nomination, you can. If not, we can move forward. We actually had a nomination, and then we had a second on that. All right. So at this time, we can have a vote for co-chair for Commissioner Baxter. I guess it don't need a vote, really, it's unanimous. Yeah, so, yeah, so at this point...
You can do a voice vote.
Yeah, so, yeah, so all in favor for Commissioner Baxter for co-chair? All right?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyways, ayes have it. Congratulations, Commissioner Baxter, for co-chair. All right, and the next one we have is for chair for the Planning Commission, and at this time, I will open the floor up for any nominees.
I'd like to nominate current Chairman Vickers.
Second.
Second.
All right, any other nominations for chair?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand up and nominate myself for chair.
All right. So we have, any other nominees for chair? So we have Commissioner Russell and Commissioner Vickers for chair, and at this time, we can, we can take a vote. We will start first with...
But, Mr. Chair, we can simply take a roll call vote. When your name is called, just state the nominee you're voting for.
Okay. All right, at this time, we will go ahead and take a roll call vote, and if you vote for Russell, Commissioner Russell, or Commissioner Vickers, make that statement when your name is called.
It's a roll call vote for to elect a chair. Commissioner Brown? Who would you vote, Vickers or Russell?
Uh, Vickers.
Commissioner Hart?
Vickers.
Commissioner Hodges?
Vickers.
Commissioner McDonald?
Vickers.
Uh, Person?
Vickers.
Samad?
Uh, Vickers.
Baxter?
Vickers.
Trimble?
Vickers.
Russell?
Russell.
And Commissioner Vickers?
Well, I wanted to vote for, I was going to vote for Christian Russell, but, you know, it's a good nominator, but I guess Vickers. I'm disappointed, anybody.
All right. You want to announce your elections, Monty?
So the result of your elections, Chairman Vickers is still the chair for 2025, and Commissioner Baxter is the vice chair.
All right, thank you, Board. All right, let's move right forward, we got a long meeting today, and next one, we just want to have, move forward with the approval of the minutes. I'm sure the members got a chance to review that, and at this time, I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, might I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
All right, good. All right, moving right along here. Moving to the consent agenda, and we have one of the commissioners, Commissioner Russell, you have, you made a note that you wanted to move a few items to regular agenda?
Yes, 27, 30, and 31.
Okay. So at present times, I guess since we're going to have the reading of it, and we have a motion for that, we can definitely have that moved, we can do that all at one at the end, if that's okay, Monty. So you can have the reading of the consent agenda.
Following is the consent agenda for the Little Rock Planning Commission, meeting of February 13, 2025. The first group of items are on for withdrawal or deferral. Item one, file number Z10055 is being withdrawn without prejudice as the applicant has failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners, and the application has already been deferred twice. Item two, Z10067 is being deferred to the March 13, 2025 agenda at the request of the applicant. Item eight, Z10069 is being deferred to March 13 at the request of the applicant. Item nine, Z6723A is being withdrawn without prejudice at the request of the applicant. Item 13, Z100116 is being deferred to the March 13 agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners. Item 14, Z100118 is being deferred to the May 8 agenda at the request of the applicant. Item 18, Z100112 is being deferred to the March 13 agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners. Item 19, Z100117 is being deferred to the March 13 agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners. Item 20, 1000107 is being deferred to the March 13 agenda at the request of the applicant. Item 21, Z100122 is being deferred to the March 13 agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners. Item 23, Z100124 is being deferred to the March 13 agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners. Item 25, Z5317B is being deferred to the March 13 agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners, and item 29 is being deferred to the March 13 agenda at the request of the applicant. Next are the items on consent approval. Item four, 822 North Monroe Street is being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. Item six, 13212 Colleen Drive is also being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. So the first item on consent approval is item number 10, file number S867N10. This is lot D4, tract 201, Cheneau Valley, preliminary plat, east side of Rawling Road, south of Pebble Beach Drive. Staff recommends approval of the proposed preliminary plat subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 11, Z100111, Sherwood Street LLC Tire Shop, conditional use permit 6828 Colonel Glen Road. Staff recommends approval of the CUP request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 12, Z100113, Just Peachy Event Center, conditional use permit 305 Main Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP zoning request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 16, Z6019G, Cheneau Valley, tract 13, lot B R2, revised PCD, southeast corner of St. Vincent Way and La Grande Drive. Staff recommends approval of the revised PCD subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 17 is being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. Item 22 is being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. Item 24, Z3371J3, rezoning from C2 to C4, west side of Colonel Glen Plaza Drive, approximately 600 feet north of Colonel Glen Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested C4 rezoning. Items 26 and 26.1 are being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. Item 27, item 30, and item 31 are also being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. So that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have any other responses from any of the board members? There's not a lot, like a motion here for the consent read.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Now, we have a motion and a second, might I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yes.
Vickers? I mean, I'm sorry, uh, Baxter?
Yes.
And Vickers?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved.
All right, if your item was on the consent agenda, you are now free to leave. At this particular time, we will give a quick minute here for you to depart, and if your item was pulled from the consent agenda to the regular agenda at this time, please stay of course. And what we're going to have, we're going to move right along to the regular agenda at this time, and it will go in this order as follows. So we will have item number five, six, seven, item 15, item 17, item 26, 26.1, item 28, and then we will have item 27, 30, 31, and then last, we will have item three and four. All right, do you want to repeat that, Monty?
Yeah, let me, let me go back through that. Items...
So what we're doing is, we had a three and four, we're going to move that to the end.
Right.
Item three and four, we're moving that to the end, and we will go in numerical order at five, six, seven, 15, 17, 26, 26.1, 28. And then at the end, we had a few more pulled, item number 27 on the consent agenda, 27, 30, 31, and at the end, we're going to have item three and item four.
Okay, you should have a card on item 22.
All right, you're right, actually. We will, we will move that up numerically. So we will have item 17, and then we will put 22 in there, 22, 26, 26.1, 28. And then we will go down, drop down from 27, 30, 31, and then we would do three and four last, okay? So at this particular time, let's move forward accordingly with item number five, Z-10059. Is the applicant present in the King STR? All right. While you're making your way here to the panel, Monty, can we please have the reading?
Item number five, file number Z10059, King STR2 PDC, located at 5147 Cantrell Road. The applicant proposes to rezone this 0.16 acre property at 5147 Cantrell from R2 to PDC to allow use of the property as a short-term rental, too, with a maximum stay of 29 days. The owner will not reside in the residence, and the entire structure will be rented as one unit. The property is occupied by a 1965 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath house. There have been no Department of Planning and Development enforcement cases nor any police reports for this property, and it has been in operation as a short-term rental since March of 2024. There is parking off of Newton Street, there's a driveway and a covered carport that can accommodate three vehicles. Currently, the city Planning Department has a total of 111 short-term rentals in our database that have been approved up to this point. There was a recent STR2 application at 5131 Cantrell Road, which was denied by the Board of Directors. That application had heavy opposition from the neighborhood and a staff recommendation of denial. The subject property is located, or this subject property is located four lots to the west of that property within the same neighborhood, and because of that, staff does not support this PDC zoning and recommends denial.
Thank you. All right, applicant, please state your name for the record.
I'm Brian Harden.
All right, Mr. Harden, now, you have several cards in opposition. You can make your plea now, or if you'd like to wait, you can, and reserve your, your time. It's your choice.
I'll reserve my time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving right along again, ladies and gentlemen, due to the fact we do have quite a few cards, each time, for or against, if you're for it or in opposition, is a total of 20 minutes, all right? So the first name we're going to call here is Nancy McDonald.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate your time. Again, before you, with a very similar, as the gentleman pointed out, a very similar request for denial of this application, it again is on Cantrell Road, four houses down from the one you previously denied, with some of the same complaints that we've had about that. It is access from Cantrell Road, it extends the commercial zoning of Cantrell Road. It, it is subject to, as the gentleman mentioned, there are a lot of parking places there, even if you restrict the number of people that are there with, with the size of the property, it is still, can be very much a party house. We've had a lot of approvals of, of some of the short-term rentals in the area, but they're not right on Cantrell Road and right across from my, my residential home, and the biggest complaint that we still have is not opposition to short-term rentals, and I know we're talking about it at a state level as well, but it's not opposition to short-term rentals, it's opposition to disrupting the neighborhood and basically implementing a hotel in the middle of our neighborhood. You don't know who your neighbors are? There's an article in the paper today, if you read it, concern from the police about calls into these properties, and I can tell you, my neighbors and I have made our, our own calls about similar properties in the neighborhood. I don't know what would make this different than 5131, I don't see anything different about it, and I ask that you deny it.
Thank you. Our next card is Tim Jordan. Okay, not a problem. Next card is Sherri Henderson.
Thank you to the chair and to the commission for allowing me the opportunity to speak about this issue, and my name is Sherri Henderson. I live at 5116 Cantrell Road in Little Rock. My husband and I have lived there for 41 years, and we have raised our three children there. Our house was built in 1923, and many of the other homes in the neighborhood were built around that time or shortly after. So our neighborhood is zoned for single-family residents and has existed without change to the quality and the character of our neighborhood for a century. to the quality and the character of our neighborhood for a century. The property owner at 5147 is requesting a zoning change from single-family residence to commercial zone. So the owner is wanting to put up a small hotel in our neighborhood. If you change the property at 5147 to commercial zone, you're just opening up a Pandora's box, an invitation to other commercial businesses coming in to our neighborhood, and this is how neighborhoods are destroyed. The people in the neighborhood love our neighbors. We don't want to see our neighborhood destroyed. We don't want to see commercial businesses coming in and taking unfair advantage of our neighborhood's quality, adding nothing to the neighborhood's character, destroying those things that actually make this a neighborhood and in the process devalue our own property. These single-family homes are being bought up. They're being turned into small hotels. They're turning our residential neighborhoods into commercial zones. As a neighborhood, we have somehow successfully survived for over a century without a hotel in this neighborhood, without any demand for one, a small one or a large one. We don't even need that. With these small hotels, what we are losing is housing stock, homes for families that have supported this neighborhood for generations, including one of the best schools in the city of Little Rock, Forest Park Elementary School. So what are we going to get in return? Transience, loss of affordable housing, the eventual closing of our neighborhood school, the eventual commercialization of Cantrell Road to destroy our neighborhood. So what we are asking is that you do not change the zoning at 5147 from, to commercial property, but that you keep it zoned as a single-family residence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is Susan Caulford.
I would like to put this in the file or whatever. It is a petition in opposition to my neighbors. I love them. Okay. My name is Susan Caulford, and I live at 5134 P Street. I've lived here for 27 years. My house is approximately 250 feet from the 5147 Cantrell. I can see it from my back window. We have found that strong neighborhoods create strong cities. That's what we want. My neighborhoods and my neighbors are for establishing lasting relationships to strengthen the fabric of our city. Allowing STRs near a Blue Ribbon School removes housing that the residents of our city could purchase so their children can attend a school by living in the appropriate zone. That's why families buy houses so they can go to the schools that their children will fit in. Children can attend a good school, and it meets their needs. Our neighborhood is zoned as a single-family neighborhood. For 27 years, I know that's what it's been. In this application, I believe it's mentioned that there are no STRs within a fourth of a mile of 5147 Cantrell. This property is less than 300 feet from not one, but two STRs that belong to the applicant at 1715 Tyler, and a guest house behind it that is also an STR rental. Both are available for short-term rental. No matter what you propose for 5147 Cantrell, these facts will remain. One, it will still be an STR with a C on it, which I understand means commercial. Number two, oh, if it passes. Number two, Little Rock does not need commercial property in the middle of an established single neighborhood residence. These facts will undermine building strong neighborhoods to make our city stronger. The residents of Little Rock should come first to protect their neighborhoods. Keeping these STR PDCs out of our neighborhood is like pushing feather pillows in a box. We worked for over two years to get rid of one, and now we got another when it pops up. I would like to submit our neighborhood petition, which I have done, and I would like for everybody that came with me today to stand up and be recognized. And there's two more that aren't in here. I don't know where they went. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Uh, next card is Tom Caulford.
Thank you. My name's Tom Caulford, and I live in this house that Susan was just talking about. We've been a couple hundred feet of the property on Cantrell. A short-term rental takes a residence out of the market when it could otherwise become someone's home rather than an overnight hotel stay. An STR disrupts the fabric of a neighborhood where people get to know and care for one another. Do you think that the people on Orleans Street in New Orleans knew the man next door in an Airbnb was building bombs and ultimately rammed a vehicle down into 14 people, killing people on Bourbon Street? They did not. And that's an opposition that, that's a, something we would hope to avoid, obviously. Please do not overlook the importance of maintaining viable neighborhoods, which are vital to a strong city. Thank you.
Thank you. And the, the Tim Jordan, is he back here? Not, not a problem. We, and we can actually turn off the time now for the opposition. We do have one card in support of this action item, Brian Harden. Oh, apologize, okay. Would you want to make sure you're the applicant? Okay, applicant, come on back up here. We didn't know if there was a junior or whatnot. We want to be fair, fair to all. All right.
Does that give me more time, maybe?
No, no. Unfortunately, no. But you have heard opposition for this. Please, the floor is yours. Feel free to ask any particular questions or any concerns, and you're free to address at this particular time.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate everybody's concern on this one issue for this home here on Cantrell Road. And I do applaud the neighbors for being very diligent about their neighborhood. I do want to say that I am a neighbor of the same area, so I do live in this area, not someone from Bend, Oregon, or somewhere in California. We live in this area. We have multiple STRs in this area. Every one of our STRs have Ring cameras on the front doors.
You could address the commission.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not the audience.
Sorry. We do have Ring cameras on all of the doors that lead into our homes. We watch those 24/7. This property here has been, we bought it about eight to nine months ago. The minimum stay that's been in this home has probably been three months. The majority or all of the individuals that have stayed in this home have been people that live in this neighborhood that was having issues done with their home, whether it was a water damage, floors, roofing, some type of that effect. And they lived in that home for a minimum of three months during their stay, which I find very interesting that there is so much concern about being neighborly and wanting to meet their neighbors. And talking to the people that stayed there, we never had one visitor come up and ring the doorbell to say, hey, I'm, I'm your neighbor, blah, blah, blah. I'd like to know what's going on. So I do find that interesting. We do have, like I said, we do have Ring cameras on all the houses, so we watch for parties. There's not any guests that are not supposed to be on the property. We limit the number of guests that can stay in this home based off the number of rooms that the city provides us to be able to stay within the boundaries of an STR. The parking that is there, I know the staff had mentioned that there's places for three cars. It does have a small little garage that you can park a car into, and from what I've been there and working, we've had up to like six cars parked in that little parking area. So I know that was a big concern with the 531 or 5131 Cantrell Road was the parking because it only had one access on the alleyway. And this one is on a corner lot, so you can drive in on Newton and turn right and have plenty of parking without even needing any of the street parking, which is what we look at whenever we're applying for these, is to abide by the laws and by your ordinance that we have to have parking to a certain amount. So we looked at that before we applied for this. They were talking about the houses going down, and I would just like to say, when we purchased the home, there was a lot of undergrowth and a lot of growth from the trees around the house that kind of stuck out, stuck out into Cantrell Road. Me and my wife, Sarah, we actually worked through all that. We put new landscaping in the whole place. We've had, I personally removed a lot of the limbs and stuff that was overhanging on Cantrell Road to be able to have people that can walk down the sidewalks. We've actually gone ahead and done a lot of remodeling inside this home that will help keep the area nice and neat. And like I said, that has gone a long ways with helping other neighbors that are in this area and in the city of Little Rock to be able to have a place to stay. And that goes back to one of the concerns about not offering houses for families for the schools. The families that are staying there do have kids that go to these schools, and that's a real appeal for someone that's having an issue that is going on with their home, is they want to not stay in a hotel out in West Little Rock or Embassy. If there is availability for something like this for someone to come into, it really helps their family stay together and be together versus being split up or being in a hotel room. So for safety of those families, it does feel like it's more homely for them to be able to send their kids on to Forest Park or to the elementary schools or even some of the high schools that are there. So I do feel that it is a positive if it's ran right. And I do get that there are some Airbnbs out there that probably don't need to be. There's a lot of party homes, but like I said, our homes, we monitor, we make sure that the parking is correct, we make sure everything is good. Let's see. So that, that pretty much is it.
All right, thank you, sir. Before I open this up to the board, STRs has been an ongoing topic here for our meetings month in and month out. And a lot of times is we, we see certain things, obviously this is not the main point, but a lack of communication to the neighbors.
Right.
Of understanding, you know, what, because I understand the concerns. We get emails and calls often. Have you, have you spoken to the majority or to the association president or anything of that matter to give them some relief or understanding about this STR and how it's going to operate? I mean, you shared with us some things that you're going to have a Ring camera, different safety measurements that you have on this. I mean, can you expound a little bit on, have you, have you spoken with them or talked with them and the neighborhood about that? I mean, what is, what is your extent to that?
We have not been to any of the association meetings. We've only talked into the neighbors that are in the area where our house is and spoken to them. The, the ones that are on P Street, I don't know if y'all can pull that up on a map, but that's down Newton Street over to the right, which is a pretty good distance, 5131 P Street. So I, I did not walk way down there on P Street to talk to that particular neighbor. And then the other one was at 5116, which is on the other side of Cantrell Road, two or three blocks down to the right. So I didn't venture down to speak to any, any of those either. So, but as far as going to the association, I mean, we, we, I have not. We normally, whenever there are issues, we try to address them, and we normally get a phone call. And when we send out those letters, that has all of our contact information, and we do fill them at that time. But we have spoken with the neighbors that are right across the street from us, and then there's a lady that's trying to sell her house that's on the backside of our home. We've talked to her a few times too, so.
Okay. And, and what were their response to you?
The gentleman across the street was applauding. He was, you know, actually offering some help with whenever we were doing the landscaping. So he was very nice and was open for it. And the lady across the street was just concerned once, whenever there was a tenant coming in and they were, and they were kind of asking how long they were going to be there, and it was going to be for like three months' stay, so.
All right. At this time, I want to open the floor up. I'm sure we probably have some questions for some of the commissioners. So at this time, commissioners, if you have any questions, please feel free. Did you have?
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Are you able to, or maybe the residents can shed a light on, has there been any disturbances at this location? Or is this just a brand-new STR for you?
This is not a brand-new, and this one has been, we've owned it for eight, like I said, eight months, and it has been a minimum of a three-month stay or maybe longer for the individual's been there. So there's not been a, like, turnover of the house that would, would even do that. So, and like I said, we monitor all the Ring cameras. So if there has been, I haven't seen it where neighbors come up and like ring the doorbell and say, hey, what's going on with this car or what's going on with something? So, but I, I don't.
And you are the property manager for, for this?
We are. I own it.
Okay. I think that we have to rebalance all of somebody. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. We want to make sure we keep things in, in order here. No, not a problem at all. Yeah, so are any of the residents able to provide additional insight on this? If so, can they please come up and answer if they have another? Sure, briefly. And I, I want to say this just for the record, going forward, because we have so many action items on the agenda. Each person, what I would like to do is 60 seconds from here on out to the end of the meeting, you have 60 seconds if you want to make a statement here. Commissioner, did you? Commissioner Brown, go ahead.
You've mentioned several times about there being a bunch of three-month, multi-month rentals on this thing, which is typical for an STR. Is that part of the requirements for this listing? Or has it just worked out that way? So like, for example, someone came in for like a weekend, could they do that if this was open?
If it is available, once this is, once this is approved, then this, that they could. But we don't market this home as that. Normally, it's a monthly minimum of a month, just because of what it, it's capable of doing and what we have learned from doing it in this area. It helps the neighbor area.
But I guess my question is, is the multi-month a requirement you're putting on this home? Or has it just kind of worked out that way? I guess my question.
It, it's just kind of worked out that way. It's not a monthly, no, 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 sorry.
All right, from Commissioner Persons, he had, I will, I will make one representative to answer that question for you. Yes. Okay, and I, the, yes, ma'am, come on up here, and you can make the statement here to the questionnaire. Do you need the, did you need the question repeated?
No, I, I know what he's talking about, and I'm Susan Caulford again, and I can see that house from my house, so it's not that far. And they've never contacted us at all, or anybody on our street for that matter. The people that live next door to that house have vacated the house, have moved because they had, if you read the letters that are in the files from the Millers and, yeah, the Millers is the one, if you read that letter, it will explain it to you about what's happened over there, not with the people that are there now, but previously it was, it was not good. And so they have moved, and they've got their house for sale. That's the deal that we're looking at right now. And that's what I'm fearful of, because it's not a, you know, it's just, I mean, we are a neighborhood, and we, we want to continue to be a neighborhood. Someone told me the other day, real quick, if my kid, when I had my, my child, I had two children at home, and I needed, my wife went into labor with our third child, and I had to get somebody to take care of them. Am I going to go next door to STR and ask them to keep my kid? No. I need a neighbor. I need a neighbor that I know. I'm sorry.
No, thank you very much. That, we just wanted that question answered. Thank you very much. All right, do we have any other particular questions from any other commissioners?
I have a question for staff. Mr. Moore, you stated during the, during the reading of this application, I want to confirm, there have been no police reports, no nuisance calls, as, for as long as this property has been in operation, which is for almost a year.
That's correct.
And has the applicant met all of the requirements of the STR ordinance?
Up to this point, yes.
So other than an arbitrary presumption that the city board of directors may deny this application, which has nothing to do with this body, what justification does staff have for recommending denial?
Commissioner Russell, our staff feels that this- Commissioner Russell, our staff feels that this has traditionally been a single-family residential neighborhood. Um, and we feel that adding a commercial component to it um with people coming in and out um could be every twenty days, every three days, would cause additional traffic, could cause, as Ms. Coford said, you don't know who they're renting to. So we staff feels that the increased traffic and the chipping away of what is has been traditionally a single-family neighborhood uh has um caused us to recommend denial.
So, Mr. Jordan, why has the staff not taken a universal position to recommend denial of every single STR application that comes before this board? Because every single application for an STR that has come before this board is for a property that is in a predominantly single-family residential neighborhood. I feel like suggesting that the addition of three cars to Cantrell Road being a traffic hazard is ludicrous.
Noted.
So why has the staff not taken a universal position for recommendation of denial for every other application that has come before this board?
Commissioner Russell, we look at each one at a case-by-case basis. I mean, there was one that that was just stated that was was denied previously. That was two houses down from this. Uh, we recommended not denial on that one. We felt it was in the same area, same conditions. Our recommendation was denial on this one.
Good. So.
Case-by-case basis.
On a case-by-case basis, this application meets all of the requirements of the ordinance, is requesting no undue variances from the ordinance, has had no nuisance calls in eleven months, nearly twelve, that it's been in operation, and yet the recommendation is still denial?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? All right. If not, I would love to entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chair. I'm just going to ask one question to the applicant.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sir, if this is denied, I mean, do you do you envision making this a long-term rental? I mean, how do you?
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much is what it's been. I mean, it goes from month to month, and I think that's what it is now, sixty days for regular rentals that you can go through if it's not an STR. So it's stay in the same operation it has been since it was here. Because it's been a it's been a rental the whole time. So um, and it hasn't not been anything under thirty days. So by that, it would still be what it is. So. But like, yeah. And I think that's what we try to do before we go out and spend X amount of dollars on sending out all these letters and going through all this processes. By the law that that we have to go by, does this meet the qualifications that that we have to go through? And before we ever come up here and do that, I mean, we have some other homes that we know that don't have the correct parking. We know they have the wrong things and we don't, we don't send them through. But if we do have all of our ducks in a row that meet the requirements, that's what I kind of wonder, you know, what what is there? Is there more that we need to be reading into, you know? Like, what can we do more before we come up here and do all this? So.
In other words, what you're saying is if if the requirements of the ordinance are met, what discretion do we have as a body?
Right. And then, you know, I know I understand the neighbors, you know, um, issues. And and I hope we can address those with being able to be more um there at the home and going and meeting them and hopefully, you know, them understanding of what we do here. We're in this area as well, that maybe that can help help ease some of their um thoughts and fears as well. So.
Hey, Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question of staff? Uh, staff, just a reminder, how how many short-term rentals, there's a there's a cap on short-term rentals for the city of Little Rock? What is that number?
The cap.
Set by the Board of Directors?
The cap is five hundred.
So five hundred. And so far, our city has a hundred and ten?
Hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve. Okay. So we're going to do this, um, if my math is correct, we're about three hundred and ninety more times before we reach the cap. Um, then that's why this issue has been frustrating to the Planning Commission and the Board of Directors and really the the city. And and I've mentioned before, this seems so arbitrary because sometimes we get a motion um to, I mean, a recommendation to deny and sometimes and and I'd, I would be the first to tell you, as I go back and look at my history of voting, it's got to be all over the all over the board on this thing. And and three hundred and ninety more of these before we reach the five hundred limit. So if if our city doesn't want them, uh, we 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 should amend that. I would, the board's got to, because again, they're just going to keep, they're just going to keep coming. I'm not so, um, I'm going to vote in favor of this, and I think I'm going to continue to vote in favor of them until we hit five hundred. I mean, what that that's the limit that's been placed unless there's just some egregious reason why we we shouldn't have a short-term rental. If our city has embraced this concept, and we have, then again, we 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 have a number that's been established. And I don't, I don't see a difference in approving this one versus um one in Hillcrest or one in West Little Rock or one in Southwest Little Rock. What's, you know, what would be the difference there? So that's just my comment. But I wanted to highlight that five hundred number because that's the thing that pops into my head every time we have a short-term rental application is that number.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. And a lot of times, and just these SDRs or short-term rentals is is always a difficult task uh for the board, city directors, et cetera. A lot of times, I know what we've seen, we've been through a lot of them. It's a hundred and twelve. That's not just one got approved. So a lot of times, what we see there is a disconnect or some kind of discordance with applicant or the developer or the owner and the neighborhood community. And I understand, the neighborhood just want to feel safe. They want to understand who is coming in. And we've been talking on some things of how can we address that? So we're internally working through things and hopefully we may have something coming up this year or even sooner in this quarter that we can address some of those things so that we can have a more of a, you know, a tandem, you know, item so that the neighborhood feels safe and that the applicant feels safe that he's bringing in who he's bringing in here. So I know we're working on that. We've been in discussions with that. But until then, I this is a difficult, you know, task, to say the least.
Right.
Um, you know, you know, with that being said, you know, unfortunately, it, you know, these type of case-by-cases, as Brad stated, it it happens like this. Because, I mean, obviously, you meet the ordinance, everything follows. And a lot of times, that's why it's case-by-case, because there are not stern rules that says, you know, okay, if you meet this, you're approved. If you don't, you're not approved. So in each neighborhood, each street, you know, e- everything is is different. And so, you know, with that being said, I want to say if there's any more questions, any more commissioners, and if not, I would love to entertain a a motion uh for, you know what, before I even say entertain a motion before this, and I want to say this and and Brad, if if you will, if he can, of course, through the applicant, of course, this will be up under under your own charge and your direction if you would like. If you wanted to defer this item, maybe for next month, if you wanted to go meet with association meetings, sit down with the neighbors, address those concerns, maybe talk to them, and then come back. Of course, that would be at your own expenditure and, you know, your request. Uh, but, you know, I was going to say that before we do a vote. Therefore, you can, you know, talk with them and you can, you know, maybe have something that they can feel comfortable with. Because what I've seen here, just like Ms. Coford, she made some concerns. And a lot of things I've seen with people is they want to have some type of understanding and appreciation of of what's going on here. Because right now, it's just looked at as a threat that we have an unknown people coming in, you know, and and that can cause concerns, Brad.
Commissioner Chair, uh, the the applicant has already had two deferrals for this.
Oh.
They they cannot have any other deferrals at their own expense. Um, if the commission would like to waive their bylaws and allow another deferral, or if the commission would like to allow a deferral themselves, but the the applicant cannot request a deferral.
Okay. Thank you. I did not know it was two deferrals. Commissioner Brown, go ahead.
Well, I'd like to make a statement and then the motion.
Yes.
Forward to both the applicant and the uh opposition. As as Mr. Jordan just said, we're going to vote on this. Regardless of this, we're not the final deciding body. The board is. I would encourage you as the applicant, between now and this goes beforehand, have the conversation the Commissioner Vickers just talked about, because, you know, there's some concerns there. And, you know, historically, we've been more open to these than the board has, unless there's some full community support. Typically, there's full community support, the board's like, yeah, let's roll. So I would highly encourage you to do that. With that, I want to make a motion that we um a a motion to approve, uh, was it Z one zero five nine, except for the condition, the the recommendation of denial.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. May I give a roll call vote? All right. So.
We're voting to approve.
Yeah. So we have to make this that motion in the exact, because we're always for the affirmative. So if you vote yay, yay, or nay, it would be nay. So if you're for it, yes. If you're against it, no.
No, no problem.
Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
I think the staff made a correct decision, so I support the staff version.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Yes or no vote for the record, please?
Uh, Commissioner Hodges, uh, I I think I interpret that as a yes. Is that correct? A a no?
Would you?
Commissioner Hodges, are you voting yes or no on the on the approval of the short-term rental?
I'm voting against the approval.
Yes, sir.
So you're voting no?
Yes.
Just to make it for the record.
Yes. I want to keep going for the record. I'm going to go, Commissioner McDonald, yes or no?
Yes.
Person?
Aye.
Samad?
No.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Reluctant, yes.
Vickers? Yes. One, two, three, four, five, six. Got motion passes?
Did you?
Commissioner Russell, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Right. Motion passes. All right. Thank you very much uh for coming in applicant and even opposition. All right, let's move right along here to the next item here. So we're going to have item number six. If the applicant is present here for item number six, and that is Z dash one zero zero seven four.
And while while folks are filing out, uh, do we do we know how, because I know we got people waiting in overflow, do we know how we're moving folks in and out? I just I just want to make sure that no one's downstairs for an application they're wanting to hear.
Mr. Mr. Bowden, we our our staff is is coordinating that.
Okay, yeah. I just I just wanted to make sure that we we were keeping that in mind.
We've been working on this one for a couple of weeks now. We knew we knew this.
Yeah, we have several staff personnel to make sure that the the flow stays fluent.
Good deal.
Okay, so we do have the applicant present. Uh, so can, Monty, can we please have the reading for uh item number six, please?
Item number six, file number Z ten thousand seventy-four, Laban Properties, STR two PDC, located at thirteen two twelve Colleen Drive.
I'm sorry, Monty, could you hold up please? We do have uh some talking in the back and we want to make sure everybody can get in and get out. Uh, if you're done with the item, can you please uh step to the back or even depart, if you will? And if anyone coming in, can we please come in quietly in an orderly fashion? Sorry about that, Monty. Please continue.
The applicant proposes to rezone the zero-point-three-acre property located at thirteen two twelve Colleen Drive from R two to PDC to allow use of the property as a short-term rental, too, with a maximum stay of twenty-nine days. The owner will not reside at the in the residence. The entire structure will be rented as one unit. The property is occupied by a twenty-three-hundred-and-fifty-six-square-foot, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house. There have been no Department of Planning and Development enforcement cases nor any police reports uh for this property. It has been in operation as a short-term rental since November of twenty-twenty-two. There is ample parking that's accessed off of Shoemate Drive. There's a two-car uh garage with a driveway uh large enough to accommodate up to four cars. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDC zoning request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
Uh, Michael Bucker.
All right. Mr. Bucker, uh, you can feel free to speak now, or if you would like to uh reserve your time. We do have several cards in opposition. It's your choice.
Uh, I can reserve this one.
Okay, thank you. You can just please have a seat here just for the moment. So we're going to start with uh William Beadle.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name's William Beatty. I live at uh twelve hundred Adele Drive uh in Marlow Manor. And I'm here to voice opposition to changing the zoning in our neighborhood. I've lived in that neighborhood since nineteen eighty-six. I've been involved in managing the swimming pool, taking care of the park grounds, and a variety of neighborhood events. Uh, in short, I think I'm a pretty good, have a pretty good assessment of what uh that neighborhood is like and what it's for. And it's for raising families, not as a uh short-term rental. This particular property uh has been advertised uh as an Airbnb for at least a year with occupancy up to fourteen people. Uh, and since in that time, there have been complaints about traffic, speeding, and noise. Now, I don't know about you guys, but with when with my kids, I don't want them around that sort of thing. And I understand, Commissioner Hart, your position, you know, just, but I also think that a blanket uh position isn't necessarily the most uh fortuitous way to approach a problem like this. So in short, what I would really recommend, or I would respectfully request, the commission deny this request.
Thank you. Kathleen Betty?
Hello, I'm I know you're all thrilled to hear another objection to short-term rentals, but I I do feel that that this neighborhood is different than the previous one we we talked about. We are small lots. We are modest homes. These homes are twenty-five feet apart. When you have a a Airbnb that will have up to fourteen people in that house, and we're not talking about long-term rentals, we're talking about nightly, weekend, whatever. Do you, may I ask you, do you want to live next to a house within twenty-five feet of a house that has thirteen people in it? When you see that advertised, what comes in your mind? Does it come into a, you know, a family with eleven kids? Hell, no. It's people who want to have a lot of people and celebrate. And I'm not saying that's all the people, all the people are doing that. I think a very large number of them are are smaller groups and families. But the fact is, you can have fourteen people. And when you do do that, you encourage a lot of noise, as we've said. The the police may have not gotten complaints, but people in our neighborhood don't call the police that much. They know, they call the board. They say, hey, what the hell's going on? I have this, all this noise. These cars are speeding up and down the roads. My kids uh are out there. This is, you know, this is wrong. So in general, I think it's a different situation. I, you know, again, it's it's a small neighborhood where people have know each other. And this this particular uh owner has not approached the board, who meets every single month. We have had no communications from them. And um, you know, I just don't understand, again, if you ask yourself, do you want to live next to that house? I don't, but there are people in our neighborhood who have to. We we respectfully request that you reject this this particular application. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly Milford?
I'm Beverly Milford. I live at one-two-nine oh three Morrison Road. Um, we are Retaries. We moved three miles to move into this neighborhood about eighteen years ago. We chose that neighborhood because it had a wide range of ages in it. It wasn't all older people, even though most of the houses are older houses. Uh, it's a quiet neighborhood. It was similar to our old neighborhood. We had heard about how friendly the neighbors were, and they do. People walk their dog. They walk at night. They walk with their children. We've had snowball fights in the street in the snow. Um, it worries me that there would be as many. It worries me that there would be as many as fourteen people having a party. I'm sure that's not every time they rent it. But I want to be sure when my grandkids are out, or I'm out walking, that I'm safe. And I just don't think we need commercial property in our neighborhood, we do back up to a school in our neighborhood. We're on Henson Road, which is a busy road, and I would respectfully request that you deny the, uh, zoning.
Thank you. And the last card is Stephen, uh, Whitney? Thank you. Thank you. And we have your card for the record. Alright, so can we please bring the applicant back up here? So you kind of heard some concerns?
Yeah, yeah.
Feel free to address any concerns, and, uh, you know, uh, make any statements, uh-
Probably the biggest concern I'd like to address is the fourteen people, uh, and, and the concern, I, I completely understand that concern. I have twenty Airbnbs throughout the state, not an issue in eight years with one of them. Because the way I run my Airbnbs, or short-term rentals, sorry, we call them Airbnbs a lot, is I have very, very strict- any person running ones, so you guys know for the future, you can have your own rules and regulations that the people have to abide by. There's several safeguards that the, the owner has to put in. Uh, it's not required by Airbnb, but you are someone that can do that. So for future reference, if you guys want a consultant about regulations you might want to require for short-term people? I, all mine are in neighborhoods, obviously, they're short-term rentals. Every one of them, I have a str-, very strict, uh, car limit, because I know they're in neighborhoods. I have a very strict no-party or no unauthorized guest. I have had a few that's had ten to twelve people in it. And that, that has to be pre-approved, and every single time it's someone who lives near the neighborhood. A couple people in the neighborhood that had family coming in, usually for a graduation, a wedding, something to that effect, and it's all been family-oriented. Uh, there hasn't been, like, it started in twenty-two, as they stated, there hasn't been any police reports for any reason. Everyone that did receive a letter, I made sure that my personal phone number was on the letter, because I always want really strict, uh, guidelines, and I don't want a single guest ever going outside those guidelines. Because my own home doubles as an Airbnb in a very similar neighborhood, but in Russellville. And I have the exact same concerns. So I run my, every one of my Airbnbs are in nicer neighborhoods or quieter neighborhoods. That's why I have very, very strict rules, and I request that all of my neighbors, if you don't, if they don't have it, they can have it. My direct phone numbers, because if anything's even remotely not right, like, no one's ever, even if the cit-, this, this, this city or the town is okay with cars on the road, I'm not. Very strict on how many cars can be there. Um, in this particular case, four, two in the garage and two outside the garage, none in the dri-, uh, none, none on the street. And, uh, so, not one report. And I'll, I'll be just bluntly honest, in my twenty-some, twenty-one Airbnbs, fourteen I own, seven I, I run for other people. I've had one calling of the police in eight years, and one in Hot Springs, and it was resolved very quickly. Because the neighbors do have my phone numbers, and they can call me, and I get on top of it, because I don't want, I don't want the same thing everyone else doesn't want. Because mine, my, my original first Airbnb is also part of my home, it's a lower level of my home, so I have the same concerns and the same, um, uh, that's why my rules are so, so strict with everybody that comes. So every Airbnb or short-term rental person, just so you know, as a staff, can put their own rules and regulations, and that the guests have to abide by.
Alright, at this particular time, I want to open the floor up to any questions by, or statements by any of the Commissioners. Floor is open.
Just to be consistent, I'll make the same, uh, request of staff as the previous one, this application meets all the requirements?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And is asking for no variances from the ordinance as codified by the City Board of Directors?
As the applicant states, that is true.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I would love to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, application Z dash one zero zero seven four, as submitted with all staff's recommendations and conditions within the agenda staff report.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, may I get a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Brown?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
No.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
No.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yea.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Alright, thank you applicant, thank you for everybody coming out on that action item. Moving right along to item number seven. And item number seven?
Item number seven, file number Z ten thousand sixty-four, this is a rezoning from R two to R four.
I don't mean to interrupt, can we have just a second, because my client, they wouldn't let him in because of the crowd, so they said once this starts, he would be able to come in.
Yes, please allow him to come on up and come in, um, and while he's coming in, oh, is that the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Monty, please continue the reading.
Okay, this is a rezoning from R two to R four for forty-five lots along Mountain Vista Drive and Summit View Drive. The applicant is proposing to rezone forty-five lots of this fifty-seven lot subdivision in the Vista, the Vista Point subdivision from R two, single-family to R four, two-family district. The Vista Point subdivision is platted with fifty-seven lots, and twelve of those lots are owned by individuals other than the developer with houses on nine of those twelve lots. The remaining lots are undeveloped, Mountain Vista Drive is the only access to the subdivision and is connected to Skyline Drive in Saline County. The request is in the Otter Creek Planning District, the land use plan shows residential low density for this, uh, area. The applicant's intent is to construct two-story townhouse-style duplexes on the forty-five undeveloped lots. Staff does not support the requested rezoning from R two to R four. Staff feels that it's, uh, that it's not appropriate to double the density of the subdivision. Doubling the density does not fit the land use plan, and it puts stress on the existing infrastructure. Additionally, having only one entrance to the subdivision poses safety concerns with emergency response vehicle access. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested rezoning from R two to R four.
Thank you. Alright, applicant, please state, or applicants, please state your name for the record.
Uh, my name is Kendall Grooms, I'm the attorney and representative for Apex, uh, Professional Construction LLC. Chase Calhoun is the owner of that, he's here standing next to me.
Alright, um, on this item, we do have, um, several cards, uh, that's in opposition, uh, if you all like to, uh, reserve your time on this particular one and then come back afterwards, or you can speak now, uh, at your discretion.
I'd like to go ahead and make a presentation now, if that's fine.
Alright, that's fine.
And if there's any additional time that I don't use, can I reserve that to respond to any comments?
Sure.
Thank you. Alright, I get, my name is Kendall Grooms, again, I'm the attorney for, uh, Chase Calhoun and Apex Professional Construction. I get to be the guy that shifts away from short-term rentals today. Mr. Commissioner Trimble, welcome, you're here in the party. Uh, if I may, before I start, I'd like to make a couple of documents a part of the record, if that's okay?
These are all part of the application, but I want to be sure you have copies of those, and if this is a spreadsheet that I created, it should be fifteen copies here. If any of the, if any of the people that want to speak, any of the citizens want a copy of this, I'm gonna leave the extra copies that I have of both.
Yes, yes, I, I said that I had a copy of the proposed plans for construction, that the duplexes would, would be, this would be the basis of those. And I've also created a spreadsheet, uh, that I'm gonna discuss in relation to the density issues, and I'm gonna leave these extra copies, uh, sitting here for any of the citizens that speak, if anybody wants a copy of it, they're more than welcome to it. So what we have, Apex Professional Construction LLC is the applicant in this matter. Its owner and member, Chase Calhoun, as I've told you, is present. If you've got any questions after my remarks, he, I may defer to him, he may be the better person to answer it about the project or the neighborhood, because I haven't actually been boots-on-the-ground in this subdivision. So Mr. Calhoun, through various of his Apex companies, there's several of them out there for different things, he's built, developed, rehabbed, remodeled, and he served as landlord over dozens of properties in and around the Little Rock area. By its application, what he wants to do is seek to build high-quality, two-story townhome duplexes that would integrate into this subdivision. It's in Southwest Little Rock. There's a need for this type of affordable housing, whether by rent or for purchase in and around Little Rock. So the staff analysis about the proposed project is actually in line with what Apex believes as to the quality of what's going to be built, of the proposed construction. The analysis that was just read says in part, quote, "That the proposed one thousand four hundred and sixty-four square feet townhouses are designed to match the character of the existing homes." And we believe that to be true, and Mr. Calhoun went into great detail to ensure that what he wants to construct is in line with the subdivision and adds value to the subdivision, not takes away, which I anticipate many of the citizens are gonna argue to you, to the Commissioners today. At present, the subdivision has nine homes constructed, actually, they get seven constructed and two that are under construction, uh, on almost sixty to seventy lots that exist. In essence, this is a failed subdivision, is what it is. The plat and the bill of assurance were filed and approved in two thousand and eight, so the subdivision has not fully developed or even come close over the past seventeen years. Apex desires to complete the subdivision as proposed with the zoning change from R two to R four. Approving that brings economic to the, economic benefit to the city via tax revenue, the surrounding area businesses, and improvement on what are otherwise vacant lots. It'll also provide more housing options without comprised, compromising on design quality or neighborhood feel, as I've already told you. Apex understands that there are several people here in opposition to the rezoning, most of which are on the basis that they simply don't want duplexes in their subdivision. Whether that be that they have a ni-, negative mindset about what a duplex brings, or fears it's gonna decrease their property values. None of that is the intent of this construction or the project that would be managed by Mr. Calhoun through his company. After a lot of today, in the first couple of hearings that have happened, there's been talk about adequate communication, especially by Chairman Vickers. After the December meeting, which was deferred, and then snowed out in January, but in the December meeting, uh, I met with several of the owners out front of this very building, offered to talk to each one of them, to, if they wanted plans, if they wanted to reach out, if they wanted to talk to Chase about it, and he's gone door-to-door and tried to talk to some people, but I personally did not get any phone calls. I got two phone calls from non-neighborhood people about it, I deferred those to Chase, and he contacted those people. So, we just don't see merit in a denial of the rezoning request based on the comments that we've been provided by those parties that got notice of the proceeding and have appeared and will talk here today. So, moving forward, the staff have recommended denial of Apex's request. The recommendation and the analysis lists two points as the basis for the recommendation of denial, both of which we dispute. And I'm gonna take them in reverse order of how they're written in the analysis. So the first one of those, staff recommendations for denial, is because the subdivision has only one entrance, which staff claims poses safety concerns due to difficulty of emergency response access. The second one is that the staff does not feel it is appropriate to double the density of the subdivision because it will allegedly put stress on infrastructure and does not fit the land use plan. Those are the two reasons that they recommend denial. So I'm gonna start with emergency response. As I've already told you, this subdivision was designed and approved by the city in two thousand and eight, with each road endpoint having a cul-de-sac for emergency vehicle ingress and egress. If you look at the map of the subdivision, you can see it on the screen, there's, each endpoint in the subdivision has that cul-de-sac, uh, for turnarounds, this was approved. They remain functional today, there's not like concrete barriers in any of them or anything grown up, those, uh, are still there for use. At least nine permits have been issued by the city since the plat was approved, including two in the past year, year and a half, without any objection as to emergency vehicle access, or a change in how access is gained to the property. The subdivision, as I told you, has existed for seventeen years so far without any issues regarding emergency access. The fire department also gave comments, uh, in their analysis, and they did not have objection or state anything regarding additional access being needed. That's a part of the analysis that's been provided. Even despite fire not having that objection, it actually came from engineering that said that the second access was required. It didn't come from fire or any other emergency department. And lastly, in regards to this particular subdivision, requiring a second entrance is just not practical. The western portion of this, if you look at your screen, is a very steep slope just on the edge, there's nowhere you can go that direction, and the eastern side of it is owned by another group, Mr. Calhoun doesn't own that property, there's other houses there, there's no way to go to a secondary entrance on the east side of the subdivision. So to require that makes this basically impractical and unusable for those development purposes, if that's what's going to be required. So Apex alleges that on that particular reason, it would be arbitrary and capricious for the city to voice to deny the rezoning request, and we ask that you disregard the staff's recommendation of denial on that point. And so next, I'm gonna go to the infrastructure and density comment. As to infrastructure, there were no objections from any utilities, indicating the infrastructure for utilities is adequate for the proposed R four use. It was clear in the application that duplexes were going to be built, and there's no objection or statement from any utilities saying that it won't work. Transportation and planning also did not have any objections or negative comments about the proposal. And so we're kind of left to guess as to what the infrastructure is that's being discussed by the staff. It's not utilities, there's no comments there, and transportation has no negative comments about the proposal. If that infrastructure is being used in the staff analysis in alluding to needing a second entrance, then I've already addressed that point. If it's about the condition of the roads that are in the subdivision currently, those conditions, the road conditions are fine, they're still usable, they're in good shape. Again, there's only seven active houses that are there and two under construction, so these roads, it's not like they have been overused over the past seventeen years. So we're not sure what the infrastructure even is that's being discussed in the staff report. Uh, in our opinion, based on a review of that and a review of the actual subdivision as it sits today, there's no issues with infrastructure that would stop this rezoning and development. As to density, the staff's analysis says that the zoning change would double the density. It's just flat-out incorrect. It's, it's wrong. The spreadsheet that I gave you that's in front of you has calculations based on the houses that are there and what Apex is proposing. So essentially, if the three-bedroom houses that are there average three and a half people per house, and the four-bedroom houses average four and a half people per house, that's an average in the subdivision, as it exists right now, of three-point-nine-four people per home, so just shy of four people. That means there's about thirty-five to thirty-six people living in the subdivision today. If you had that same average across the other forty-five lots and said these are gonna be developed as single-family homes, that's a hundred and seventy-eight people. If you say that those empty lots were all twenty-three-hundred-square-foot houses instead of duplexes, and those are just a bit smaller, that's actually just a bit smaller than the size of the proposed duplex, about a hundred square feet, two-hundred square feet, they're likely to all be four-bedroom with larger bedrooms, or, uh, with, they're likely to be four-bedroom or larger three-bedroom houses. Meaning, if you assume an average of four people in each of those, and you add that to what's already there, you get about two-hundred-and-sixteen people. If somebody like Mr. Calhoun were to develop the houses into twenty-three hundred-square-foot houses, develop the lots, you get about two-hundred-and-sixteen people. In comparison, if the duplexes average three people on each side, so if there's six people per duplex, you get about a forty-two percent increase in the number of people living there. So that's not double the density, it's a forty-two percent increase, and that's making the assumption of six people living there. The big problem with that is, even, even forty-two percent, y'all may go, hey, that sounds pretty high, actually, for a density increase. Well, it's not, because if you have two adults on each side, it is the same number. If it's just a couple lives in one side of the duplex and a couple lives in the other side, it's two-hundred-and-sixteen people. And based on our calculation, if they were built as single-family homes, it's two-hundred-and-sixteen people. So we're talking about the difference being children that lived with these people. We're not talking about adults, we're not talking about anybody else, we're talking about children that would be here, is what the increase is. So we're taking affordable housing, affordable options for rent or purchase, away from families that might have children that would want to move into this subdivision. It's a zero-density increase if you take children out of the equation. So I don't understand where the double density is coming from, there would have to be eight, twelve people per duplex to reach double density. There's one more thing we have to look at, though, because again, we're, we're confused on the definition of density, because the staff recommendation for denial also referenced- the definition of density, because the staff recommendation for denial also references the land use plan. Well, the land use plan says that the structures improvements are allowed up to six units per acre for residential low-density. Lots in this subdivision, even after being constructed as duplexes, will be averaged .4 acres or larger. It's not even close to that density of six units per acre. This request, lastly, does not alter the number of lots. It's 45 lots that Mr. Calhoun's company owns now. It's going to be 45 lots afterwards. We're not splitting lots. We're not trying to increase density by that. There's just nothing there by any math that we're doing on the construction and Mr. Calhoun's experience with building duplexes and other structures around the city that this is going to come remotely close to doubling the density. So we don't see where there's any traffic concerns in the analysis, where there's any infrastructure concerns in the analysis. There's certainly not double density in the analysis. These are going to be nice duplexes maintained by Mr. Calhoun. He controls, from a tenant standpoint, who goes in there. He wants very good tenants in these. He wants people that want to pay rent. If he wants to sell those, his objective is to sell those to single families that would live in one half of the duplex, or somebody might buy the whole duplex and live in one, and like the gentleman was up here a minute ago, have somebody else rent out the other one as a landlord-tenant situation. It's not an attempt to run over the people that live in this neighborhood. He wants to make the neighborhood complete and make it good for everybody that was there. So I will reserve any time that I have to respond to any comments by citizens, unless you have anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a host of cards. Again, just to remind you, we have up to twenty minutes for, you know, if you're for or guessed it. So we do have, the first card is Scott Bennett.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, before the opposition comes up, I would like to read into the record, since Mr. Grooms did reference infrastructure. We received a resolution from the City of Shannon Hills and the mayor, which says, "Resolution expressing opposition to the proposed zoning change for the Mountain Vista and Summit View Drive area of the City of Little Rock served by Shannon Hills Resources. Whereas the leadership of City of Shannon Hills strives to be good stewards of the public trust, and whereas the City of Shannon Hills was never consulted about the impact on the city services created by this proposed change, and whereas the City of Shannon Hills feels that the zoning change adversely affects the availability, storage capacity of the Shannon Hills-owned water tower paid for by Shannon Hills residents, and the Shannon Hills City Council feels that the zoning change will additionally burden local streets and roads since there is no way in or out of this area without going through Shannon Hills. And whereas Shannon Hills City Council feels that the zoning change adversely impacts available Shannon Hills emergency services, which are the closest responders, and whereas Shannon Hills City Council feels that the proposed zoning change is not in the best interest of the City of Shannon Hills, the City of Little Rock, or the residents they both strive to serve."
Thank you, Brad. All right. Now that we have that reading for the records, we have Scott Bennett, please.
How are y'all? My name's Scott Bennett. I'm actually a city council member, Ward Three, Position One, for City of Shannon Hills and for Emerald Mountain. I would actually like to read a letter that came from the mayor that he asked me to provide. It said that the water provided to the Mountain Vista area of your city comes from the Shannon Hills Water Tank on top of the Emerald Mountain in Shannon Hills. This arrangement results from an agreement reached while I was on city council here in Shannon Hills, and I vividly remember the circumstances. Our water tower made it possible to provide the desired water pressure for the single-family homes planned for Mountain Vista area. It is important to note, our agreement for use of our water tower for the Mountain Vista area was exclusively for the development of single-family homes zoned R1. It is important to note, our city would not have agreed to allow water storage for the area of anything other than R1 development. There must, we must oppose, object, and disagree with any consideration of a zoning change for the Mountain Vista area. There are no duplexes in Shannon Hills, and all residential development is zoned R1, single-family residential. Not only would a zoning change violate our original agreement for use of our water tower, it would also increase the burden on our limited resources of police and fire protection. Our emergency services often end up responding to a call in this area because we are the closest. You can't even reach the Mountain Vista area without going through Shannon Hills. Again, we want to emphasize the City of Shannon Hills is against any resonant efforts for the Mountain Vista area. I would also like to say that our planning commission has opposed this as well, and for our police officers, we have six full-time police officers, five part-time officers. There is no way that they can cover that and have extra houses. I have spoke to many people in the community, and I have spoke to many people who live in Shannon Hills. They are opposing this. They feel like their land value is going to be dropped, and with the infrastructure, and like they said, one way in, one way out. We have a subdivision that's raining, and anybody comes through there who lives in Shannon Hills, who lives on Emerald Mountain or in Carrington Place, they pay the taxes for that front entrance. We pay a special improvement tax. When they take a ride into that Little Rock area, they reap the benefits of the people of Shannon Hills. And I'll yield my time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Teresa Lynn?
I agree with Mr. Bennett.
All right. Thank you. Terry Crawford?
Thank y'all for seeing me. My name is Terry Crawford. I live at 1045 Skyline Drive. I'm approximately 600 feet from the entrance from that Mountain Vista. I have several things I'd like to point out. I don't know what, first off, I don't know why Mr. Apex could not speak. He had to have an attorney to come up here and justify his case, so I have an issue with that to begin with. He should have been able to come up here like everybody else and speak, instead of having an attorney speak for him. The fire department that he referenced that they wouldn't have a problem coming to, was that Little Rock Fire Department, or was that Shannon Hills Fire Department? Because Shannon Hills would be the first one to come to the fire there because they are closest. Little Rock, that area is kind of outside of Little Rock, so they have to make an effort to come through Shannon Hills to get to the Mountain Vista area. And like Scott said, we have six full-time police officers. We have five part-time police officers. You're looking at adding at least ninety residents up there. Shannon Hills does not have the income or the resources to accommodate ninety more homes up there. The entrance into Mountain Vista is kind of around a blind corner, comes down, and so anybody pulling out of there, if somebody's coming down Skyline Drive, it didn't mean kind of speak, that would cause for an accident. If you're leaving Mountain Vista, going to Viamy Ridge Road to turn left to come into Little Rock, at eight o'clock in the morning, you've got people leaving to go and take their children to school, because there's a school right there at the intersection of Viamy Ridge and Shannon Hills. So I have sat in line for over an hour to get out. And like I said, I live 600 feet from the street. So you're adding ninety more residents, so two people driving in that house, you're adding 180 more cars that's going to be going in and out of that subdivision. And now, which we're three-quarters of a mile from, the four-way stop at Viamy Ridge to turn to come into Little Rock, if you're already sitting there between seven and eight o'clock of a morning for an hour to get out, you've got a lot more time. So you're going to be leaving your house at 5:45 to 6:15 of a morning to get out, to get to Little Rock by eight. And the fire department, we just don't have the resources for that. And I am on the Shannon Hills Planning Commission. We did vote against it. As far as coming to the neighborhood, no one on my street within fifteen houses on either side of me has been approached and spoken to and asked about this, because we would have all told them, no, we are not happy about it. Thank y'all very much for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it. We sincerely request that you deny this request to build these homes, because we do feel like it would decrease the value of ours. It's going to be rental property. You're going to have people moving in and out. You don't know what kind of people they are. He can't check everybody's, you know, if he's got all these rental properties, he can't check everybody's information every time they move in and out. So we feel like it's going to bring a lot of riffraff into our community. And we do have a nice community. As far as it being a failed subdivision, that is a totally false statement. That is a very nice subdivision. We are right on the outside of Little Rock. It's very nice. People have worked very hard. We're looking at 250 to $350,000 homes. So to put these duplexes or whatever in there, we do feel like it was going to bring the value of our property down. So again, we respectfully request that you deny his request. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next card is Sharon Bohannon, if I'm saying that correctly. Bohannon, excuse me.
Hello, I'm Sharon Bohannon. The first comment that I would like to make is about the communication that the attorney brought up. The meeting that was in December, none of the residents received notification of the rezoning. We did get one before this meeting, but nobody got one the first meeting. The subdivision that was started in 2008, and I was the first one to build since then. So my home is under construction, will be completed in two weeks, a $412,000 home. If I hadn't known that duplexes were going to be built there, I would have never built a home there. So that means that a duplex would be built on the right side of me, the left side of me, and in front of me. And that's like my main point. The safety, one way in, one way out. He mentioned about the roundabout for the emergency vehicles. If you've got all those duplexes and you've got all those cars parked in the roundabout, there won't be a way for the fire trucks and police to get through, because there's going to be too many vehicles there. And there's really no need for the duplexes. Two miles up the road, there's village-run Parkway, and they're building duplexes right now. So there's really no need for duplexes in that area. So thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Hope?
Hello, my name is Amanda Hope, and I agree with what all has already been said. I wanted to talk about, because I actually am the first resident within that community. And I know a lot of people are referring to it as Mountain Vista. That's the street, but the actual neighborhood is Vista Point. So that's the name of the neighborhood. We don't have a sign to declare that it's Vista Point, but that's what it is. And I've been there come July 15 years, and I love my community, and I love the neighborhood. I love the neighbors. We get along. I've had some of the neighbors to do some things. We help each other out in that community. And also, I don't know how a duplex is going to increase the value. I know where some duplexes are within the City of Little Rock. I don't see how they have increased the value of those homes that have been built within neighborhoods. He stated that the person who owns Apex went door-to-door yesterday, was the first day that he arrived at my home. I wasn't there. I was at work. So he spoke with my nephew. That was the first time that I seen him. So it's not like he's been trying to come door-to-door to meet with the residents that is in that neighborhood. People have already spoke as it relates to the traffic. The traffic in the morning times is hard to get out when you're trying to leave for work in the morning time. It's already a big issue as it is. There's no stoplights. You only have stop signs. So everybody has to wait at the four-way stop to try to get, for their turn to go. And also, I just don't think that it's right for them to all of a sudden to come in and want to rezone this neighborhood. They should have already known with this neighborhood of what it took to build houses on the mountain prior to. There was originally another builder before they have even came in to even bid on it. I think they got the land on an auction. So I'm asking that it be denied because of our neighborhood, and because we want to keep our neighborhood a neighborhood of family houses. And people work hard for those houses. We work hard. We go to work every day to build, to work, to have money, to build our neighborhood, to have it just a regular neighborhood, not duplexes. So I'm asking that it be declined.
Thank you. Next card is Mike Reed.
I'm Mike Reed. I live at 23 Mountain Vista. The first letter on my door yesterday, I've actually never spoken to Mr. Calhoun, but he left a letter on our door, because I was at work when he come around. And it basically says that if he don't get to build duplexes, he's going to change our bill of assurance and build small homes. So, I mean, he could do that. I mean, he's on 75% of the lots. We probably won't have a leg to stand on there. But the duplexes, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. His math didn't work out for me. If you have 45 duplexes, that's ninety homes. That's ninety families. That's doubling the amount of families on our neighborhood. So if each family has two cars, that's 180 cars there. If they have a kid, you add another 45 cars to it. That's driving age. So our street, our community, we won't handle that. It will not take it. We don't have enough parking, enough, you can't, you have a front yard. It says 50 feet off the street. You barely have enough room to park your cars as it is. There is no side yard, no backyard. Your backyards are on a slope. I mean, I mow my backyard. I bought me a pair of baseball cleats so I could mow the yard so it wouldn't slide down the hill. So there is no other And our street is a private street. It's not a public street. We're responsible, the city told us, we're responsible for all repairs on it. So if you add that much traffic on our street, how much more are we going to be out for repairs to keep the upkeep of it? I mean, we have a choice. Is Mr. Calhoun going to pick up and pick up the slack and redo the street when it needs it? I don't think so. He's got rental property on it. He's making money. But I'd like to submit this letter to the...
Yes, please do.
That's really all I had to say about it.
Thank you. Michelle Reed?
Thank y'all for having us. I really don't have a lot more to say than what my neighbors have already said. There are nine homes currently there occupied. Some homes have one person. Some homes have five people. There are three homes that are under construction, two by Mr. Calhoun, and then one by the lady and her husband that spoke earlier. We are a small group there, as you see from that, and they keep talking about the one way in, one way out, but that is it. There's one way in and one way out. Because we are Little Rock, our kids are in Little Rock School District. Well, the school bus has no place to turn around. They keep talking about emergency vehicles using the turnarounds, but the school buses can't even use those. So they have to drop the kids at the end of the street, and then they have to walk on from there, because they cannot turn around there. There's no access for that. The first responders, whether it's fire department, whether it's ambulance, whether it's police, we have been instructed by Little Rock Police Department when it comes to crime or issues that we may need the police, I shouldn't even say crimes, but issues we may need the police, that because Shannon Hills is right there with us, I mean, that's who we're surrounded by, Shannon Hills. We are the only street on that whole mountain that is Little Rock. They have instructed us to contact Shannon Hills. If we call 911, Celine County automatically picks up, because I guess that's just who we're pinging off of. And when they hear our address, the first thing they want to say is, you know, we'll dispatch you to Little Rock. No, we've been instructed by Little Rock and Shannon Hills... No, we've been instructed by Little Rock and Shannon Hills that Shannon Hills needs to respond first. If there is a situation that needs to be handled, then Little Rock, of course, they will be on their way, because Shannon Hills doesn't have that jurisdiction, but they would be there first to see what is happening and try to calm the situation. We have been there eight years. I've only known of a few times that the police have been called up there. Again, we're quiet. We stay to ourselves. We help each other. We are a private street. As my husband said, we are responsible. City of Little Rock has already told us, if we get a pothole, we're responsible for that pothole. Anything that happens there, we have that. Well, when you put potentially ninety families in addition to the ones that are there, that's going to increase that traffic. What's going to happen to our street? The construction itself has taken a toll, just in front of the houses that are there. There's paint all over the street. There are all their extra supplies that are across the street. I mean, it does take its toll. So, I do request that you deny that. The mayor of Shannon Hills, of course, he has spoken. He was here in December. He's unfortunately not able to make it. So, Mr. Bennett came in in his spot tonight, but, I mean, he has voiced these concerns. And when he wants to talk about fire department, I don't know if they spoke with Shannon Hills Fire Department, but I know Little Rock Fire Department came through, and while they said they were able to get their vehicles up there, although it's tight, they said when they turn the hydrants on, the pressure's not there, and I believe that's in the information that they turned in to the planning staff. So, if we were to have a major fire, we have to utilize Shannon Hills. They are the ones that are right down the street from us, but they only have so much they can do, and if the water tower is not gonna handle a fire, and we're all packed in there like that, then we have a whole other situation, because we're gonna need more than Shannon Hills and Little Rock at that point, and there's not enough water. So, I do ask that you really consider that when making your decision, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, next card, and we do have several cards left, so we have, the time is dwindling down, but I wanna bring forward Director BJ Wire, please.
That's the second time my coffee's been spilled since I've been here, so I guess it wants to be on the ground instead of in my cup. Thank you for allowing me to come up. As you know, I'm the city director for Ward Seven. Most of the people that spoke today are from Ward Seven. I'm also the liaison between the city board and you all, and I don't come to speak to you very often. This may be like the third time in two years that I've ever came before you to speak about anything that's on your agenda. I got a call in regards to the duplexes going in on Mount Vista, and so I took a field trip to go up to see what was going on, and yes, I had boots on the ground. I went down Barmy Ridge Road, which has about seventeen thousand cars a day. Then you turn on County Line Road, which I'm not sure who owns that street. I don't know if it's Shannon Hills or City of Little Rock, because you see, we're right at the boundary. We're right at the boundary of City of Little Rock and Shannon Hills. And then you go down County Line, and you make a quick right, quick right to go up to Mount Vista. And the property on the street is flat, only at the ridge. So, you've got houses on both sides, and their front yard is the only flat surface. Everything else drops to the bottom. So, I observe that. When you talk about putting in, when you talk about changing what's going into the zoning from residential to duplexes, we're talking about forty-five lots. Well, that automatically makes you ninety residents. Most people have four people in a residence. You got a mom and a daddy and a couple of kids, or a mama and three kids, or a daddy and three kids, but typically it's four. So, that gets you three hundred and sixty more people up on that mountaintop. We've got a letter from the mayor. We've got a letter from the Shannon Hills City Council in regards to the storage of water. The other issue that we're concerned about is if there is a fire, we don't have pressure from that water tower. They're saying they can't serve that many residences. It was set up for single-family, not multifamily, and so we don't know if it can be served in the future. I would ask that you would deny this application, and let's keep it as residential the way it was set up initially. The neighborhood is very cohesive. I went up there to visit that one morning, and I had four or five neighbors that came out to talk to me right at the top of the hill. So, if there was an opportunity, or if the Apex Company took an opportunity to talk to people, I'm sure they would have. But to my knowledge, the only thing that's happened is a letter that was put at their door yesterday, and it's almost like it's a threat. If I don't get the duplexes, then I'm gonna go to tiny homes. I'm gonna, I'm gonna revamp my bill of assurance and go to smaller homes. That's not a way to introduce yourself to the neighborhood. So, I would hope that you would vote no for this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. All right, we have a couple of cards left due to the time expiration. I would just put these in for the record. We do have Tim Sanders and Troy Leahy that was on for the opposition of these cards, okay? So, with that being said, can I please get the applicant to come back up to the podium, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we start his time, could I ask just a couple of questions that might help the entire commission?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Because I'm totally confused here. Okay.
No, excuse me. Are these questions for the applicant, or is it questions for the staff? Okay, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
The Shannon Hills connection, guys, is this subdivision in Shannon Hills or in Little Rock? It's before the Little Rock Planning Commission. So, is it a Little Rock subdivision?
It is in Little Rock.
Okay. Does Shannon Hills Water serve this subdivision?
Yes.
Okay. That's confusing, because we can't have that many subdivisions that are served by something other than Central Arkansas Water. I wish we didn't have any. So, if we don't do what they want, they can just shut the water off, right? I mean, I'm being serious. The mayor said he didn't want this development, so does he have the authority to shut our water off?
I couldn't speculate about that, Commissioner Hart.
Okay. Is the drive, it's been mentioned by a couple of residents that this drive is private. Do we know if it's private, or does the City of Little Rock maintain the road?
It's a private road.
Private road, okay. All right. And then, from a utility perspective, does the, I guess I'm trying to figure out who's responsible for this subdivision. What is Little Rock's responsibility?
Little Rock would ultimately be responsible for the fire and police safety, but as many of them have said, the first responders would be Shannon Hills with Little Rock on their way. Shannon Hills, their responsive team from fire and police would be the closest to this subdivision.
Okay. Do we have the trash? Do we pick up their trash? Yeah, okay. So, this is kind of a hybrid. So, this is weird. I don't feel comfortable even, I don't know. This is weird. Okay, those were my questions. We'll let the applicant back.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
A follow-up question to staff or whoever's appropriate. So, the only way into, sorry, the only way into this area is by driving through Shannon Hills. There is no access through the City of Little Rock. That's why we had the first responder issue. Is that what I'm hearing?
Right. You have to, you have to go through Celine County to get into the subdivision.
Okay, so that's why, that's why we're looking at this, even though it's within our boundary, but all of the services come from Celine County.
That is true.
And Celine County has said that they're uncomfortable with this. Is that what I'm hearing?
The City of Shannon Hills is opposed to it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Hart, I don't know if it helps or not, but Mr. Calhoun just told me that the water bill actually comes from Central Arkansas Water. That's what, and that's why I was saying is that they may have clarification on it.
Okay. If Central Arkansas Water, I don't really care where Central Arkansas Water gets the water. If they're purchasing it and providing it to the subdivision, we're providing that utility to the subdivision. I just, my question is, this was developed as a Little Rock subdivision approved by the City of Little Rock, and yet we've got Shannon Hills government officials dictating what happens next in the subdivision. So, that's the confusing part. Okay, all right.
All right. So, at this particular time, you do have a few minutes left. There were, you know, a lot of concerns about the neighbors. You have, you have a few minutes if you'd like to address those, or I'm certain we have other commissioners that have other questions for you all, if you would like to, as a matter of fact, this is what we do. We go ahead. I'm gonna open the floor up to the commissioners, because I'm sure they may have some questions on this. And so, at this time, commissioners, do you have any questions on this? Please feel free to make a statement or address your questions.
I think a sort of a clarification to make.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
And it's in rebuttal to the, to the issue of density of this neighborhood. The ordinance states you're incorrect in your assertion that it's not doubling the number of units it is, because it's the number of units. So, if you have a duplex, that's two, it's not per property. You can have six units on one lot. That's six units, not one property. So, you are in effect doubling the number of units for this development. However, the RL zone allows for six units per acre. Six times eighteen, it's a hundred and eight. If you do the math, if you develop this entire neighborhood as currently proposed, you would have a hundred and six units. So, that's my only clarification. You are doubling the units, but you are within the allowable number of units for the current zoning ordinance. That's it.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification, and part of the reason I did the spreadsheet was because there were so many objections in relation to traffic and those sorts of things and use of utilities. Not necessarily, I get the technical ordinance definition of density, but I was looking at it from the standpoint also of what the objections are, and that's why I made reference to the fact that you're talking about this development leading to no extra adults. If you utilize, if my spreadsheet that I did on averages is true, and you're just talking about children being the difference in the number of people.
Sure, and it's a valid argument, but I just wanted to clarify the actual nuts and bolts of the development that we're really talking about.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions?
I have a question. So, in regards to the letter that you provided to people, it said your first choice is to build and sell single-family homes. So, what's preventing you guys from doing that, because it appears your second choice is the townhomes?
Thank you, sir. We're currently building and in the process of completing two single-family homes that have been listed for sale since we started them about seven, eight months ago. We've ran into appraisal issues because of, I guess, the area and the cost to build right now. They're not, we're getting issues with getting them to appraise for a amount that makes it feasible for us to build them and sell them. With that said, we went ahead to try it anyway. So, the first two houses, and they're very nice houses, are almost complete. We updating the photos, and again, hoping they sell. If they sell, we've already got two more houses ready to start basically immediately. I'm just not, I'm not convinced they're gonna sell, and so this is kind of a backup plan. If we, if we build the, we're building them. If they don't sell, there's no point of us starting the next one. It gives us an option to pivot to. It's also, we do higher-end, like really high-quality rental properties, so it's not, people think of, unfortunately, especially here in Little Rock, there's a problem with not nice rental properties. We try to do very high-quality ones, so they'd be, they're not crappy little duplexes. They're, they're gonna be higher-end rental properties. There's also the ability for, which we see a lot in other parts of the country. And specifically, we just had a meeting all day with a good friend of mine from Denver. He lives in a million-dollar home in Denver, Colorado, and we were talking about this issue, and he was saying that the entire neighborhood is sprinkled in with very similar townhomes on the single-family lots around the million-dollar houses. And it gives just people the opportunity, if they wanna buy those instead of a single-family house, where they can, they can, you know, have family members move in next door, rent the unit next door to help offset their living costs. And so, even if we build these nicer townhomes, we wouldn't be opposed to selling them to owner occupants. I've seen it more and more common, and more and more people calling me specifically asking if we have small multi-unit, you know, buildings for sale for people to move into one side and kind of keep that other side as a rental to reduce their housing prices. So, again, we'd love to build the whole neighborhood and just, just sell them to owner occupants, but if that doesn't work, we wanna have an option to move towards so that it doesn't sit here for another, you know, fifteen or twenty years undeveloped.
Thank you.
I would add to that to say, the commissioners, you all know this, a rezoning to R4 doesn't mandate that he build duplexes on it. It just gives more available options for what he can do down the road should the single-family home appraisal start coming back poor, can't sell them. That's what he's talking about.
I'm sorry, we would definitely, we would love to get everybody's statement. Unfortunately, due to time, we wanna respect everybody's time. If we can please refrain from any kind of outbursts or statements at this particular time unless addressed or asked by any of the commissioners. Thank you so much. Any other statements or questions from any of the commissioners?
I have one, one question. Did you, did you purchase this property at auction, the lots at auction? Did you purchase them from one, one developer through an auction, or?
No, sir. I'm not sure, I'm not sure the total background or the total situation there. I think they were sold at some point during some type of auction when they probably, whoever developed it originally was around two thousand and eight, so it probably went upside down, sold at some point in auction. We purchased them from somebody who had owned them. Again, it wasn't an auction. It was from a single owner.
Yeah, how many, how many total lots are there along Mount Vista Drive, the total number of lots?
I don't, it's just over fifty. I don't know exactly off the top of my head. We purchased forty-five of the total number.
And there are about seven or eight homes in the subdivision now. Is that, is that about right? You're building a couple, and there, I see just a smattering of homes.
It's about eight existing from back, I'm sorry, nine existing from back when, and there's three single-family homes that are under construction right now.
So, this hasn't worked out. I mean, from, if you look at the history of this thing, you, you look at all these other, I'm looking at Skyline Drive here and Nickel Cove and, and South Fork Drive, and they're homes on every lot. But for whatever reason, Mountain Vista, which was started fifteen years ago, it is, it has, it failed. I mean, the model, whatever the model was, it's a failed model, because you've got fifty lots and seven homes over fifteen years. That doesn't, financially, that didn't work out for the original developer, okay?
And Commissioner Hart, that's one of the reasons that Mr. Calhoun's asked for a change here, an opportunity to try something different. And to answer further questions about the purchase, I've looked at the deed history. The deed history indicates that there were deeds in lieu of foreclosure done in a couple of instances, and so it's passed down through that, and Mr. Calhoun purchased it from an actual owner. And there was some confusion and communications. I don't know why there's been so much about negative communication, but there were some communications that I had with some of the owners in the subdivision where they thought that he was somebody from California or Florida that had bought it for nothing and wanted to come in and ruin their subdivision, and he's here, and he's obviously not that person. So, I wanna clarify that as well, because the prior owner on deed does have an address on that deed that evidences that they were a Florida corporation that ended up failing and sold the property.
This almost, it appears to me to be a, we can either try something new and move forward and get development, or we can leave it as it's been for the last fifteen years and have maybe one or two houses construct, I mean, what, this has not, this hasn't worked from a development standpoint. So, if we look back on this development, I mean, it's substantially empty. So, I understand why, why there's a, a new plan. It's just that the neighbors that are already there don't, they don't, they don't like it, but I understand why there's a new plan. I'm still not clear on the, totally clear on the Shannon Hills, our neighbors from Shannon Hills issue, but we'll work around that.
The pace we're going, it's gonna be ninety years to develop this.
All right. So, do we have any, thank you, Commissioner Hart, do we have any other statements or questions from any other commissioners before I ask for a motion?
I'm just gonna ask one question. Obviously, the city came out with a long-term development plan. There's been a lot of talk about downtown development, obviously, lack of density in downtown, trying to get places and businesses and leases up to speed. So, have you thought about doing something similar to this in the downtown area?
It's up to you. I'm not thinking about it. It's gonna be handled by anybody.
Yes, sir, absolutely. We're actively buying and developing right now currently on infill lots throughout the city, including some of the urban areas that are, have gone, you know, untouched for a really long time. And so, this is, this is hundred percent something that we'll do. this is hundred percent something that we'll do in other parts of the city as and when we can. Um, it's just, obviously, we can only work through so many projects at a time.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Baxter, I actually pulled that long-term report that you had, and I was gonna reference it, but I didn't want to run out of time. And this area is in one of the areas that was identified, back in twenty twenty-two by Mayor Scott when they did the three-year plan, and it, this particular area indicated that it had a twenty-six point seven to a thirty-three point nine percent area of housing problems in this exact area where it's at. And the other thing I noted in this was that, part of the finding from Mayor Scott's proposal was that increasing the supply of housing is a cornerstone of the city's housing plan to alleviate housing supply constraints. And this was one of the areas identified in the three-year plan that actually just concluded. It was twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. I don't know how that turned out now that we're here in twenty twenty-five.
Alright, thank you. Alright, at this particular time, if we don't have any other questions from any other commissioners, I would like to entertain a motion for this, uh, action item.
Make a motion to approve file number Z dash one zero zero six four, with all conditions and requirements with the exception of staff's recommendation for denial.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Brown?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
No.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
No.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Nay.
Baxter?
No.
Vickers?
No.
Motion fails. Thanks for coming out, uh, here. We're gonna give just a moment, uh, for, uh, everyone to depart briefly. Alright, moving right along. We're gonna move to item number fifteen, Z dash one zero one one four, rezoning. If the applicant is present, please make your way to the podium. Alright, and.
Mr. Chair, on this one, uh, the only reason this is on the regular agenda, this would have been on consent agenda. Uh, you don't have any cards on this one. The only reason it's on regular agenda is the applicant in doing the notifications to the surrounding property owners. Uh, those were mailed out one day late. Uh, so the applicant asked if they could come to this meeting and request the, uh, that the commission consider waiving your bylaws to accept the notification as done by the applicant being one day late. Supposed to have been mailed out fifteen days prior to the meeting. It was mailed out fourteen days. So, so that's the issue before you, before you take a vote on, uh, the actual item itself.
Alright, so the, the notion on this is we need to amend the bylaws to allow that one day?
That's what the app was, is gonna ask you today.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, so the, what we would need to do is waive the bylaws for this particular application that would require a three-fourths vote of the members. Alright, and I'm, I guess before we make a motion or anything like that, if, if any other, any other commissioner have any objection for that? If not, I would entertain a motion to, uh,
So, so move to waive the bylaws.
Alright, so.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second for that. And let's, let's get a quick vote on that. Or we could just do a, if we want to do a, a speak out loud for yeas and nays.
Mr. Chairman, can, can we say one thing? We did do the mailouts on time for the January meeting. As we all know, the January meeting was canceled due to the weather. We didn't understand we were supposed to mail back out in February, so that was our fault. We didn't communicate, but as soon as staff pointed it out to us, we did them one day late, but we did them about two hours after staff notified us that we, that we missed it. So that is the reason. It wasn't that we were trying to skip it. We just had a miscommunication because of the canceled January meeting.
No, I understand. January was a little.
Yes, sir.
Are you sure it's not because your client just was trying to skirt the rules?
He's known to do that, you know, but he wanted to show up.
Alright, so right now, we're just gonna have a voice opinion for the, you know, amendment of the bylaws for this. The bylaws are made for this particular, for this particular item here. Alright, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Nays?
No.
Ayes, have it.
I just heard one no out of ten, so that would be your seventy-five percent.
Yes, yes. Alright.
And then we just make a motion.
In this case, we make a motion to approve it, yeah.
Yeah, ma- make a motion. We, uh, approve the item with all staff comments and recommendations.
Got a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second roll call vote, please. Well, can we just do a, all in favor? Can I just, we do a, uh, just roll call?
We prefer a roll call.
Yeah, Torres, please. Sure. So item fifteen, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move right along here to item number seventeen, item number seventeen. Is the applicant present? That's Z dash one zero zero eight four dash A, E and Y Development. Alright, okay, while you're making your way up here, um, Monty, could you give the reading, please?
Item number seventeen, file number Z ten thousand eighty-four dash A. This is E and Y Development LLC PDR located at fifteen sixteen South Ringo Street. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from R4 to PDR for a single-family residential development. The seventy-five by a hundred and forty-foot lot will be subdivided into two separate lots, each being thirty-seven and a half, a hundred and forty feet in area. Each lot will contain a two-story single-family residence. The applicant will not reside on the property and intends to market both single-family residences for sale in the future. Each single-family home will be twelve hundred and twenty-five square feet in area, contain a separate concrete drive extending from South Ringo Street. Section thirty-six five oh two B one A requires one parking space for a single-family residence. The parking plan shows a driveway from Ringo Street for each lot with a parking pad in the rear of each yard. Staff feels the parking is sufficient to meet code. The site plan also shows front rear setbacks over twenty-five feet, minimum five-foot side yard setbacks for both residences. The proposed residences will not exceed a height of thirty-five feet. The exterior of each resident will be, residents will be vinyl siding with asphalt shingling. And to, to staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues associated with this application. Staff believes the proposed development is an appropriate use for this property. The staff feels the proposed development will not be out of character with the development pattern in the area. Properties in the, in the general area contain a mixture of residential zoning and uses, with some properties containing a higher density than the proposed development. Staff believes the minor increase in traffic will not increase in overall traffic flow in the general area and will not have an adverse impact on the surrounding properties. Therefore, staff recommends approval. Other requested PDR zoning is subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph D E and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report.
Thank you, Monty. Alright, applicant, can you please state your name for the record?
Roy Andrews.
Okay, Mr. Andrews, uh, you have a host of cards here in, in opposition. Um, would you like to go forward now, or would you like to yield your time and, and come back afterwards?
We've got a quick handout for the commissioners, and then we want to yield our time till the end.
Okay, please give them, uh, to Mr. Jordan. And while we're doing that here, I'm gonna bring up, uh, some cards here. And then remind you, we, we have a host of cards here. There is a total of twenty minutes. If you would not like to speak and yield your time, uh, to, uh, uh, anyone else, you can, um, you know, or, uh, I would just say you have sixty seconds each or one minute each uh, to make your statement. At this particular time, I would like to bring up, is it Mia Foreman? Excuse me, Maya. Sorry about that. Maya Foreman.
Good evening. Um, I'm here again in opposition of the proposal. Um, I want to explain why this developer should not be able to build in this historic district with the proposed exterior. The developer has already destroyed the original property, erasing a vital piece of our community and history. Now they want to replace it with cheap industrial metal building structures that have no place in this historic district. Their goal isn't to improve the neighborhood, it's to gentrify and line their pockets at the expense of those who have called this district home for generations. These new buildings will be priced well beyond the means of the people living here, further pushing out longtime residents and rising property taxes, which will make it only harder for those who remain. This is not an effort to improve our community. It's a profit-driven agenda that ignores the real needs of the community. At the last meeting, if you all remember, one of the investors so proudly mentioned that he is a doctor. Well, a doctor's creed is to cause no harm. If the members of this community repeatedly come up here to tell you that we care about this neighborhood and what you're doing is going to cause harm, perhaps it's time for you to listen. Additionally, Mr. Jeremiah Russell, a board member, has shown nothing but disrespect for our efforts. He posted a Facebook comment being sarcastic that we were celebrating the fact that we were here the last time and this did not pass. The Dunbar Historic Community was, um, in celebration, and I thought that was in very poor taste. If you felt that way, keep it to yourself. You're not only supposed to represent investors, you're also supposed, supposed to represent the people. I thought that was very small of him, and that's not something that belongs on social media when you're in a position to represent both sides of a community. The community, since we no longer have the ability to restore the property because it has been torn down, the investors also posted in response to his Facebook member that it's just a dirt lot now. Well, the neighborhood and the block still has historic value. And since we're no longer able to restore that, whatever is built there should be built that is very similar to what honors the history and supports the people who live here. We cannot let profit-driven developers take over. With that being said, I will conclude with, we're gonna continue to stand up for the preservation of this neighborhood. This development will, development will do harm, not good. We will, what we must do is ensure that the people of this district remain the heart of this future. We're not opposed to investors. We're opposed to investors who are not invested in the community that they're building in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ariane Crenshaw? If I'm saying it, alright, thank you. Is it? If I'm saying this correctly, Ashley Jove or?
Joyce.
Joyce, excuse me, okay.
Hi, um, I guess I'm here in support of the new build on Ringo Street. So I'm here to communicate the need for new development in reinvig- in reinvigorating this neighborhood. So, um, I'm one of the new neighbors in, on, in this block. And I wish I had my presentation that I sent over because I would love to show you guys my historical neighborhood, which is full of dilapidated buildings and boarded-up homes. I walk every day with my dog around the block. I've walked all of the blocks. And yeah, I love Dunbar Historical Neighborhood, which is about three blocks the other way. And so when I want to like, look at something nice, I technically have to walk to Soma or I have to walk this way. Anything behind my home, I don't even go there with my dog. So I literally walk Ringo every day, and it is a blank plot. And to be honest, like, I'm basically just asking Little Rock to invest back in me who's invested into Little Rock. I want Soma, I want neighborhoods. I see all of the college students walking across the street from my home every day. They have nowhere to go, nothing to do. So honestly, like, I feel sorry, I do, for all of the neighbors that have been living there, which have been incredibly kind to me. And I do think that, you know, there is an opportunity for development. There's a lot of new people moving to Little Rock. We just want opportunities to have a nice home. And honestly, it's not fair to me that I live next door to the Gibbs home, and then eventually that's going to become another dilapidated building, and then my property value goes down. Right? Because I've invested into this block. So truth be told, why should I have to also suffer, you know, because we don't want change? Change that could be better for the neighborhood, bring more economy, more opportunities. I wish there was a bar and girl. I wish I didn't have to walk three blocks this way or three blocks that way to do anything in my neighborhood. So I did take a risk, I'm not gonna lie, because I didn't want to buy in the Heights. I didn't want to buy in Hillcrest. I wanted to invest in downtown Little Rock, where I am meeting a lot of neighbors in the community that are also excited for downtown Little Rock to pick up. There's a lot of people who own historical homes, but like, and they are investing money into keeping their homes fixed and up, keeping it up to date. So if you're not gonna do any development, then I'm going to ask that you actually reinforce all of the historical homes in the area and make sure that they keep up to date with their codes. Because it's not fair for me that I invested in this neighborhood and the neighborhood is not investing back into me. So that's really why I'm here. I am, I am in favor of the Ringo Street home. I do believe there are multiple people like my age and younger who want to have luxury town, like townhome-looking houses. Like, why don't I deserve it? Why don't I deserve it? I also grew up in, you know, uh, without a lot of money, and I've worked my ass off, sorry to say, my whole life to be able to afford a really nice home. So I feel like, you know, I invested in it, I worked really hard, and I am a minority as well who deserves an opportunity to live in a, live in a safe neighborhood where I don't have to worry about strangers walking around, homeless people, people breaking down doors. I mean, I wish I, like, please look at my presentation. I sent it over. You'll see all the photographs of all of my neighbors' abandoned homes. They're all abandoned. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for note, that was the record, that was a card in support for this one. Next card is, uh, in opposition is Ann Ballard Bryant. Thank you. Thank you. Scott Smith?
I'm opposing, I'll yield too.
Thank you. Angela Sworder?
I'm opposing, I'll yield my time.
Thank you. Uh, Patricia Hendrick? Alright, John Hendrick?
Likewise, you.
Alright. Uh, Trisha Bean?
Can I defer my time to let, um, the Neighborhood Association person speak first?
Sure. Angela Burt?
Alright, good evening, commissioners, community leaders and neighbors. I stand before you today, not just as a representative of the Dunbar Historic Neighborhood Association, but a voice for a community that has fought to preserve its legacy for generations. We are here because fifteen sixteen Ringo Street, a site that once held a historic single-family home, a home that carried the stories, the struggles, the triumphs of those who came before us. That home is now demolished. And today, the question before us is not about what will replace it, but how we honor what was lost to ensure that the de- development serves the greater good of the historic district. Let me be clear. We are not against development. It cannot mean disregarding the identity and character of a neighborhood that has stood a symbol of resilience and progress for over a century and not align the character that it surrounds. I also want to make sure that one key fact is on the record. Three or four months ago, we spoke with the developers and asked for the opportunity to raise the forty thousand dollars they had invested into the property so that we, as a community, could reclaim the historic land. At that time, the developers agreed to give us until the spring to raise the funds. But then, the very next day, they reneged on that agreement. Some of you have asked, what exactly are we trying to preserve? Let me be clear once again. We are preserving more than just one house. Fifteen sixteen Ringo was a part of Bush's Row, a street surrounded by other historical homes, three of which are on the National Historical Registry. It is a part of the historic fabric that gives this neighborhood a unique, irreplaceable identity. When you remove a single historic home from a row of others that have stood for generations, you break the continuity of that history. And when you replace it with something that does not honor its surroundings, you began to slow the slow process of taking that history away. One that we have seen happen too many, many, many his, many times in historically black communities across this country. One that we have seen happen too many, many, many times in historically black communities across this country. This is not just about one lot, this is about defending the integrity of an entire historic block. This decision is about more than just one house. It's about setting precedence for how we protect historic black communities like ours. It is about ensuring that our neighborhood doesn't become just another gentrified space where history is paved over in the name of profit. Today, we ask the Commission to stand with us in protecting the integrity of the Dunbar Historic Neighborhood. We are not just asking for preservation, we are advocating for progress with purpose. Because when we honor our past, we build a future that is stronger, richer and more meaningful to everybody, to everyone. I'd like to take this real quick moment to ask those who have come in opposition of this development to please stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany Nichols? Brittany Nichols?
She's not here.
She's not here, okay. Uh, is it Rip Weaver? Is that incorrect? Yes.
Good evening Commissioners, Chair Vickers. Uh, my name is Rip Weaver, I am with the Downtown Little Rock Neighborhood Association, an elected officer and also resident of downtown Little Rock. Um, I want to voice uh, the um, opinion or the um, what our members have voted against. And just to let you know, this association stands its four decades' worth of history and support of downtown Little Rock. Our members, many of whom are here today, have formally voted to oppose this proposal for 1516 Ringo Street and we stand in full support of the Dunbar Historic Neighborhood Association, the Quapaw Quarter Association and others in their efforts to protect the legacy of this unique historic Little Rock neighborhood. To be clear, we support infill, we support business, we support thoughtful development in our city. However, we believe the insensitive approach demonstrated to date by developers at 1516 Ringo has eroded trust among residents and sets a dangerous precedent for historic neighborhoods in Little Rock. Therefore, we urge you to listen to the residents and other stakeholders who have long invested in preserving this neighborhood, its architecturally significant structures and spaces, and reject this proposal in favor of a development approach that truly honors the history and character of this area. And I was gonna also ask for people to stand, as you guys saw, um, there are many here in opposition, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathy Wells?
Good afternoon, uh, thank you Members of the Planning Commission for thoughtful attention to this issue. I'm President of the Coalition of Little Rock Neighborhoods. I come from uh, the Downtown Neighborhood Association, I live in the Capital Zoning Historic District near to this property. And I would simply affirm our support for our neighbors and their views and point out that uh, you need to please take into account uh, the wider focus indeed. We know, it's demonstrated, historic districts hold value of property values, those houses worth more in an historic district. We know that since uh, the city went west of um, university over the decades in our past, uh, subdivisions acquired um, design guidelines. Uh, you had to build pretty much within a few limits. By the time we've gotten out to Chenal, their design guidelines are extremely specific, extremely detailed, and they introduce it by saying, "We are creating these guidelines to prevent discordant architecture" because that costs money and holding to a guideline adds value and holds value. As we fill in the 7,700 vacant lots I got from the assessors list of residential vacant properties in the city of Little Rock, that's a whole city to build again. They're gonna be sprinkled throughout all these neighborhoods and they need to be compatible, not discordant architecture matching with their neighbors. We rely on you to guide and lead that process, here and everywhere else it comes before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Trisha Bean?
Thank you Commissioners for hearing us again today, really appreciate it. I'll try to make this brief because I know time's kinda ticking, so. My name's Trisha Bean, I'm the Executive Director for the Quapaw Quarter Association and I come here today to strongly oppose the proposed development of 1516 Ringo Street. This is about the integrity of a historic neighborhood, the preservation of our state history and the responsibility that we all have to honor and protect the unique character of Little Rock. The developers of this project were fully aware of the historic significance of this property when they purchased it, despite what they say. They knew this home was part of Bush Row, a historically significant area tied to Little Rock's African-American history and larger, all of American history. Despite this, they moved forward with the purchased and planned demolition acting quickly in hopes of circumventing the history and significance of this site. Removing historic homes can jeopardize a neighborhood's eligibility for the National Register of Historic Places by compromising its historic integrity. The National Park Service evaluates districts based on criteria like location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling and association. The loss of too many contributing structures which this demolition caused can weaken a district's historical significance, reducing cohesion and potentially disqualifying it from being qualified. This is not just about revitalization, it's about restoring and maintaining the integrity of historically recognized community. Building homes that are misaligned with the existing historic character damages not just the aesthetic but the cultural significance of the neighborhood. The destruction of Bush Row is yet another instance of the erasure of black history, something that has happened too often in Little Rock and across our country. This is about celebrating our collective history. Black history has been decimated and we must take a stand to preserve what remains. The developer has not only cost themselves valuable time and resources by refusing to collaborate with the community, but they have also damaged their own integrity and standing within the community. Instead of working with local stakeholders to explore alternatives or allowing time for funds to be raised for a potential purchase, they chose to push forward with a plan that disregards the wishes of those who care most about this neighborhood. True revitalization is built on trust, it's built on respect and community involvement, qualities that this process has unfortunately severely lacked. Rather than taking a short-sighted approach of demolishing historically significant homes, we urge the city to encourage responsible development that enhances the neighborhood's city or neighborhoods and history rather than erasing it. Investing in the restoration of the historic character of this neighborhood will not only add to the long-term value but will foster even more pride amongst its residents. This is about protecting the legacy of a property that is unique in its history, importance and character. We are not talking about a suburb, this is about honoring the history and people of Little Rock, protecting and building upon our identity. The developer has an opportunity to be a true partner and advocate to build homes that align with the neighborhood's historical identity and to contribute to the ongoing effort to celebrate and protect Little Rock's legacy. Think about the strong preservation and character of iconic cities like New Orleans, Charleston and Savannah, cities that have embraced their history and reaped benefits. Little Rock should strive to do the same. We encourage them to reconsider their approach once again. We respectfully request the Planning Commission denies this application. Approving it would set a precedent that weakens historic preservation efforts throughout Little Rock. Instead, let us work together to ensure that development in our historic neighborhoods enhances and honors their unique history rather than erasing it. And before I go, I just wanna have another stand of everybody who's opposed to this. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Alright, can we please bring the applicant back up?
Roy Andrews and then I have um, EY Homes here as well. And we also have the realtor that sold them the house prior to that, that if there's any questions that can be asked.
The seller.
I mean, the seller, yes. Um, just a couple of things, as we talked about before, uh, this house was condemned. Uh, this house, if you look at the old photos when we looked at Google Earth, this house um, had a tarp over the roof and the tarp was torn because it had been there so long, the house had been vacant for years. So, they were doing something that the city uh, was requesting and that was to tear down a condemned house. If you also look in the handout, you'll see that there's uh, pictures of the neighborhood. Um, there's a variety of styles in this neighborhood, we understand the historic significance of this area. There are a variety of styles. They have backed off from the traditional or from the more contemporary look to go more traditional with that house at the request of the neighborhood.
And after meeting with Ms. Bean and Ms. Burt and we took, you know, their recommendations and we've changed. We changed the plans four times based off of a meeting with them and their email communication and recommendations. So, for Ms. Bean to say that we're not trying to collaborate with the community and work with them is really unfair because we've changed the plans four times, so I'm not quite sure what she's wanting us to do as far as a collaboration unless it's at this point, so.
Also, I'd just like to say, a lot of things have been misrepresented. One, we did have a meeting and that's where they said, "Hey, we would like to get some money." We said, "If you wanna do that, that's fine," but we never said, "Let's write a deal." There was no contract, there was no handshake. Then, about three months later, in January, they say, "Hey, we got money with ABC, Arkansas Baptist College." I say, "Where's the contract, where's the money?" Then they bring up money again. They have no money and they have no money to invest in this area, all they are is being roadblocks to progress. This land is our land, we can build on it, we can do a duplex if we want. We'd rather do two single-family homes that adds more value to the area if we're not trying to be renters. And it's bawling to me and makes me very upset to say, "Oh, I'm a doctor and actually, we're making the area better." We've already built six homes in the area, it's my time, please. I didn't interrupt you.
Hold on, let's get some order.
Well, they need to keep the crowd bound because, one, last time they brought up race. This is not about, you guys stand at the beginning of every meeting and tell us, "We can't talk about race, we can't talk about sex, we can't talk about mental disabilities." That's what happened last time and they misrepresented me and said that, made it sound like I would not sell to them. I never offered to sell it to them and we can have our friend who sold it to us, because that's who they're talking about, not me.
My name is Erica, I represent.
Please come to the podium, please state your name for the record.
My name is Erica Camp, um, we owned the property previously, I bought it from Charles Townsend for $5,000. Um, he was not interested in the property, we went there. The uh, cost to renovate was far outside of Charles's capacity and when we bought it, we bought it with the intent of tearing it down. I applied for and obtained a demolition permit from the City of Little Rock and I had the intention of building a very modern home on the land. I was never approached by a neighbor. I did contact the City of Little Rock several times regarding abandoned vehicles on the street and um, the disarray of some of the things in the area. Um, I did not hear back.
Those vehicles are still there, by the way, parked in front of our property and they were and it belongs to. Those abandoned vehicles are still parked in front of our property.
Um, I have, you know, I was never contacted by anyone, I did speak with a lady, um, I'm sorry about that. I did speak with a lady when I was trying to apply for the demolition permit and she let me know that there would have been funds available if I was interested in revitalizing the home. I told her I was not at all interested in revitalization, that it was our intent to demolish the property. When we saw um, Erica York and EY Construction building other properties in the area, we decided um, to sell the property to them because they were already improving the area and we decided to go to a different area. Again, I had no idea that anyone else wanted the property or that there was this much passion attached to it. When we acquired it from Charles, I was afraid to even go inside of it. I mean, the roof uh, had a huge hole in it. It was in, like I said, really bad condition.
Got it, no, I understand, thank you. Alright, so what I would like to do with this time here, I know.
I have one more person that we actually asked to, that builds there in the district and is a neighbor in that area because they've got 70 people.
Do we have cards in support for that person?
Yeah, I'd yield my time to him because he's our contractor.
We need a card.
He's a contractor.
Yeah, we would need a card of support, but uh, but are you asking a statement? Are you trying to say he had a statement?
Well, we just, Dr. Hearn is a member of the community and lives down the street and lives down the street and is a member of the community and also builds homes in the area and is trying to invest in the area and he is in support of.
Well, that's good, we'll make that note for the record and we can put that on the record that he is in support of that.
There's a lot of people in support and I don't know what the passion is about an empty lot, it's ours.
A lot. No, no, I'm sorry, Dr., I'm sorry, if we can, we just wanna try to keep order and we know we have a lot of other items on the agenda.
I'm passionate about just building on my land and I know that they're all passionate about it, it seems to me like a news stunt because every time they're going, right afterwards, we're in the newspaper, we're on the news. Put in the bad lights saying we're trying to develop a duplex, we're not trying to do a duplex. We're trying to build two single-family homes, that's all we've built in the area. This is eight homes that we're building, six in this area and three, two more just right down the street within a quarter mile and they're smaller, 15 feet wide, these are 20 feet wide. And we've accommodated to every need they gave us at that last meeting. They want driveway in the back, they don't want two-car garages in front loading. We want a full patio in the front, that's all in there and it's in my packet I put together, that I passionately put together because I think this is ridiculous that we're going through this for six months and if they wanna buy it, you could buy it six months ago, six months to buy.
If they wanted to buy the property and raise the money, they've had plenty of time, they could have came to the meeting with a check today.
We would.
Right?
Give me 50,000, all they do is keep telling me what they got money, they don't have money.
They're just kicking the can down the road.
Hold on, please, let's get some order, hold on, please. Let's get some order here.
It's our game.
Hold on, let's be respectful, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's be respectful.
Ms. Bean does not have any money.
Let's please be respectful here. So, I have a question, so you're saying that you have met their kind of terms, if you will, that they want it with the patio and?
As far as design, yes, we have accommodated.
It's in the last minutes of the last meeting what they want.
We've redesigned the plan four times based off their recommendations and so I don't know what else they are wanting at this point.
Not a problem. Do you have any more statements that you all would like to make before I open the floor up to the Commissioners?
No, thank you all.
No problem. Alright, so at the time I wanna open the floor to Commissioners, I know Commissioner Russell had a few questions here.
I have some questions for the Opposition QQA and the Neighborhood Association if they would wanna come back to the podium.
Do you have a representative that wants to speak? If you have, uh, if you have two representatives that would like to speak on behalf of the total group?
I would just like to say, I know that Commissioner Russell wasn't in the room when the comments were made at the top but it does give me concern that he hasn't recused himself, given.
Why would I recuse?
Because there were some comments that you made on Facebook, not just once, four times, no. You even made them on the Dunbar page, you made them on your personal page. You engaged with conversation with ENY Developers, the applicant, on Facebook in public just saying horrible things about the property. I just don't think he should be able to ask questions or be involved in this process.
I don't have a financial interest in this project, I don't have a bias.
I will say this.
Every comment that I've ever made has been public, anybody can go and read it, so why would I recuse?
No, let me just say this, just for the record, unless you're claiming you have a financial interest in this property. Uh, if not, um, then I don't wanna go back and forth and if it's not legal terms, so I wanna do is, Commissioner Russell, please address your questions to the Association.
So, this application is not a demolition application. It's also not an enforcement issue where we are coming back to address the demolition of the property. So, my big question is, what exactly are you trying to preserve within the neighborhood?
The legacy and the history and the culture of the neighborhood and the Association. So, I would just say, we'd like to have something on that property that is in kind with the architecture in that area.
Leads to my next question, what is the period of significance for this historic neighborhood?
Angel?
Um, it is the Craftman, Craftman style if I'm not mistaken.
So based on the photos, I can allude a little bit to this. You have multiple styles that span a range of time from.
Now, let me just interrupt and I apologize. This is for a block. Because there's other historical properties on that block that was John E. Bush's that, that, the.
Does this block encompass the entire historic neighborhood?
This block does not encompass the entire historic neighborhood. However, it is a part of the Dunbar Historic Neighborhood.
That's what I'm alluding to.
Yes.
So the historic neighborhood as a whole determines the period of significance. It also, as the QQA representative knows, determines the number of properties that are contributing to the historic district, so.
Contributing and non-contributing, yes.
Only contributing properties as long as it's more than 51% of the total number of properties within the boundary count. So all of the non-contributing properties, including vacant lots, if infilled, will never have any impact on your historic neighborhood. Now, the architectural style, the size, the massing, other design elements will determine whether or not it is in keeping with the overall pattern of development. But if the overall period of significance in your neighborhood spans from the late 1880s to the 1960s, based on the photos that I have of the neighborhood, how exactly do you determine what is architecturally significant to be put on this infill lot when it has no bearing whatsoever on the historic neighborhood?
Excuse me, again, Commissioner, this is a historical block that has National Registry Homes on the historical block, at least four of them. And they demoed a national historical home that we had gotten an estimate on. We tried to purchase the home from the owner. This particular owner, we've never spoken to her. Charles Townsend is the person that we were dealing with and he's the one who decided to sell it to someone else, again, after promising to sell it to us. So to answer your question once again, we're not talking about the broader spectrum of the historic district or the neighborhood boundaries, the Neighborhood Association boundaries. We're talking about the historical block of famous businessperson, John E. Bush, where his family lived and the homes of his family members are still standing there after nearly 100 years.
How do you add a property to this neighborhood that would be historically contributing?
Can I answer that? Okay. So just a couple of things I want to say is that this block is not on the National Registry. It's individual homes, right? So we would like to get it registered as a, as the whole block. We'd like to get that registered. So by removing one of those homes or replacing a home with something that is not in kind, we'll address that and we'll upset our ability to do that. I've got it right here. You can refer to it on a National Register bulletin.
The property is not contributing.
When you go to.
Had you applied for the designation prior to the demolition and it was listed as contributing, yes, that would damage the validity of the historic registry nomination. The home is gone. So it is a vacant lot. Someone wants to build homes on it.
Yes.
If you own the lot, how would you add something that is going to be contributing to the historic district?
Right, thank you for giving me a chance to respond further. So what I would say is, you have to make sure that the historic elements are there. So you have to look at the siding. They look at the materials, they look at the, they look at it yourself. It's on the National Registry site, sections 15 and 16. It says in there exactly what would qualify. So if you build something in there that's modern and does not look like the rest of the neighborhood, it does impact the ability to make it a registered district.
So I gotta, let me get a question. I understand what you're saying. Let me, let me, let me, let me just add. Let me ask in hypothetical, if you will. Let's say, for instance, I own that lot, right?
Yep.
And me and my wife, we wanted to come and build, right? And I wanted to build a home, maybe a modern home. Would that, would that be any kind of legal setback for me and my family to come and build what I wanted to build?
It would not be a legal setback, but it would hurt the integrity of the neighborhood, the historic integrity of the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question and. Well, my question was just, is the planning commission considering the architecture of what's going to be built? Or are we just considering the fact that homes are going to be? Are we just considering the site plan? I mean, we normally don't talk about architecture at these meetings, right? I mean, we're not an architectural control board, is what I'm saying.
That is true.
So we, from an architectural standpoint, the existing home's already been torn down. So really, we're just here to consider the fact that homes are going on this lot, not so much what their design will be. That's a matter for, yeah, Monty, who is that a matter for?
Well, the main reason this application is before you is because the applicant is proposing to subdivide this property into two lots that are smaller than what is typically allowed. That's the main reason it's before you.
Yeah, so really, all we need is a plot showing the two lots. We don't, we don't need pictures of the homes that will be built or anything like that. That is not a matter that comes before the planning commission.
And what we're asking as a historic neighborhood association that has a historic district is that whatever goes back in that place, just to be sensitive to the community and put up a historical facade at that property. That's what we're asking. Instead of putting in a modern structure in the middle of other historical homes. It'll be a really nice tour for Little Rock when we're talking about the history of our community, of our historic district or the historic neighborhood. And in the middle of all that, you have historical homes here, historical homes here. And then here we have this modern, you know.
Right.
And I think I see what you're saying, Commissioner.
My point, we're not an architectural control board. We just look at the lot splits, right?
And I would just say this, I'm familiar with the area. I love the area. But what I'm trying to get is, I think the applicant said they will sell the home, if I'm not mistaken.
They said they would sell, they would sell the lot. And why didn't we, and why didn't we bring a check?
So I'm thinking, I'm thinking they may be open to selling, you know, obviously, we don't have any control over that. Whatever, whatever the market value or whatever they deem is sellable.
I heard that too.
Yes.
And I, and I, and I'm very, we're very open to that as well, if that's the truth. We're very open to that.
Yeah.
That's not an issue. Just give us time to raise the money. We would love to do that. And I think that's, that's all fair and love and war. We love the community. We love this historical row, okay? The war is a developer, in our view, as investors, we know what the purpose of investing is. And everybody knows that. But this is a delicate situation and we're just asking to give us the opportunity to, if we can't raise it, then that's fine. We understand that.
Hold on. Oh, go ahead.
To Commissioner Hart's point, when we're talking about compatibility with the neighborhood, we're talking about use. He's correct. I mean, we're not, we're not talking about the aesthetics. It's, it's, it's not in our purview to regulate the aesthetics of the property. If there was a concern with health, safety or welfare, something else of that nature. But I mean, as far as the private sale of the home is concerned, issues with the prior sale, anything that could have happened there, that's, that's not going to be relevant to our decision today. This is already zoned R4. We've talked about that before. It's not like the applicant can't build anything on the lot currently.
Right.
So I just, I just wanted to make that clear.
No, I think that's what the commissioner, Commissioner Russell, Commissioner Hart, and I think what we're saying is, our governing of that and voting on the specifics, I think, not saying outside of our realm, but it is outside of our realm of what we're looking at. I mean, we're looking at the owners and the association. If y'all have agreed to certain things like this, hey, I agree to this, this look, this outcome. And if it doesn't meet the fit, or if you say, hey, yes, we want to buy it, but if it's outside of their timeframe, you say, hey, give us 12 months. But they don't have 12 months. You see what I'm saying? So that's kind of outside of the governing of what the board actually does. So we're looking at, you know, a very confined, you know, restrictions on, you know, if it meets these restrictions, yes. If it doesn't, I mean, the heritage, you know, of the whole community, the street, the neighborhood. I mean, I don't think anybody probably would announce on this board of that. As far as are, are they meeting what they need to meet? Are they trying to be, work with the association, work with the neighborhood? You know, again, we wasn't there, so we don't know. We're going back and forth of he say, she say. But what we're looking at is what we have in front of us to vote on. You know what I mean? You know, unfortunately, you know, some of the things that are being brought, you know, obviously, we would love to have as many probably historical places as we can here in the city. You know, but, you know, as it may be, you know, we're just looking at the rules that we have in front of us. And that's really what it is. Do we have any other questions for any of the association?
This is more for staff. Just for clarification, if they weren't splitting the lot, this wouldn't even be here. They could just go build and be done with it. Maybe they could look however they want to. Is that what I understand?
The way the property is owned, the applicant could apply for a building permit today to build a single-family home or a duplex, any style they wanted to build it.
Okay.
And that could, that could get approved today. But instead, they wish to build two single-family homes instead of a duplex.
Got you. Alright, thank you. Do we have any other questions for any of the?
Just one, just one quick comment. Because I don't want to dismiss y'all's concerns. Y'all have great concerns, but it's just not, it's not what we, it's not what we regulate and not what we approve up here. But doesn't Central High have an overlay district? Don't they have an overlay district? Hearing a no and staff saying yes.
Yes, they do.
Anyway.
Yes, they do.
I don't know if y'all have considered an overlay district. That, that would, that would fix all of y'all's concerns. And then this, you wouldn't be relying on this planning commission who really is just here to look at a plot.
Yes, we have, yes, we have considered it.
Okay, okay, alright, that's, I was just.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any other questions for the association or anything like that? Thank you, ladies, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright. And so we can bring back up the applicants. Do we have any other questions for the applicants? Alright.
I'm going to keep this, Mr. Chair, I'm going to keep this one really brief. To the applicants, if this is not approved in terms of alternative plans, I noticed on the last page, it is just discussed, would it be to proceed with be building a duplex?
Yes. A modern duplex.
And so the two, the two single-family homes is your effort to do what you can to preserve the historical nature, correct?
Yes.
Yes, the homes are not modern. They're actually more Craftsman style. If you look at the packet that I sent.
Yes, could you please turn the mic so we can hear you?
The packet shows what we're trying to build the two family homes to be, the two single-family homes. They're single-story, modern, or sorry, two-story, single-family, modern homes on regular-sized lots that are bigger than most in the area. And if you look at every, I walked up and down every street and took pictures and we, very much the same aesthetic. I don't know what historic thing that they're trying to preserve and I'm all about history too. But I don't know what I'm trying to preserve in my land that I own. And I'm happy to change the street to Bush Street. I think it's amazing what he did with the Templars. But we also could put little plaques in the sidewalk that they offered to this email. Can we do something like that? Absolutely.
There are several things we could do.
Show me what you want to put, we'll put stamps in the concrete.
But continue to develop and add value to the community because you see other areas like Pettaway and what they've done. We want to do this in the Dunbar neighborhood. We want to see shops and restaurants and boutiques and.
There's no legacy.
And, and bring more people in and make this area grow. That's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to cause harm or, or forget history, not at all. That's not what we're, our goal.
Yeah, I mean, this governing body can't, you know, enforce or force you to adhere to the regulations for the historic regulations of downtown and that block or street. But we're glad that you all are, would want to work with the association, want to see how you can, you know, incorporate and improve and really grow together in that aspect. So we appreciate that.
But they are, as you can see for the last six months, it's been a little bit more of attacks.
Challenge.
And challenges that are unnecessary. There've been like emails back to us. And then all of a sudden, I get an email, we got a meeting tomorrow, like in January, saying I got Arkansas Baptist involved. It's nothing to do, we want land.
Okay.
We want to split it, we want to put two houses on it. It'll be better than a duplex.
No, we understand. I think, I think, I think we need to move on. Do we have, I'd like to entertain a motion for this action item, please.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we approve item number 17Z10084-A, subject to compliance with all comments and conditions outlined by staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We get a roll call for vote, please. Commissioner Brown?
A very begrudging yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
No.
McDonald?
No.
Carson?
Come back to me, please.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
I want you to get Commissioner, Commissioner Person's first and I'm, do me a last, please.
We're going to go back to Commissioner Person?
Yes.
Vickers?
I want to say this and I, I know this is a delicate subject. I like to preserve heritage, you know, definitely of any community, whether it's African-American, whether it's Native American, whether it's, you know, Asian, you know, whatever community. And, you know, but I appreciate the applicants that saying that they want to work with, you know, the association, they want to work with the neighborhood and that's something that's valuable. And looking at just strictly terms and making sure everything is in order, I don't see anything as out of order as far as, and that's why I would vote yes for that. So that's why I'm hoping the association, I hope they can get together and whatever we can do as a board to make sure that to happen, that we can keep it, you know, in alliance. I know it's difficult, but, and not to change or gentrify, but to incorporate together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Vickers, that's a yes vote?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Alright, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming, applicants, uh, thank, uh, citizens for coming out. Uh, we're gonna have a recess after the next one here. So after item number twenty-two, we will have a seven minute recess. So, uh, the applicant for item number twenty-two, uh, are you, uh, are you available at Z dash one oh one two three? If the applicant is available? And we will give just a brief moment so everybody can kind of clear out. Is the applicant present for Z dash one oh one two three?
Is applicant here, you know?
Brad, you said they're here?
Is he here?
The applicant is here?
Okay.
Uh, hang on a second, I'm gonna get his name.
All right.
Um.
It was approved.
Damn. Yeah. I know. The property is invested in Gamzu Property Investment LLC, the application shows, it's in curse if I can't read it, but, um, Eric James is one name I can make out.
What is the name again, Tony?
Eric James. Is anybody here representing Gamzu or Mr. Eric James here?
And if we can have staff outside to make sure that there's not anybody outside in the hallway under item number twenty-two, a representative thereof?
Okay, if, uh, okay. And we'll take a look at the cover letter right quick. Um, the, the name on the cover letter says Tal Gamzu. Uh, and it's also sincerely Tal Gamzu of Gamzu Property Investment LLC. All right.
So I guess this.
Mr. Mr. Chair, uh, the applicant doesn't seem to, to be, uh, present, uh, currently. Uh, so, uh, we would request deferral on this.
All right. So, uh, I would like to make a motion for, uh, deferral on item, item number twenty-two.
I make a motion for deferral for item twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for deferral for item number twenty-two, a roll call vote?
Hold on, hold on. This gentleman raised his hand.
I'm here to oppose.
Okay.
Yes, we have your card. Are you, are you Richard Farmer? Yes, yes. Oh, yes, so, yes, so, it, well, let's go ahead and I can explain it afterwards, so let's go, yeah.
You need a second, second.
No, we, I think we already had a mo, we have a motion and a second, just need a roll call vote. Commissioner Brown? Just come back to him, please. Come back to him.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
He went to the restaurant.
He went to the restaurant. McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
All right.
Um, still waiting on Brown and Hodges to return?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Brown, I'm sorry, I got my head down, I, I can't see, oh, thank you. The, the motion, we already got six votes over.
The motion will carry.
Motion approves, all right, thank you.
We want Commissioner Hodges absent on this one item.
That's fine. All right, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna go ahead and move to item number twenty-eight, and then after item twenty-eight, we'll take a quick seven minute, uh, recess. So item number twenty-eight, if the applicant is present, Z dash one oh one two seven?
Anybody here for Hanger Street?
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, Richard, so, uh, the item was deferred and the applicant is not present. So, I mean, it will not, the action item would not be heard tonight, so. It would be deferred at least probably to March or the app, whatever the applicant deemed. Thank you. Again, that's, that's at your discretion and, you know, uh, and I apologize about that. We did not know that the applicant was not going to show up. Uh, unbeknown to us, it happens from time to time. But we definitely, we apologize for, for you being here and we appreciate you coming. Thank you. All right, so we have the applicant present here. Monty, if you would do the reading here for item number twenty-eight?
Item twenty-eight, this is Orndorf number two P D R located at fifteen twenty-two Hanger Street. The applicant proposes to rezone the property from R four to P D R to construct, to construct a single family residential development. The overall zero point one six acre property is to be subdivided into four separate lots ranging from zero point zero three acre to zero point zero five acre in area. And will contain a one story, single family residence per lot. The applicant will not reside on the property and intends to market the residence for lease or sale in the future. The subject property is proposed to be replanted into four separate lots having the following dimensions. Lot seven R one would be forty-three by fifty feet. Lots seven R two and seven R three will be thirty feet by fifty feet. And lot seven R four will be approximately thirty-eight feet by fifty feet. Lot seven R two through seven R four will have frontage along East Sixteenth Street. Lot seven R one will have frontage along Hanger Street. The residence proposed for lot seven R one will be approximately six hundred square feet in area, one story in height. Each additional residence will be one story in height and approximately four hundred and fifty square feet in area. Uh, the buildings will not exceed a height of thirty-five feet. The proposed residences will have front interior setbacks of five feet, side setbacks ranging from six point three to sixteen point eight feet. Section thirty-six five oh two B one A of the city zoning ordinance requires a minimum of one parking space per single family dwelling. The applicant is proposing no off-street parking for these, for this four lot, single family development and notes that residences, residents will park on the street. Staff does not support the applicant's parking plan. Uh, the applicant notes that the exterior of each residence will contain vinyl siding, uh, with asphalt shingles. Staff does not support the proposed P D R zoning. Staff feels the applicant is proposing to overbuild the seven thousand square foot lot to the point that minimum off-street parking cannot be provided. The majority of the residences in this immediate area have driveways and off-street parking. Staff does not feel that all, that on-street parking is an appropriate option for the site and therefore recommends denial of the P D R zoning.
Thank you. All right, applicant, please state your name for the record.
Um, my name is Vernon Williams with Garnet Engineering. Um, I'm here representing, um, Mike Orndorf. Uh, he has had fever for like four, I don't want to violate any HIPAA laws, but he's had a fever for four days straight. And I told him he was not allowed to come to this meeting. And I, I, I would like to, um.
Excuse me, before you get started, there is one card in opposition?
Mr. Dukes?
Yes.
Yeah, he came up to me during the meeting, he recognized my face off my company's website. And, uh, he went over what we were building together and he said he was in, in opposition after meeting with me and left.
Oh.
That was a couple hours ago, yeah.
Done Dukes is not here? Okay. All right, with, with, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, can staff make sure that Done Dukes is here? Just not, we're not, saying we're not taking your word for it, but we just want to make sure of staff, Done Dukes. D U K E S. And while we're doing that here, you can go ahead and we just let you, if he, if he is here or he had a change of mind, a heart, we just had his card he filled out.
Yeah, no, yeah, like I said, I.
For the, for the lack of time or, you know, for time of essence, I should say, is.
Yeah.
Go ahead and, and.
Yeah, I like to think I'm honest, but, uh, I didn't mention his name before you said it, but anyway, regardless. Um, I'm just gonna read, I think the primary opposition to this is about the parking and is about the density of the development. I, I'd just like to read, um, a message that Mike sent with me today to, to go over that. And I'm sure most of you guys know him, he's the developer of, of the Pettaway Business District down at Rockin' Twenty-One. He's been a very successful, um, developer in, in downtown Little Rock. Um, Mike wants you to know that it's the goal of the project to build affordable housing for working class folks who live in downtown Little Rock. Uh, many people living downtown choose to live downtown and not to have an automobile. And that's the, the person he's building these for. Um, home prices are more competitive if the construction doesn't have a driveway and amenities that go with a car that costs money. Um, he feels that, that there is ample parking on the street here. And, um, you know, he kind of wraps all this up by saying, um, you know, just reminding you that, that, that this neighborhood is full of shotgun houses. Um, built on twenty-five foot wide lots, um, duplexes that are built on odd shaped lots. And, you know, he just asked the question, if we can't build houses that the ten thousand downtown renters can afford to buy here, where can we build them at?
All right.
I'd answer any questions you guys have.
Okay, or at this particular time, I'm gonna open the floor up, uh, to any of the commissioners with any questions or statements. Commissioner Brown?
How big are each of these properties? Cause in the sketch map, it looks like eighteen hundred, fourteen hundred, but in the write-up, it says something like six hundred square feet and then four fifty for the others. How big are the actual prop, buildings gonna be?
I thought we had a square footage on, on, on the site plan, on the plot plan for that. Is it not on there? Or are you thinking that it's in air?
I, I just wonder which one is, because in one part of like in the write-up, it says something about six hundred square feet for one, four fifty for the other three. Then on the sketch map, it shows, um, yeah, I was gonna say, it shows sixteen hundred square feet, fourteen hundred square feet, fourteen hundred square feet, then two thousand square feet. So that's two very different numbers.
That, that square footage is a square footage of the proposed lot.
It's a lot of, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But the six hundred.
We, we, we gave a, a, we gave a floor plan with the, with the application, didn't we? Yeah. Looking for that in here. I, I know we turned one in. I, I, but I, I'm with you, I don't see it in the package that's here. Um. But, but it looks like they've, yeah, those are the lot sizes. I mean, we, we could do math quickly if that's important to you.
Well, no, no, I just wanted to try to figure out what the numbers were. But my next question to staff then is, is there anything similar to this in this neighborhood? Cause this is like a bunch of tiny houses in a different area. Is there anything similar to it?
No, no.
Okay.
No, and, and, and just to kind of further our answer on that, I mean, staff is, um, historically supportive of more density in, in areas that need to, to be redeveloped. But we just don't feel this appropriate when you can't provide at bare minimum off-street parking for your, yeah.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any other commissioners, any questions, statements? All right, if not, uh, I would love to entertain a motion. We need a second.
The motion has been raised.
Yeah, we need a motion, we're waiting on a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, approve item, what do we on here? Item number Z one oh one twenty-seven with staff recommendations.
With the exception of the recognition.
With the exceptions of denial.
Now, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Brown?
No.
Hart?
No.
Hodges?
No.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
No.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
No.
Trimble?
Aye.
Baxter?
No.
Vickers?
No.
Motion fails. Thank you for coming. All right, at this particular time, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna have a brief recess for seven minutes, uh, just for, uh, staff, board members to, uh, uh, stretch and take care of some personnel, so we, we'll be back here in seven minutes.
I thought he, uh, I thought you made it.
I thought you made it.
So the next item we have on the agenda is item number 26 and 26.1. If the applicant is present, please make your way to the podium.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Gosden will present item 26, then I'll present 26.1.
Okay, sounds good. We're just waiting for the applicant. What? I don't know, yeah.
They're here.
Yeah, they're here?
Hmm.
Okay. Yes, yes. All right, while you're making your way up here, the reading for item number 26, please. And then we, I guess, accordingly, can have 26.1 right thereafter. Jeremy?
Item number 26 is LU 2025-30-01. It's a land use plan amendment to amend the land use map from RL to A. It is, location is east of Garrison Road and Burden Hill Cut-off. Applicant requests a land use plan amendment from residential low-density RL to agricultural A. The application is in the Buzzard Mountain Planning District. The proposed agricultural A category's intent is to encourage the continuation of agricultural uses of the land. The agricultural classification also provides for transition between rural areas and the fringe, the urban fringe, where it would be appropriate to preserve existing rural land use prior to the annexation into the city. This land use amendment is also accompanied by a rezon to agricultural forestry district, that's AF zoning. The application area, it's near the western edge of Pulaski County, between Garrison Road, east of that, and the Pulaski County line, Saline County boundary, in the city's ETJ. Properties in the general area contain residential, agricultural, and farming zoning uses in all direction. The current land use for the property is residential low. This is the default land use for most areas in the ETJ. Land use changes in this area are usually only made at the request of the owner. The applicant notes that the property will remain a single-family residence. The land use change as a company rezon is to allow for additional agricultural uses on the property. Furthermore, many lots in the area are also used for agricultural or are single-family with agricultural secondary uses. Staff recommends approval of the application request to amend the land use designation from residential low-density to agricultural.
Thank you. Monty?
Item 26.1, file number Z 9500D. This is a rezoning application from R2 to AF for 3708 Garrison Road. The applicant requests to rezone this 24-acre property from R2 to AF. The rezoning request is to allow for continued principal use of the property as a single-family residence with ancillary agriculture use. The property contains a 14,000-square-foot, single-family residence located near the center of the property. The property's accessed via a driveway that extends from Garrison Road. Staff is supportive of the requested zoning to AF. The proposed AF zoning is not out of character with the area. The general area contains a large amount of AF zoning south, southeast, east, and northeast of the subject property. The proposed AF zoning will represent a continuation of the zoning pattern within this overall area west of the Little Rock city limits. Staff recommends approval of the requested AF rezoning.
Thank you. All right, so, and again, please state your names for the record.
Jennifer Mon.
And Brian Mon.
Okay, all right, and so we have a number of cards in opposition, and we have several cards in support. If you all would like to, you know, speak now, make your statement or presentation now, you can, or you can defer your time and return afterwards.
We'll defer, thank you.
Okay.
I did want to submit these to the board.
Yeah, please give them to Mr. Jordan here, and please have a seat, and then I will call the cards in opposition. The first card is Deborah Reynolds.
Twenty minutes total.
Yes, and I would just say this for each, and just for respect of time, for each card, we will have 60 seconds, up to 60 seconds, if you would like to speak. If not, you can defer your time.
Okay, about a minute then. My name is Deborah Reynolds, and I am the closest neighbor to the Goodwins and the Mons that would be purchasing this property. I've owned the property since 1984, and I plan on building my retirement home there. I live in a subdivision that has six, five-acre lots, and our property is all restricted as residential. I know they're asking for a barn and barnyard animals and things of that nature, and I am totally against it. I just don't think it's conducive to what all the neighbors want, and they are surrounded by R2. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this is Julie Favorite, if I'm saying that correctly? Okay, thank you. Yes, we have your, yes, we have your information. Is it Thomas Burnett?
Can I defer?
Okay, thank you. Is it Raymond Fletcher? Okay. Danny Crabtree?
Yes, sir, Chairman. And I would like to absorb all of their time if I can.
Yes. Well, did you want to speak? I have one last card here. Is it, is it Maretta Fletcher, please? Okay.
I'm passing out, or Mr. Jordan is passing out on my behalf, three exhibits. I emailed these to the commissioners earlier. Hope you received them, hope I didn't mistype your email, but regardless, I brought copies here today. They're exhibits A, B, and C, and we'll cover them. Commissioners, you have the patience of Job, I've witnessed that tonight. I'm going to try my best not to test your patience, and I'll move swiftly. This property, the property at issue, it's approximately 24, a little over 24 acres, is in Goodwin Estates. Goodwin Estates sits adjacent to Tulsa Estates. I'm frankly, I'm confused at how the staff makes recommendations, and I've witnessed this throughout the night. I frankly don't know the process that they go through, and I'm sure it's a very difficult thing, and it's a case-by-case basis, but the staff recommendations suggest that this 24 acres that's requesting to be rezoned and have a land use change are surrounded by other lots that are designated agricultural and forestry. And that couldn't be further from the truth. The 24 acres that Andrea Goodwin, Gary Goodwin, and Jennifer Mon, which we'll address that issue in a moment, are requesting be rezoned and the land use changed, is 100% encompassed by residential zoning R2. 100%, it's in a gated community, and I don't know if you can see it on the Google Maps that's being presented here, but Goodwin Estates is gated on all sides, can't enter the property without entering a gate. So to suggest that, and it's all residential. It is 100% zone residential, the use is residential. Let me back up for a minute. I represent 11 property owners that either own real estate within Goodwin Estates, within the neighborhood that's the subject of this 24, 25 acres, or the Tulsa Estates, which is the neighboring subdivision. This is a subdivision. Yet they're asking to convert it for farm use. Every property owner, including Mr. Burnett's here with me today, and he's been kind enough to defer my time, to defer his time to me. Mr. Burnett owns 51 acres that used to be owned by Gary and Andrea Goodwin in this same subdivision that is enclosed behind the gate. He's the largest property owner in that neighborhood. Mr. Burnett, if he has a moment, he'll speak to this, but he didn't, he bought this 51 acres knowing it is subject to R2 zoning, that it's residential, and that it's not, that does not have a permitted land use of agricultural farming or forestry. He relied on that when he bought it. Not only did he rely on that zoning and that land use, he relied on the restrictive covenants, which I've put in front of you today, and I want to jump into that in case I run out of time. If you would all look at...
If I may, Mr. Campbell is attempting to argue his case here.
I'm so sorry, at this time, you're going to have ample of time to rebuttal against anything or any arguments that he's made at this particular time. Thank you so much. Yeah, I mean, he has time, when you all defer your time, then he has time, so we just want to be respectful, and when the time comes, please, you can make a statement on that, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. If we look at Exhibit B, it is the Declaration of Covenants, Restrictions, Easements, Charges, and Leans for Goodwin Estates. Note the date at the top. It's October the 16th, 2001. And the names on that very first paragraph, Gary and Andrea Goodwin. Gary and Andrea Goodwin are the applicants and the property owners today. They are the ones that have to submit this application. Ms. Jennifer Mon is listed as an agent on this application. What does that mean for this process and for this commission, agent? If agent means she is representing the Goodwins' interest, is that in the capacity of a realtor? Frankly, that doesn't make any sense. I can tell you exactly what it is today. Ms. Jennifer Mon is here today because she wants to buy the property, but her purchase from Gary and Andrea Goodwin is conditional on what this commission and the city Board of Directors does. She's not going to buy the property, naturally, it appears, unless we get a, she gets a recommendation from this commission, and the city Board of Directors approves that rezoning and the change in land use. Now, I directed your attention to Exhibit B. Gary and Andrea Goodwin signed these restrictive covenants. If you flip to Page 2 of Exhibit B, Paragraph 1, Goodwins are the owners of property also referred to herein as the addition. Goodwins intend that the addition be developed into a controlled gated residential community of estate-sized tracts. Make no mistake, these restrictive covenants apply to the 24 acres that is before this commission today that they're requesting to change the zoning from residential to agricultural forestry. Let me go on, and Exhibit B on Page 2, under Paragraph 1. "Any structures built on and all activities occurring on the lots are to be in accordance with the general plan to develop this property for the highest class of residential occupancy." Paragraph 2, first sentence, "Each lot shall be used for single-family residential homes only," says only. If you go to Page 3 with me, the second paragraph. "No business or commercial use shall be carried on or permitted in any structure or in any portion of this addition." Skip that second sentence, the next sentence is, "In addition, no noxious or offensive trade or activity shall be carried on upon any lot, nor shall anything be done thereon which may be or become a nuisance to the neighborhood." Let me go on, I know I'm burning time. If you go to Page 6 with me, please. Page 6 of Exhibit B. Second paragraph, "No animals, livestock, or poultry of any kind shall be raised, bred, or kept on any lot except for horses, not to exceed two per lot, which may be kept for domestic purposes only." So, I understand that this commission, our commission, does not enforce restrictive covenants, and I don't bring you to that, I don't bring this to your attention for that reason. I bring this to your attention because the very applicants that are applying for rezoning and changing the use of this land are the same ones that sign these restrictive covenants prohibiting the very thing they're asking for permission from this commission to do. There's a lawsuit pending. We had a hearing two weeks ago, or a week and a half ago. And to give you the tortured history of this case, I will not do, but the Goodwins have applied previously to have this property rezoned. They were asking for it to be converted to a planned commercial development previously. They did that back in 2021, it was denied. They reapplied a few months ago. They then, we filed a lawsuit. They withdrew that, and they stopped having events at the property, which was the neighborhood's biggest issue at that time. But every time the neighborhood runs to ground, one issue that they have to deal with, another one pops up, and that's where we land here today with this new idea to have a farmer agricultural center at this residential gated community. The neighbors, including some that have spoken already, and my clients that live in this neighborhood, live in Goodwin Estates, they bought this property relying on it being residential, not a farm operation. I anticipate that Ms. Mon, or Mr. Mon, or maybe even the Goodwins might stand up here in a moment and tell this commission, they don't plan to run a farming operation. They don't plan to have events. But if this commission grants or recommends voting up and sending it to the Board of Directors, this request, if the Board of Directors then approves it, they can do whatever they want with that property under the zoning permission for agricultural and forestry. They can do whatever, no matter what they tell the commission they're going to do or not going to do, they would then be permitted. Now, they would be, they would be within the regulations of the city of Little Rock. But there's still a problem for them, which brings me to my last point. But there's still a problem for them, which brings me to my last point. If the, if this commission approves the rezoning request and allows the land use change, we still have this civil lawsuit pending in front of Judge Tim Fox and the restrictive covenants will be enforced in that case. They will be. We just went through the provisions that would prohibit, the restrictive covenants prohibit the very activity that they are seeking to be allowed to do under a rezoning or a land use change. So play that scenario out. This commission approves it, goes to the city board of directors, they approve it. We still have, we get an injunction from Judge Fox at that point and Judge Fox shuts down any activity and then the city now has a property that has been rezoned and a land use changed, but it can't be used for either of those purposes because you have a court order that says that activity is prohibited based on what Gary and Andrea Goodwin created to protect themselves in 2001. Gary and Andrea Goodwin drafted this document. They signed it. Their signatures are on it. Yet they're the ones that are asking for a zoning change that would directly contradict what is restricted by the Bill of Assurance and restrictive covenants that they created. If you look at Exhibit A, that is the court order from Judge Fox's case. Paragraph, um, paragraph one, I'll point out, Judge Fox denied my client and my request for injunctive relief, which might sound like a win to the Goodwins and the Mon's, yet the only reason he did so is because they, they have stopped holding events. So Judge Fox's ruling is there's no irreparable harm being suffered because no events are being held. He reserved the issue of if they began operating as a farm or have any kind of agricultural farming operation that would violate these restrictive covenants, then that issue is then right before him and subject to injunctive relief, which would be stopped. And then what happens to the property if the city of Little Rock has approved the rezoning and changed the land use, yet it can't be used for that purpose? You're gonna be looking at a future na- a future owner of this same property coming right back before this commission and right back before the city, having to change it back to its original land use so that then it will be, you know, in compliance with all of the other property that encompasses it within the gated neighborhood. So we're gonna be on a cycle in this case if, if, if the commission is inclined to grant this rezoning and land use change. Um, and frankly, it would be a waste because the restrictive covenants are going to shut it all down. I'm gonna bring up Ms. Mon's role in this thing again, which, which thoroughly confuses me, but if you look at Exhibit C, it's a letter from Ms. Mon that was attached to the, to the notice for the request for a land use change. Ms. Mon wrote this letter, it's her signature at the bottom of it, I presume she wrote it, and it was mailed with the notice. Ms. Mon says in this letter, my name is Jennifer Mon and I'm writing to share that my family is planning to take ownership of Goodwin Manor as our primary residence. Yet if you look, saying that they're planning to take ownership means that they have some legal or equitable claim to this house and to this property. Yet if you look at the court's order, which is Exhibit A, the court specifically ruled Paragraph five, page two, the court inquired of defendant Jennifer Mon as to whether she claimed any present ownership, right, or interest of any kind, legal or equitable in and to the Goodwin property. Defendant Jennifer Mon stated she does not and she disavows any present legal and equitable interest, interest in a Goodwin property. So she's telling property owners and neighbors in her notice for purposes of this application that she is planning to take ownership without, without a contract. She had a contract, that'd be a legal or equitable claim, she'd have the property without a lease, same thing. So she's, at best, she was confused in this letter, at worst, it was a misrepresentation to the neighborhood and the neighbors. My clients and all of the neighbors, all the surrounding property owners would respectfully ask that the application for rezoning be denied and that the request for a land use change be denied as well and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Before we bring the applicants back up, I know we do have several cards in support.
Well, I, I just, I, I got a couple of questions from the commissioners during that presentation. I just wanted to, to make sure, just to clarify, we're not a party to the litigation, at least as far as I know. Mr. Crabtree, I'm not authorized to accept service, but basically it's, it's a restrictive covenant matter, it's a civil matter between, between, I guess the neighbors and the applicant. The city is not a party. So generally speaking, if, if we're a party to litigation and an application concerning that, you know, that litigation comes, comes before us, we defer without penalty to the applicant, but, but in this scenario, that's, that's why that's not happening. And we, and we, to Commissioner Hodges' question to me, that we, we, you know, this body does not enforce restrictive covenants. That's, that's a matter for the courts and that's, that's the, the route that Mr. Crabtree's taking.
Yeah, and I, and I've talked to Mr. Overton and Mr. Bowden historically and we've done all we could to avoid bringing the city into the lawsuit. I can't guarantee that won't happen at some point in the future, but as of today, Mr. Bowden's exactly right.
Thank you. All right. Before we bring the applicants back up, we do have several cards in support that if they'd like to make a statement, they can. You do not have to. We can have your card still on the record, but I just wanted to bring them up first here. Tracy Rowe, Hogue, excuse me. It's H.
Good evening and he's right, y'all are something else. I'm, I appreciate what you do. So my name's Tracy Hogue and I'm here because I think it was Mr. Brown that last time wanted to hear from the closest neighbors, right? So I was here in October, I didn't speak, but I am the, we are not in the neighborhood that they're encompassed by, but we're on the Reynolds Mountainside and I am the closest house. Deb Reynolds earlier mentioned that she does have a closer lot and she is closer, but we are the closest house. So I can see their, their house from my driveway and I, I was just here, my personal experience has been, I do not, they, the, the Goodwins have had horses and had chickens and they've had garden, they've had those things. We have had the property for 10 years. We've lived there for just two and a half years, but we spent a lot of time up on the property. We also lived on Garrison Road, which was down there right in, right a couple driveways up from where their driveway is and we just have never had, a lot of the things I'm hearing are things that could happen and might happen, but we've never experienced any of that being an issue. Also, what he was mentioning, I know that right around is residential, but I do pass getting to my house right as I, down our street, cows and longhorns and donkeys. So I know right in that area may be residential, but clearly there's an agricultural component out where we live. And I just will say, all of us that live out there live on acreage, right? And I, I feel like we live on acreage so that we can be able to do some of those things. We moved out and have a lot of land. We're not right next door to anybody. Again, I'm the closest neighbor and none of that has ever affected me. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. And the next card is, and just let, remind everybody, please, 60 seconds or less, or up to 60 seconds, or you could defer your time. Andrea Rogers Goodwin?
I'll defer my time since Jennifer can speak and then if you have questions as far as, we have lived there, those covenants have never been enforced for 24 years. So I'm first to admit that. I've had chickens for 24 years, I've had guineas, I've had ducks. Some of the opposition have actually-
Can we get you to come to the mic, please?
Some of the opposition's own children have taken care of my farm animals over the years when we were out of town as a family. I've had horses, I've had guineas, I've had ducks, I've had chickens, I've canned, I've had people come to the house from the co-op, you know, that have done cooking and canning. I'm a home economics teacher and then I became a nurse, been in public service my entire We have supported unlimited amounts of charities through the years. There is no deviant nature to this. Jennifer's garden will be where my garden spot has been for 24 years. The chickens will remain where my chickens have been for 24 years. Guineas, ducks, I know, not just, you know, fowl, I'll say fowl. There's nothing deviant about this at all. I've had a tractor, we've had four-wheelers, I raised six children there. We have driven four-wheelers, we've had a tractor parked out front, I have pictures of it that I can show you, a 76 Ford tractor that's blue and old and gray and, and rusted. We've had a trailer parked in the front of our house, we've had a trailer parked in our pasture. Those covenants that they're referring to have never been enforced when we were the owners and then Tom bought the 51 acres through unfortunate circumstances. But I will defer the rest of my time to Jennifer, but I do want to be factual as far as the length of time that I've owned fowl and planted gardens and done things like that. It's existing property, 71% forestry, we want to remain, we want to preserve the land, not chop it up and be residential.
Thank you. All right, we'll bring Jennifer and Brian back up, please. All right, so now you have time to make any statements or any statements that were made that you wanted to respond to.
Yes, thank you commissioners, I'm tired and I know you are too. My name is Jennifer Mon, my husband Brian, and we hope to be able to make Goodwin Manor our residence for our six children who are ages four to 15. I know many of you heard a little bit about our story, but we do have new commissioners and I wanted to just get a picture of who we are as individuals and our character and our care and love for our community and our neighbors. We donate a significant amount of our time to our community. My husband served as a volunteer for seven years on the Plasky County Special School District Board. As a volunteer, seven years, gave up his time. I'm a homeroom mom, I'm on the PTO, I feed our football team at Robinson Middle School. We've chosen public school for our children because we want to be integrated into our community and to give back and to support the people that surround us. And so we've been looking for acreage where we could raise chickens for our family and then to possibly share with the community. I'm a chef, I'm opening a restaurant in downtown Little Rock in 2026. That's my primary business and, and where I'll be, but we have this beautiful concept and vision for the 25 acres that is 71% timber. So if you think about agroforestry, it's 71% forestry. Also, we've sent out a map that we shared with you all. You can see in green that there are two neighboring farms literally on both sides of the neighborhood's properties. They abut their property on the backside of both sides of the neighborhood road. Farms with goats and chickens, farms that have tours and educational workshops that sell produce from their gardens on site, abutting the neighbors' properties. Also, on the other side, you can see a large green space. We also provided a map, you can see it here. We also provided a larger map where you can see Ferndale, the community is all about farmers, growing your vegetables, sharing with the community, tending to your animals. We personally don't plan to have farm animals on site. They've had chickens when I first toured their property, I fell in love with that. That's something that as a chef, I've talked about for our entire marriage. One day, being able to have chickens and teaching my children about tending the land, growing a garden. I talk on my social media about farm to table, that is my plan for my restaurant, is to have a sustainable, regenerative agricultural focus with farm to table. And I want to use the property to continue sharing that message with others and teaching people about, about this concept. Again, while the direct properties surrounding Goodwin Manor, 25 acres of 71% forestry, may be residential, literally adjacent to Goodwin Manor are three farms that are operating and are allowed to operate in our zoned agro farm. One is that I've, that we've highlighted in green on the map is right outside of the ETJ, so as you know, they're not zoned, but it's Kraus Family Farm. Also, at the neighborhoods that he's, the neighbors he mentioned, at the end of their driveway is Fern Cliff. If you're familiar with Fern Cliff, they have goats and chickens and all sorts of things that are right there as they entered their gated community. Secondly, Goodwin Manor is not in a neighborhood. There is not a neighborhood association. When they created Goodwin Estates 25 years ago, they sold off a few plots. One house is currently built on that plot and she was previously supportive until unfortunately their attorney convinced her to join their suit. And then the other thing that I want to mention and focus on is that the judge assured us that your matter is to consider the zoning and has nothing to do with the covenants. That is what he stated on the stand. We also committed that whatever the lawsuit ends with, there is a great chance that those covenants are dissolved because they were never enforced by any party in, if we're bringing up the covenants, they were never enforced by any other party. So all the, the other landowners that have existed before Tom Burnett purchased the land last month so he could gain 51% control of the, of the neighborhood, that's not a neighborhood. The other neighbors also have gone against the covenants. They haven't paid for road maintenance, they haven't paid for gate maintenance, they've leased their land. All of those things are located in those covenants as well. So I would plead to you when you're making your decision today, not to consider the covenants, let's, let the civil case play out, let the judge decide that, which we've been assured by our attorney that there's Supreme Court cases that show if covenants were never enforced, then they can't be enforced by another party. So we'll, we'll leave that there for now. But just to mention, the injunction was denied because there's currently no irreparable harm. Also, we did try to sit down with neighbors. We did in the letter to them, I gave every single one of the neighbors my phone number, my personal email to reach out to me. And so we have wanted to sit down and mediate and discuss a positive way forward for all of us because we love our neighbors, we want to have great relationships with our neighbors. We feel like if there's been chickens on the property for 25 years, why would they stop me and my family of eight from continuing that path forward on the land if it's existed for all those times? How is growing a garden a nuisance to nearby neighbors that are literally 952 feet away? You know how long that would take me to walk, 952 feet? A long time. That's like more than three football fields away. So how, how could those practices, tending to this beautiful land in Fern Cliff where the whole community is focused on loving your farmers and supporting your farmers? So again, you know, Ms. Goodwin mentioned that they've had tractors on the property since the, you know, since it was built. And so our vision is to grow seasonal produce and eventually add a beautiful greenhouse and the prettiest barn that you will see in the state of Arkansas, because I'm, I love home design. So it will only add to the beauty of the property and to the value of the property and the neighboring properties as well. We are a fourth generation farm family as well as the Goodwins and our whole goal is to maintaining these 25 acres, protecting them and protecting the timber that's there and the land that's there. We want to conserve the land and so we will be respectful with that. We hope, we've, we've been asking to mediate for two months, so we hope that at the end of this process, we can all sit down as adults and find a path forward. But here today, we've shown you that there are agricultural properties all surrounding this area and the greater area of Ferndale as well. We've shown you that there's Fern Cliff and Kraus Family Farms and SG, SJT Trust, that's a working farm right below us, that have chickens and goats and workshops and educational seminars and tastings and they have a retail component on site. We don't plan to have a retail component on site, that's not what we're doing here. What else am I missing? I know I've forgotten something.
Covered most.
Also want to mention, because the neighbors have mentioned this in the early conversations before you, and I just want to be clear, there are two driveways from Goodwin Manor. One is an easement and one is owned. One goes to Garrison Road. One is an easement and one is owned, one goes to Garrison Road. And that is the primary entrance. The road with an easement is padlocked with a gate, I showed you all the picture of that gate in our last meeting. It's padlocked three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. The only people that have a key are the Goodwins and then, I don't even think they have a key anymore, actually. The fire department, yes, that's what I was trying to say. They have a, they have a log. Um, we have had a fire inspection and they've, um, they did a, um, and
Drive-through water.
Yeah, a drive-through for both drives, so we know that we can get fire personnel or emergency personnel up there safely. That actually benefited the entire top of the neighbors because they would want to access if any of the other neighbors had, you know, had concerns or fire issues. Um, you know, some of your, your letters may have mentioned, because this has been brought up, like the water table issues. There is a whole water treatment center on the Goodwin Estates, the Goodwin Manor property that has capacity for up to two-hundred people a day, right? Yeah. Here, just come up here for a minute.
precaution when we built the house, so we actually, because we do not have access to city water.
Ms. Goodwin, can we get you to speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
That area of Ferndale has no access to city water. So we're controlled by the city of Little Rock, but se- central Arkansas water provides no service. So we are on our own independent septic systems and our own well water source. So we dug a freshwater well and then we actually paid to have a water treatment center on a small scale, but it actually mimics the city of Little Rock's water treatment center. Again, small residential scale for a home, but it actually is to California environmental standards. So any runoff from that is actually drinkable, potable water that can actually be used for irrigation. We specifically installed that when we built the home. We began building the home and, and moved in in two thousand and one.
And then, um, unless I'm forgetting anything else. The other thing I wanted to say is I, you know, I wish we would have known to brought our attorney here because he probably would have spoken more eloquently on behalf of these legal matters that are pending. Um, because, uh, the judge assured us that that was not, um, you know, something that was important for this meeting or, what's the word?
Relevant.
Relevant or appropriate for this body to consider. So it's unfortunate that that was brought into these proceedings. Um, but what I will say, it's also very highly inappropriate for him to speak about personal real estate matters that he has no contract or information on at all. So he is speaking as it appears off of no facts. So we are people, we are a family that we had six children.
It's time for us to retire. We don't have a single child left in Little Rock. It's time for us to retire, I have parents that are eighty-seven and eighty-nine that are ill tonight and I'm missing taking care of them to be here. It's time for us to move and sell our home to another family. And there is no better family. They're not just buying this for an investment to run it into the ground. They're buying it because they have six children in the Jokie Robinson School District. They want to be good neighbors, they want to be good stewards of the land. They want to continue what I have done and what my husband has done for twenty-four years. They want to take every safety precaution to preserve the timber like we have preserved the timber over twenty-four years. I implore you to allow them to have their six children move into the home and live there as a family home. Because I raised my six children there and Ferndale is the best place to raise your children. And my children have wonderful memories. Allow them, allow their six children to have the same wonderful memories out in the country that I did. Where I let chickens hatch and I have videos of my kids watching the chickens hatch. Let them, let their kids learn how to pick green beans and canned tomatoes because that's what we did for twenty-four years. And they're just asking to do the same. Nobody that regrets those covenants is more than me because we never enforced them and everybody kept saying, well, if you've never enforced them, nobody can bring them up against you. Well, we never enforced them, we never enforced them against any of our neighbors. We just, we're trying to be good neighbors. So anyway, like I said, I get emotional, it's been my home for twenty-four years. It's just time for another family, a young family, to take it over, give it breath again and enjoy it the way we enjoyed it. And protect it and protect the land. We don't want to chop it up into five-acre lots like R2 allows. We want to preserve, at least for our home, is it, in our twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-four point six-eight acres. We want to preserve it so that it mimics the agriculture component of Ferndale, mimics the landscape, you see all that green, the timber? We want to preserve that, we don't want to chop it up into five-acre lots. We want to preserve this land so that it stays preserved and is taken care of for future generations.
Our emotions are high because this has been a very difficult journey for us, for the four of us. We've been harassed online, we've been called names. It has been some very unfortunate and difficult circumstances around this. And all we want to do is respect this beautiful terrain, protect the land and, um, be good neighbors. And by landowners, it's very difficult for me to wrap my mind around covenants that are twenty-five years old that were created before internet was out there, like before smartphones, you know, before all of that, very old. No one ever looked at them, they were never enforced by any of the people that actually live in that area, which is not a neighborhood. They're individual lots. Um, and so we, we just want to do that and, um, hope that you'll consider, you know, a person's property rights, um, and all the things that we've discussed.
All right, well, thank you for that statement and I just want to thank you as well. At this time, I want to open the floor up to commissioners with questions, I know commissioner person, you said you got a question.
Mr. Chairman, just before we get into questions, uh, like I said earlier tonight, it's a similar issue. We're here to talk about use in a zoning change, not about particular ownership. And we're also not here to enforce a restrictive covenant.
Thank you for that, Cameron. Commissioner person.
I'm just trying to make sure I hear it correctly. You stay on twenty-five acres and it's surrounded by a gate?
Um, there, there are ninety-nine acres in a development that was purchased by the Goodwins. And they created covenants and really what they did was they copied Chennaw Valley. Because, you know, they'd never done anything like that, this was twenty-five years ago. And so, um, there are, there's only one other homeowner that has built a home, that owns a home. And they share a long driveway that has a gate. So it is not a gated neighborhood, it's two homes that share a driveway. There's a, you know, long driveway because Goodwin is at the top. And then at some point down the, you know, the mountain or whatever, there's another neighborhood that offshoots off of that. So, and let me state, because I've heard the word, we don't want commercial chicken carriers up there. Y'all, we're not going to have commercial chicken carriers up there. I think there's sixteen chickens on the property right now. Uh, when I went to Thomas Keller's restaurant, who has a garden that supplies uh, regenerative vegetables, it's such a beautiful concept, to, um, the, the French Laundry, I'm sorry. Um, he had sixteen chickens that provided these beautiful eggs to, you know, his restaurant, so it was on two acres. You know, that terrain is, um, it's, you know, again, seventy-one acre, seventy-one percent forestry, so the terrain goes down, so there's only a few areas that we didn't even allow for farming activities. The covenants do not state that you can't ha- have farming activities. It's very specific about animals. And we'll comply with whatever the judge decides or what if, whatever we're able to mediate with the, with the plaintiffs. We'll comply to the laws, we want to comply to the zoning, um, which is why we were trying to do the right thing and, and come before you for the AF zoning.
Commissioner Brown.
I have two quick questions. I mean, I'm hearing from the, the, the Goodwins that they've had gardens and chickens and horses. Yeah, all this stuff. Is there anything with the, that they've been doing there that you're planning to add?
Uh, well, they always planned to have a barn, they had already excavated for it.
That's a physical, but as far as like, like the activity?
A greenhouse, no.
Okay, so then I have a separate question to the opposition. In sixty seconds or less, if they're not changing what's already going on there, I'm really confused, and again, let's set aside the whole covenants thing because that's outside of our purview, or the uses thing, which what this board votes on. What is the, what are you opposing in sixty seconds or less?
Please come to the, I'm sorry, could you, thank you. Could you step to the mic, please? Thank you.
Thought you were sending me back to the seat, I was gonna make sure. Uh, oppose any commercial activity whatsoever. Um, there, there's, there's not supposed to be any commercial activity. The, none of these, none of the neighbors, none of the folks I represent are aware of any commercial activity that's occurred on the property other than the events that occurred that they objected to and sued over, and then that's stopped. They, they have stopped. If, if they convert to a, if, if the rezoning and land use changes, that can start again, at least under, they wouldn't violate the zoning regulations at that point. They could have events out there under the, the, under the farm umbrella. Um, they, they say that they won't do retail, but they could, I mean, it opens the door to let them do a lot of things that they've never done. Or if they did, did perform those, they were objected to and sued over. And, you know, as far as chickens out there, we've been told that their plan is to have chickens, bees, uh,
Again, that is separate from what the uses, that's for your lawsuit, which we're not going to get into here.
No, I, I thought, I mean, that would apply for, I mean, that would violate residential zoning restrictions. Having chicken coops, chickens, um, I, am I, am I?
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry about this, we, I, I think Commissioner Brown asked for a specific question.
Yeah.
And kind of a direct question, so
I thought I'd answered that question, Mr. Brown.
We don't want, we just want to keep it strictly to the uses and not outside of the rim.
I'm looking at these right now, okay.
Am I missing the boat on uses? I mean, I, I treat.
No, but I would, I would like to.
All right, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go, yeah, go, go ahead and finish your statement, then we got Commissioner.
All right.
Um, Mr. Brown, did I miss your question? I thought you were asking about uses, certainly.
I was asking about what, what, what do you, again, I'm looking at this, the, the zoning map and there are AF zoning all over the place near there. Um, so, so, okay, so, all right, I think I understand what you're opposing now, all right.
It, we're opposing anything that violates a residential use. And, and having chickens and cattle, um, a- any of that. Uh, bee, bee hives, where they're gonna, you know, uh, have honey for commercial purposes.
But are you asserting that there's not any of those uses there right now, today?
We are not aware of those. We are not, they've talked about sixteen chickens, we don't know that those are there.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Hart.
Uh, just, just to, I, I will just make a point. And, and I think there's a lot of bad blood previously from, from the events. And it seems like the neighbors are distrusting of a agricultural and farming uh, zoning because they feel like that opens things up to some event-type stuff, okay? And, and I, I get their suspicion because it's like if you're gonna continue to do on the property what's always been done on the property, why come before this planning commission and get it rezoned? If, if you look at our website, though, um, under agricultural and, and forestry district, AF zoning, for sites utilized as farming or other rural activities, which is, um, that, that makes sense, you've described that that's what you want to do. The district is also utilized for recreational uses. I don't really know what that means, but I wonder if staff could elaborate. We probably don't get a lot of zoning requests for AF. We, we may not have very many in our zoning jurisdiction, but when it says for the, the district is also utilized for recreational uses, does that? I don't know, what, what does that mean?
Commissioner, Commissioner Hart, that, that could mean things like, because it also, uh, it says private recreational use, uses including but not limited to golf courses, tennis courts, swimming pools, playgrounds, day camps, and passive recreational open space.
Okay, that, that's straight off Muni code, so I, I saw that too. So I, I wonder if that is, um, that, that may be part of this opposition to, to the rezoning, uh, of this to AF. Um, the second question I had, you mentioned that you're going to open a restaurant, that, that's great, in downtown Little Rock. But are you gonna, you'll be utilizing, I assume, y- your home slash farm to service that restaurant with fruits and vegetables and eggs and the, the farm-to-table thing? Will you be utilizing it to do that?
That will depend on how the civil case turns out.
So, so potentially, you could have a little bit more intense use than it's being used for now, but still the same, the same basic, if you say there are chickens there now, the, you know, I was like, okay, okay. I, I'm, I'm a little hung up on the, on that additional recreational uses there. And I suspect the neighbors are too, just because there was a, there was a push earlier to do events there. You backed off that now, but this zoning would provide you perhaps with a, w- with an N to, to create, to do those, to sponsor those.
Uh, well, to your point, um, the primary reason we withdrew, well, first of all, let me state, when we first met with the planning staff, we, we mentioned this to you when we first came before you, that we didn't want the commercial zoning. And even afterwards, our attorney counseled us that this will impact your tax rep, your taxes. This will impact the real estate, um, you know, ongoing in the future. And we came back and said, you know, we're, we will take the event rentals off the table completely. Whereas, you know, someone could come and, and rent the manor and, and, you know, we'll, we'll take that off the table, you know? We're, we listened to the neighbors' concerns. Um, when I came before you, I talked about the gardening and the farm-to-table and, and the, the raising of chickens. That was before I read the covenants. I was served that day when we were before you, as I walked in the door with the lawsuit. Um, you know, because there were chickens on the property, I never, it never occurred to me that, that that would be something in the covenants. And quite honestly, you know, one of the neighbors that has a home there has stated for years that she doesn't have covenants. So she never had to pay for the road or never had to do any of the upkeep, so she didn't. So she then joined the lawsuit that's enforcing the covenants after we have written statements that she doesn't have covenants. So it's all just a mess, honestly, um, that I never, ever imagined we would be in the middle of. Especially when we listened to the neighbors' concerns. We went back to the planning commission with our proposed changes in the concept to address their concerns. They didn't want commercial, they didn't want the events, we took that off the table.
All right, uh, thank you, Commissioner Hart. Any other questions from any other commissioners?
All right.
I think I'll give my soapbox, soapbox for sixty seconds. I remember as a kid, there was a berry patch, right, strawberries? And I remember as a five-year-old, so what would that have been, nineteen ninety, picking strawberries? And I remember y'all, and, um, I appreciate that, good memories. Neighbors, I've read every single piece of your correspondence and I fully understand the statements you're making. And I've spent weeks chewing on this because I know Mr. and Mrs. Mon that y'all be back. But just listening to y'all again, I, I think, you know, none of this stuff is perfect, there's always going to be disagreements. But I think your heart is right, I think you're going to be good neighbors and hearing, breathing life back into this. It might not be exactly what everyone wants, but it seems like it's a really good opportunity both for the community long-term. And if y'all can ensure these interests and abide by these conditions, I mean, you have my vote.
I would just add, I mean, last night, I'm sorry, I would just add, you know, like, if you were out in Ferndale last night, I know many of you guys live in the city, but you know, you could have, I, I have to be at the hospital at six-thirty in the morning, so I was walking my dog at four-forty-five. And there were Cody's. I mean, to even think that there could be a commercial component as far as like a chicken house or a big farm. Little Rock was named so because of Little Rock. And it is Little Shell, and that's when we took off, when, you know, we took land to build our home, we had to excavate. And so we are on Little Rock, all Little Rocks, there's no dirt. And so I was raised on a five-hundred-acre farm in rural, impoverished, Yell County, Arkansas. I, I know commercial farming, I know commercial chicken farming. I mean, that, that's my, that's my juice because that's, that's my parents, that's, those are my neighbors in, in Yell County, Arkansas. We in Little Rock or in Ferndale, to suggest that we would be ha- having that, i- it's not sustainable, you cannot do that. We are on top of a mountain, Buzzard Mountain. It will not sustain more than a hobby farm. Could she take those chicks, sixteen eggs and make a mayonnaise or make a bouillonaise sauce at the restaurant? Well, sure, you can take sixteen a- eggs and you can add milk and you can make a big sauce, just like the French La- Just like the French londry, like she talked about, other, other chefs do this all the time and use it as a part of her branding. But it, it doesn't come, it, it can't support, you know, I can't raise sixty tomato plants up there, I mean, I have a large garden, but it's not that part, it, I don't want anybody to be frightened as far as, you know, that.
Commercial trucks or.
That's not, it's not even possible, it can't be possible.
Ms. Gobert, I think we understand what you're saying, thank you so much and I just wanted to make sure the commissioners had full intent or to be able to address any questions or statements, uh, Monty, I see you, raise your hand.
Yeah, I just wanna state this, just mainly for information for the applicant. As, as most of you know, this is a straight rezoning, this commission cannot place conditions on a straight rezoning. You can't ask the applicant to place conditions only on a straight rezoning. The applicant can offer conditions if they so wish to. And, you know, what you see before you is the permitted uses, you know, there are four permitted uses. You know, if, if the applicant's intent is not to do one of those, for instance, number three. The applicant can place their own condition and say, we will condition this rezoning on, on not having number three under the permitted uses, not having that as a permitted use. So just, just for your information.
But, thank you, Monty, and I think we've all heard that and as Chair, I think I'm just making a, a decision to go ahead and I wanna entertain a motion, uh, on this, uh, on this item.
He's giving them an opportunity, he's giving them an opportunity, though, to condition their application to, to back off just a little bit on things that they, that they don't intend to have perhaps, that might help them get this passed, so. Did, did y'all unders, do y'all understand what Monty just offered up?
Well, like, some of those things listed, um, things that aren't, sorry, I can't see very well on that document, but.
So that number three.
Yeah, golf court, I mean, that's not even applicable.
Number governmental or private recreational uses.
Like hunting and gun clubs and all that, that's, yeah. That's, that's not, none of that would be, would be, um, would be, um, relevant here.
We would absolutely want to do that as, oh, sorry, we would absolutely want to do that to exhibit goodwill. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so number.
We would absolutely want to do that to exhibit goodwill to our neighbors, I mean, that is, that is not the intent, nor would it ever be, so we are perfectly willing to strike that. Even number four, I mean, plant nursery?
Just.
Just garden, okay.
I just wanted to say I had to recuse from the, and I just was going to say this, I had to still recuse, so my vote won't be necessary.
Commissioner, if you're, if you're recusing, um, if, if you could step out for just a minute?
Okay.
That's, the, the bylaws do technically state that, so I just.
Got you.
Alright, thank you. Not, not that we don't enjoy having you. She didn't have to step out, she just stepped out to the side, right? Just, 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 just to the, just, just right over the, yeah. Alright, in the back. Yeah, you, you don't have to leave the room or the, we, you don't have to leave the, the floor, you could, yeah, you could step in the hallway, yeah, sorry. Alright, thank you. Okay.
I apologize that emotions are high, this has been a long.
No, we're just trying to make sure that we can, you know, that we can just stay on accord and, and what we're actually governing up here and what we will be voting on.
And we appreciate you all.
May I make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve item twenty-six as recommended by staff and file number LU two zero two five dash three zero dash zero one. Are we also gonna make a motion on twenty-six point one as well?
Uh, Monty, can we do, can we do both of them to be separate?
We'll take two separate votes, but, but before you do, did we hear the applicant say that they were striking number three as a permitted use? So it's, so it's, uh, you're, you're gonna vote?
Excuse me. He does not want to strike anything only because we have the court matter to deal with.
No, it's honestly, it's, it's the words day camp, I mean, I don't want to have to come back and explain what a day camp is because of the tone of what we've dealt with for the last two months, I just leave it as is.
Okay.
We intend to operate as is, as it we are allowed to do, zoning and covenants.
Now, Monty, I just wanna, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Hodges, go ahead.
Well, I think number three, private recreational use means you couldn't put in a swimming pool if you wanted one. I mean, that, it, I, I don't see why you would.
Good point, I hadn't thought about that, I hadn't thought about that, I appreciate that.
Uh, and, and Monty, I just wanna state this, I guess, for the record, for the members up here, just to, just in case of whatever happens on this, whether, if it passes or fails, if they go to court. I just didn't want any kind of acknowledgement that the board, you know, asked them to do anything or we didn't want to be a part of any lawsuit. We just wanna protect us, the citizens of the city and make sure that we're governing what we only need to govern here.
So, so on the point of order you ask about, uh, you'll take a motion and a second on twenty-six and take a vote? And then take a motion and a second on twenty-six point one and take a vote?
Yes, yeah, yes, just, uh, simultaneously, so we have, I think we have a motion. You have a motion and second for twenty-six?
Second on the, on his motion on the land use point.
Yes. Alright, can we get a roll call vote for twenty-six and then immediately after that, we do twenty-six point one?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald recused. Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, now, I have a motion for twenty-six point one, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item twenty-six point one as recommended by staff and file number Z dash nine five zero zero dash D.
Second.
Have a motion and second roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Person?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Appreciate you all, I know this is a very long meeting, so thank you for your time.
Thank you all for coming out, thank you for your time and patience and if you have any questions, uh, or, you know, afterwards, we have kind of a citizen's uh, statement that you can make a statement afterwards, after we get done, if you'd like to choose to stay. Uh, or if you'd like to make comments, feel free to, uh, you know, write a letter or email. Thank you very much, let's move right along here, um, we're gonna, um, actually, uh, move to item number three. That's item number three, we're gonna move to. Well, we're gonna come back twenty, twenty-seven, thirty-one, thirty-one. And, uh, well, we've got folks, uh, filing out, Mr. Chairman, I, before we move into three and four, if I could briefly read the. No, please, go ahead. Yeah, uh, the disclaimer I normally do, um, just for the benefit of our commissioners and, uh, the members of the public here tonight. Given the subject matter, the next two items. Um, as this body will soon begin to consider items concerning group homes, it is important to address the commission and the members of the public in attendance in order to ensure that any discussion or comments remain productive. Any discussion or comments what's concerned disability status or a particular disability, whether that may be a physical or mental disability or a substance use disorder will not be relevant to our discussion on these items. The commissioners should note that no decisions on these items should be made based on disability status or a particular disability. And to do so would violate the United States Fair Housing Act, the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Arkansas Fair Housing Act. The Little Rock City Code provides a consideration, discussion and comment on these items can address spacing of existing similar facilities, existing zoning and land use patterns, the maximum number of individuals on the application, the need and provision for readily available public or quasi-public transit, access by residents to support services and availability of adequate parking. Individual tenants who pose a direct threat to the health and safety of other individuals or pose a direct threat of substantial damage to the property of others are not allowed in such a home. It should be noted that these direct threats must not be merely perceived or theoretical. This must be an individualized determination made on reliable and objective evidence. The Little Rock City Code also provides for presumption of approval for any applicant which meets the other requirements of the special use permit ordinance and is housing eight or fewer disabled persons. It is the advice of the Little Rock City Attorney's Office that the commission does not have the discretion to deny an application that meets the ordinance requirements with eight or fewer residents, which one of these applications does fall under that presumption. Thank you, Cameron, alright, please, uh, Monty, can you give the reading for item three, Z dash ninety-eight, ninety-one dash B?
Item number three, uh, file number Z ninety-eight, ninety-one B is the tenant group home number one special use permit located at two oh five North Woodrow Street. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow a group home facility to be operated in an existing two-story, single-family residence. The proposed group home will have a maximum of eleven residents, including one to two staff managers at any time. The site is located in the Midland Hills subdivision along North Woodrow Street and contains a forty-six hundred and fifty square foot, two-story, single-family residence. The applicant notes that the facility will provide soberly living housing to the ever-growing number of Arkansans with substance abuse issues. The residential housing model for living will provide persons in recovering with an opportunity to pursue sobriety in a stable environment. The facility will provide housing only through a group home setting, the owner, uh, will not provide counseling, rehabilitative or any other services to the residents. The applicant provides a, has provided a parking plan showing two parking spaces for staff and eight parking spaces for residents, five of the parking spaces proposed are located off-site along North Woodrow Street and in the alley behind the residence. To staff's knowledge, there are no other transitional residential facilities within fifteen hundred feet of the property. Uh, the, uh, the property or the proposal does conform with sections eight, four oh six A and B of the city code, which is the minimum uh, minimum area per residence for the house and the minimum area per bedroom as proposed. Staff is supportive of the special use permit as requested. Staff believes that a group home with a total number of eleven residents is appropriate for this location. Staff recommends approval of the requested S U P, subject to compliance with the commencing conditions outlined in paragraphs E and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you, Monty, uh, applicant, please state your name for the record.
Um, good evening, my name is David Parker, I represent, uh, the applicant Hillcrest Homes LLC, uh, that is owned by Ms. Tara Tenon, who's here with me. And as he stated, the, the purpose here is that these are, well, they're, we do have two applications, number three and number four, but number three, uh, these are, it's a sober living home that is located in Hillcrest, it is on, uh, Woodrow Street and at it, at its core, what this is, is a request that, uh, it's an application to have more than four non-family members be able to live in the same home. And the application says that this Woodrow House, uh, that there will be a plan to have up to eleven people, uh, we're seeking a permit to have up to eleven people live within that one house. And, uh, as he said, there's, this is not a, uh, anyway, medical-related facility, this is a strictly a matter of having housing, strictly a matter of how many people can live in the house.
Alright.
And, uh.
I'm sorry, Ms. Parker, if you'd like to, to move forward and just make your presentation, you can. There is a host of cards here that it's an opposition, you can defer your time and come back afterwards. Or you can go ahead and present now, it's, it's your discretion.
Um, I, I think I am just going to refer to the, uh, the, the city attorney who has noted that there's no rational basis for denial of this application. Um, and that it's met all the requirements that, uh, is necessary for this board to be able to issue such a permit. And beyond that, for now, I'm gonna defer my time and address any questions or anything else after the opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we have several cards, uh, Tim Eubanks, if you're present? It says number three, Tim Eubanks, he says, it says, I oppose this item, you checked it? Oh. Oh, I have two cards in support, David Parker and Justin Buck. Yes, uh, it says, since the deferred, it's in, now I'm going to the other side of the opposition, yes. And I can come back and I can get your, uh, statement. Alright, uh, Tim Eubanks? Daniel Bryant?
That is me, and I would like to speak. Do you have any discretion as to what order we go in? The neighbor, the neighbor.
Uh, if you want to. Yeah, if you wanna yield your time, if y'all have a representative who wanna speak, um, for, on behalf of the group, uh, they can. And, and who is, who is that person? And I. I'm sorry?
I'm not really a representative, but.
I mean, not, I'm not saying a representative, but somebody who wants to speak for the group. Okay, so, uh, I think it's, uh, Teresa Ketcher? Alright, did, would you like to speak?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, everyone, I know you've been here a long time, I'll make this brief. I bought my home, um, in this area, it's a Plasky Heights, uh, area, it's a historical neighborhood. And two thousand and three. And lots of families live there, lots of children running around, the deaf and blind school is directly behind where they're talking about that parking, eight position parking in an alley. Where you sell those, see those Christmas trees being sold, you know, at Christmas time. Those children come out and they use their walking sticks and they learn how to walk because they're blind and some of those children are there and they cannot hear. I'm a public school principal of thirty-three years in the Little Rock School District and I am very passionate about children, my own children, the children of this street, this neighborhood. And I just think that it's, it's not the appropriate place for this particular housing. It's a, they bought the house and have been operating it for three years without a permit. And, um, I just recently found out about it just a few months ago, so I feel like I've been defrauded with this and it's been very deceiving. So I would like to yield the rest of my time to Ms. Wills or anybody else, but I am not opposed and I hope and pray that you all will deny this in consideration of the fact that it's been operating without a permit for three years.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alright, um, did I say Daniel Bryant? Oh, is this right, okay, okay, gotcha. Catherine Lu? Am I making this?
Hi, I'm Catherine Lu, I live at two oh four North Woodrow Street, so right across the street from this lovely, single resident, single-family home. Um, I think it's, uh, interesting that we're at eight forty in the evening when this meeting started at four, cause it feels very relevant to, we've been discussing this for three years, this, this home has been operating for three years without a permit. And, um, I find that disturbing, it feels like the approach has been to ask for forgiveness instead of permission and to stall at every, uh, every possible moment, and so I find that dishonest and frustrating. My problem with this house is the density. Uh, eleven people is simply too many people for this house. Six or eight, no problem whatsoever, that would fit in fine, it's a big home, that would be no problem with the traffic flow and the density. As Ms. Ketcher said, there are children walking up and down the street, learn, more so than any other streets because they're out practicing, learning to walk. There's probably not more traffic per person in that house than any other house, but just the fact that there are so many people living there is problematic. I think the application also states that there's, uh, no other group home within fifteen hundred feet. But my understanding is that, um, Tara Tenon owns the house next door to two oh five and also the house next door to that. I'm assuming that someone lives there, I'm assuming that, that there's going to be development and her, her business is going to expand. Which leads to my last point, this is a commercial endeavor, this is a residential street, we've, we're two blocks. This, the street is very short, it's only two blocks long. And she owns three homes and is operating a business out of these homes, that's, that's not the spirit and the integrity of this neighborhood and this street, thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Cunningham? Alright, thank you. Bob Ketcher, Kethner? Kethner, excuse me.
Keltner.
Keltner?
My name is Bob Keltner, I live one street over. Um, I'm also, um, the chair of the Preservation and Planning Committee of the Hillcrest Residents Association. And so, uh, I speak on some concerns on behalf of that organization. I think, uh, I know that some of the, the items from the city ordinance were read, but there's some kind of important language there. It talks about the separation spacing requirements so as not to adversely impact the surrounding properties and neighborhood, I think that's important to keep in mind. I think it specifically says in the ordinance, five, six, seven or eight, so I think, you know, the, the listing here is, is higher than that. Uh, and I think the issue, the spacing of existing similar facilities, existing zoning and land use uh, and the maximum number of individuals, I think, I mean, I mean, to me, this is, uh, a lot of it has to do with an incompatible use. And, and I don't think the group home is necessarily the issue as much as, I mean, if you look at the ordinance, group home is in the same category as a, a boarding house, in a sense, it's a business where multiple people live there and it's a higher number than residents and it, it. and, um, it, it, when you're, when you're dealing with a street, or really a whole area of the neighborhood that is all single-family residences, it, there's a, a real sense of incompatibility there. Um, I think, as Catherine mentioned, there is concern about proliferation through the neighborhood. I mean, we've seen, uh, another facility that's al- also on the listing tonight on Monroe. Um, and, uh, so I think from the point of the, um, the neighborhood association, we would agree with, uh, the concerns of the neighbors and, uh, and urge you to, um, uh, not grant the special use permit, so.
Thank you. Elena Wills?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Elena Wills, and I live at one twenty-eight North Woodrow Street, which is just diagonally across the street from this property at issue. My husband and I have lived there for over thirty years, and I oppose the granting of this special use permit. I was a little surprised when I heard staff read their recommendation, because it was my understanding that they had recommended denial of this permit. So something has changed recently that I was not made aware of when I asked just the other day if anything had changed with regard to this application. The applicant has operated its for-profit group home now for years without the proper zoning approval. They began operation in a single-family residential district without any approval from the zoning authorities. After applying for their zoning approval, their first application asked for fourteen residents, and this, this is about last year, about in January, and this board denied that application by a ten-to-one vote. Um, and the second application, they've reduced it to eleven. Um, I am one of over thirty neighbors who signed a petition in opposition to the granting of this special use permit. That resident petition should be in your materials, um, and you should have been provided that. It lists several reasons why this application should be denied. First, density. Eleven residents, along with staff, in a group home in this location is not in keeping with existing zoning and land use patterns. The property here is smack dab in the middle of a residential street, surrounded by single-family homes, each containing significantly fewer residents than eleven. Second, traffic. Traffic is already congested on this portion of North Woodrow Street without the addition of a group home. Our street lies just west of the Arkansas Schools for the Blind and Deaf. When those schools are in session, the street has daily bus and van traffic going to the schools. It comes up our street and goes into the back way of the deaf and blind schools. As a resident, I'm accustomed to this traffic, but adding a multi-resident group home with all its associated traffic is too much for our street to bear. Third, parking. Parking is problematic on North Woodrow Street even without the addition of this proposed group home. North Woodrow Street is located in the historic Hillcrest Overlay District. Many of the historic homes on our street do not have front driveways or adequate parking for all their residents, much less for their visitors and guests. Off-street parking is allowed only on the one side of the street, the east side. So the applicant represents that currently onsite parking will accommodate six vehicles. Uh, planning department staff initially said that with eleven residents, five of the parking spaces will be located off-site along North Woodrow Street and in the alley behind the residence. The applicant has alleged that it will not permit more than eight vehicles at any time, and if this permit is granted, it will add a couple of more spaces. Neighbors of this property are concerned about compliance with the enforcement of these promises by an applicant that has been operating for years without any zoning approval. Even if the applicant reduces the need for off-site parking, it will not solve the added parking congestion created by this group home. The proposed parking changes would do nothing to relieve the parking congestion created by visitors and guests to this home. Delivery vehicles, workmen, lawn care companies, and the like. Parking congestion related to these types of vehicles will be exponentially higher than with a single-family residence. With a single-family home, the occasional relative or friend or delivery vehicle may come by and park on the street or cause traffic on the street. In a home with eleven unrelated residents, those number of vehicles may be multiplied by eleven. Eleven different relatives or friends visiting, eleven different delivery vehicles blocking the street. As a consequence, the parking changes alleged by the applicant will not alleviate the adverse impact of the supran, to the surrounding properties. As an additional matter, I would like to state that the applicant currently owns two houses side by side in one block of North Woodrow Street. One is the property we're talking about here, two oh five North Woodrow Street. With the one right next door is one thirty-one North Woodrow Street, a small house that the applicant stated at one of the last hearings they house a staff member in. On information and belief, the applicant has now made an offer on a third house on our street, one twenty-nine North Woodrow Street, immediately next to the smaller house. That will be three houses in a row that applicant owns in one residential block, surrounded by single-family homes. One group home in this location with this number of residents is too many, but three properties on a residential street is an extreme overreach and will destroy the residential character of our block. I want to state to this commission and specifically to these city attorney representatives here that any city code provision granting a presumption of approval in group homes with a certain number of residents should not apply when the applicant seeks in a piecemeal fashion to operate multiple homes in the same block, thereby doubling the number of residents the presumption allows. And I would like to state, too, I may have a bit of a difference with the city attorney's office on what this presumption means. In the law, a presumption is only that, a presumption, which can typically be overcome with some higher level of evidence. So I don't read that provision exactly the same way the city attorney does. I would also like to say that it is this commission's job to decide the policy issue of whether these criteria have been met. The city has entrusted you commissioners, they have entrusted it to your judgment, your experience, your common sense as to whether this special use permit has been granted. The city attorney advises you on legal issues, but it is not his place to make this decision for you. So, in conclusion, um, we have a petition of over thirty residents who, who oppose this special use permit. The Hillcrest Residents' Association opposes it. Staff initially opposed it till something changed in the last couple of days, I assume. Um, I want to say that we have had at least one prospective home buyer back out of a sale on our street because of this sober living home. Um, on a personal level, my husband and I have spent thousands on architectural plans for a renovation in addition to our home, and so our plans are on hold now pending the outcome of this matter. The density, traffic, and parking concerns that I've mentioned have made me think twice. I don't think this commission has to speculate or theorize about whether there will be an adverse impact on our street from this. In my view, it's already occurring, so I would therefore ask that you deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, just real quick, before we go down this road, because I've heard this brought up three times now. This application is for one sober living home on one street. Ms. Tennant, through her LLC, can buy up every house on the block, as long as they don't want to put another group home within fifteen hundred feet, it is completely irrelevant how many homes she owns on the block. There's no evidence that they're being used for that purpose. I just want to make that abundantly clear. Thank you, sir. We have, uh, one last card in opposition, Jay Wills?
Good evening. I am Jay Wills. I'm married to the beautiful Elena behind me. Thank you for paying attention, giving me your time. I really only have one thing to say, and it addresses the advice that you all are being given by the city attorney. I'm afraid that the city attorney has, has ignored the material fact that the density that we're talking about is on Woodrow Street, where one half of the street parking is totally prohibited. Unfortunately, the city attorney only addressed the traffic concerns on Markham and Cavanaugh, and I believe the word was, it was a drop in the ocean. Markham and Cavanaugh have never been a discussion in this matter. It has always been the narrow, two-lane residential street of North Woodrow, starting at Markham Street and going up to Little Street. I would respectfully request that you all decline, uh, to approve this as presented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman, maybe I misunderstood. I thought I was just allowing Ms. Wills to go before me. I didn't realize that I was foregoing my time. I live directly, I share a fence with this property. I can close things.
You come out to the mic, please? Yes.
So, um, my name's Daniel Bryant. I live at two oh nine North Woodrow, the closest property to the home. I've been there for about twenty years. Um, I have no problem with the individuals themselves or Ms. Tennant, other than the fact that it's been stated they've been operating, you know, adverse to the ordinance for three years. It does not give me good faith to believe that whether it be to resolve parking issues or anything else, that credibility exists. Um, I am not as bright or as eloquent as either Mr. or Mrs. Wills, but I will tell you, uh, maybe to my adverse, um, self-interest, I don't believe any one of you wants eleven unrelated people, men, moving in next door to you. And I don't think you should put eleven of them next to me. That's the bottom line. I don't care what they're doing over there. You're all fine folks. I know some of you. I don't want all of you living in one house next to me, and I don't think you want all of you living in one house next to you. This doesn't pass the smell test. It's not right. It's not commonsensical. You're the planning commission. We get up here and we parse STRs and we talk about, uh, commercial zonings and, uh, small things, lot lines. This is eleven people in one house. Got nothing to do with the use. It's too many. Amazon packages, pizza deliveries, things she mentioned, eleven people, everything that happens at your house with the four or five of you that live there or two of you, multiply that by eleven. And as far as the presumption, I thought I read it as, I'm not an attorney, fo, five, six, seven, or eight. They need to be eight. I don't understand why we're just going to eight. I think it ought to be four. That's what the rule is. If there's a presumption and you want to talk about that, obviously you guys have got some legal, you know, bindings that maybe you need to follow that I don't understand, but you really need to think about it before you just haul off and say, uh, we recommend approval for eleven people to live next door, all these folks. There's thirty people that don't want this, and they all live right there together. There is nobody on the street that I've talked to or that you're going to talk to that does want it. This gentleman that's in support lives nowhere around Woodrow Street. My guess is he's going to talk about the use, which he's been instructed by Mr. Bowden not to do. He's nowhere around this. So, I appreciate you hearing me out, and I just wanted to give some plain talk about what's really going down. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Um, now we're going to move back to the applicant. Before we do, we do have one card, uh, well, actually two, and, and Mr. Parker, but, uh, Justin Buck?
Thank you very much. My name is Justin Buck. I'm the Executive Director of the Wolf Street Foundation, which is Arkansas's oldest and largest recovery community organization. Uh, I also am the Vice Chair of the Arkansas Alliance for Recovery Residences.
Oh, Mr. Buck, let me just say this, uh, your time does feed into Mr. Parker and the applicant's time as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll be mindful. Appreciate you. Uh, but as the Vice Chair of the Arkansas Alliance for Recovery Residences, I inspect houses to make sure that they're in compliance when they're used for this purpose with national standards, uh, of certification. I have been in both houses that are, are on, uh, on your agenda tonight and can tell you that they far exceed the national standards that we certify houses according to. For density, they far exceed, uh, the square footage requirement in sleeping spaces. They far exceed bathroom ratios. They far exceed, uh, the ability to gather everyone in a dining space for a communal meal, which is important for a social model of recovery. They far exceed the requirement for living spaces for people to gather for that same social model of recovery. I understand that we're not addressing specific disabilities, but we are addressing group homes, and the entire purpose of a group home is for folks who are not maybe like me or you to live together in a supportive environment with each other. That, that's, that's the whole purpose of these types of homes. I also want to address that while, while I'm hearing about a perception of an adverse impact on the neighborhood, the, the kinds of laws and, and things that exist, I'm not an attorney, full disclosure, uh, exist to prevent a disparate impact against the people that live in these groups.
We're going to, we're going to need to move on from disparate impact.
Thank you very much. All right. Uh, all, all I'm saying to you is that the city of Little Rock has, uh, a wild history enforcing this specific restriction. Uh, I've experienced that as, as a recovery professional, as the Executive Director of my organization, as the Vice Chair of this Recovery Residents' Alliance. Uh, this, the enforcement of this special use permit requirement is, has not, has not been uniform a, at, by any means. I, I could point to any number of so-called sober living or so-called chem-free houses across the city, which do not have a special use permit. The recovery residences that we operate are in multifamily, to be fair, uh, but before this issue really came up, many people who were either operating in the space or operating houses, uh, group homes of this nature, were not aware of a requirement for a special use permit, because we were under the assumption that the Fair Housing Act protected the activity. So that, that's my final point on that. Uh, I, I just want to, to make sure that, that folks know that, that, again, recovery residences, especially these two homes, far exceed national standards for these types of group homes. And today, there are three hundred and four people living in nationally certified houses in Arkansas, and we're working to continue to, uh, expand that certification in Little Rock so that people have more information and better options when it comes to these sort of supportive living environments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If we could bring the applicants back up, please? All right. Well, I'm sure you heard the, some concerns and that nature, but feel free, uh, to make your presentation. The floor is yours.
All right. Um, I will, I will mostly just address the things that just came up, but, uh, um, I believe inadvertently, though maybe not their purpose, I believe that they actually, uh, served as great, um, testimony for what we were trying to do, for getting the permit approved. Uh, many of them men, mentioned that, Ms. Ketcher mentioned that she lived there for three years.
No, I lived there for-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That they have, that they have been in this house for three years, uh, but that she just found out about it and felt like she was defrauded. The best evidence there is that in three years, she had no idea this was going on. There was no traffic increase. There was no parking problem. There was no issue that anyone brought up tonight of what has actually been a concern.
I live on Cavanaugh. I don't even live on Woodrow.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Please excuse me. If, if anybody's out there in the audience, can you please just, just show a little bit of respect? And, uh, we had the time for opposition, and now we have the time for the applicant. Thank you so much.
And, uh, the, uh, the density was discussed, um, that it not being within the existing zoning laws, well, under the existing zoning laws, amount of square feet that are required per person, the density within that house would allow up to forty-six people to live in it. I personally think that would be a lot, but eleven is significantly below what the zoning laws allow density-wise within a house. Um, regarding the traffic, the, uh, Ms. Wills stated that she's used to it, but adding this many more cars would cause these problems. What she is used to is exactly the way it will be, because they've been there for over three years already. And so what she's used to is the way it is now. There is nothing, after today's hearing, regardless of how this goes, there is no change. The only question is, is it going to stay the way it has been? And no one has stated anything tonight of anything that has been a problem. Um, the parking, she mentioned that they were, uh, discussing that if, if they receive a permit or if certain things happen, that they would add more parking. They've already added that parking. It's already been done. Um, the picture that's up there, I believe, um, the green space looking like a, the, the backyard area, um, additional parking has already been added there. So there were two additional parking spots, I believe, to what that picture is. And, and again, they do have that, uh, it, they say, we call it an alley, but it is Woodrow Street. North Woodrow's on the left, Woodrow Street is on the right. Um, that does have those spots where people park all the way up and down that street. Um, so there would be no additional parking. I personally have never seen the house with- I personally have never seen the house with more than one car parked out front. And so, regarding any deliveries or Amazon packages or anything else, the way it's been for at least the last three years, it's going to stay the same. There's nothing to be changed. Regarding one home buyer backing out, I don't know that that has happened, but that house that is a few down has sold. Miss Tennant did buy that house. It went for $250 a square feet, and it's, you know, one of the most expensive houses in Arkansas. I mean, price per square foot. So, it has held the value. And, let me see. Mr. Wills mentioned the city attorney discussed, he said, drop in the ocean. I believe it was two drops of water into the Arkansas River, but that is pretty appropriate. There's not going to be any change regarding traffic. Traffic will not be affected by this. And Mr. Bryant was the one that just mentioned he just doesn't want him next to me. And I appreciate his honesty. I think that is the actual issue of what this is, that he just doesn't want him next to him. I think everyone agrees they serve a good purpose with what they're trying to do there. But it is just a matter of they just want it in someone else's neighborhood. They just don't want it in theirs.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry. Look, no, I understand, sir. Please, we just want to show, I understand. Just show a little bit more respect. And if the commissioners have any questions for any of the audience or opposition, we will bring them up. No, I understand. I understand. I understand. Thank you so much.
To be fair, I'm quoting him exactly. I don't want them next to me. It doesn't pass the smell test. I'm not inferring anything. And one other thing regarding the business, this is not a, this is a, they are a registered not-for-profit business. This is not a money-making scheme. This is Miss Tennant's passion, and this is how she, you know, is choosing to help her community. And so, there is no one, you know, seeking to get rich off of this. This is not a, like a lot of them that you heard tonight, you know, it's about rent houses and spec homes and things like that. That's not what this is. This is her trying to, you know, fulfill her passion and give something back to the community. And so, it is not an issue of, you know, trying to get rich and pack as many people in as you can. It's as many as they think they can have there comfortably and be able to serve its purpose. And if we could, I'd ask for a vote in favor of the permits, and I'll answer any questions if anyone has any, or I can sit down.
Well, at this particular time, I want to open the floor up to any of the commissioners for any questions or statements. No questions, no statements?
Has the letter from the city attorney been read into evidence? Obviously, we were emailed it.
I don't believe anyone's read it here tonight. Portions thereof, and also, just so we're clear, there were two emails. There was one from me, and there was one from senior deputy Sean Overton. So, I mean, I don't know if you want to read both of those or just one, but whichever one it is, that might be important to note.
All right. I only have Mr. Overton's. I don't have yours unless we should include it. I don't know what it says.
Basically, it says that, you know, we've reviewed the staff report. This was the previous staff report, that we had reviewed the staff report. And given what was in the staff report, the reasons stated for denial and the facts that we found around this application, that we did not have a rational basis to sustain what was in the staff report and that the commission would not have a rational basis to deny the application. And I imagine I'll have some questions on that from the commissioners, and I can address that when Mr. Parker's done.
I can read it, or would you?
No, we, oh, sorry. We could take this chair, we could take that into the record for your summarizing the letter if need be. And we can have, obviously, we have the records, we have the letters on record and file for that. So, just want to take that.
You do have the emails from Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Okay. If it's in the file.
I mean, if you want to read it, there's nothing we can do to stop you. That's what I'm saying.
I mean, that goes on your time, but you can read it. We have it here.
Unless you have questions for me, I have nothing else needing time.
All right.
So, use the time however y'all prefer.
No, the commissioners, are there any other questions you have?
I just want to say I don't feel comfortable voting. I've said this before, and I'll say it again. I don't feel comfortable voting, and I will not be voting.
Thank you. All right. So, if we don't have any other questions on that?
And I just want to state, before we entertain, and I know we've been here a long time, and I'll be very brief, but just to reiterate, you know, we looked at this application. I understand what the presumption is that's written into the code. This is a house that, you know, is nearly 5,000 square feet. When we looked at the facts surrounding this application, we do not believe that there's a rational basis for this body to deny it. Now, Mr. Parker and Mr. Giles are here this evening, you know, to present their case, but, you know, they're also here because they represent the applicant. It is my duty as deputy city attorney to protect the city and you guys from litigation. If we were to go to litigation because we denied this application without a rational basis to do so, we would most likely lose. And it's very, very likely that some of you could lose toward immunity if that happened. At the same time, you know, I do know that if we deny this, I mean, we're in the fight. You guys are going to be parties to a lawsuit. You're going to get deposed. And it's my advice to you that if we get in that fight, we're not going to win. So, I want to make sure that's very clear to everyone. And I can't necessarily hold you to this, but I would advise that if you're going to vote, know that you state a reason for doing so on the record when you vote.
Thank you for that. All right. Do we have any, so, any other statements from any other commissioners? If not, I would love to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve item number three as recommended by staff and file number Z-9891-B.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Brown? Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Abstained.
Commissioner McDonald has already abstained. Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Hi.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, applicant. Thank you for coming out this evening on this action item. We'll move forward to item number four. The applicant is present for item four. So, can we do the reading, please, for item four, Z-9892-B?
Item four, file number Z-9892B. Tending group home number two, special use permit located 822 North Monroe Street. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow group home facility to be operated within existing two-story, single-family residence. The proposed group home will have a maximum of eight residents, including one to two house managers at any given time. The property contains a 2,800-square-foot, two-story, single-family residence. The applicant notes that the facility will provide sober living housing to the ever-growing number of Arkansans with substance abuse issues. The residential housing model for living will provide persons in recovery with an opportunity to pursue sobriety in a stable environment. The facility will provide housing only through a group home setting. The owner will not provide counseling, rehabilitative services, or any other services to residents. The applicant provided a parking plan showing two on-street parking spaces for staff and six parking spaces for residents. To staff's knowledge, there are no other transitional residential facilities within 1,500 feet of this property. The proposed group home does comply with sections 8, 406A and B of City Code, which would be the minimum area per dwelling and the minimum area per bedroom. Staff is supportive of the special use permit as requested. Staff believes that a group home with a total number of eight proposed residents is appropriate for this location, and staff recommends approval of the requested special use permit subject to compliance to comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
That's all right. I apologize.
No, we were just going, so, we actually have two members, commissioners that had to leave.
I understand.
Unfortunately. So, we were just trying to make sure that, you know, everything was in accordance and that you can be offered to defer without prejudice at the next meeting. But if you'd like to move forward, you can definitely move forward, obviously, on this one.
I would say we move forward.
Okay. All right. So, at this particular time, you have two cards in opposition. If you'd like to defer your time, you can, and then come back afterwards, or you can go ahead and present.
I will. I will only offer, I got so happy to hear the first vote that I thought I was done and was walking out and realized this was also us. This is the house on Monroe Street. Same story, the only difference being, in the big picture, is that the one on Woodrow is men, and the one on Monroe is a women's house. And so, it's a similar setup, but it's for women. There are only eight individuals that live in the house on Monroe, eight women.
All right.
And I likewise believe they have addressed the parking issue from when this came up previously.
Okay.
I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. All right. So, we have two cards. The first card in opposition is David Dear. If you'd like to come up?
Thank you. My name's David Dear. I live at 804 North Monroe Street. And, gosh, I'm impressed with you guys. You have, I thought I'd been with a lot of athletes, had a lot of stamina and dedication, but you take the cake. And I also want to say that I'm very conflicted about being here because I really believe in what you are doing. The sober living house, serving the women, is very much needed. I appreciate and have offered to Tara to support and help the work they do any way possible. But I do have a concern that I want to raise, and that has to do with parking, which, according to the application, is one of the six factors that needs to be considered when approving a group home. And I may not have seen the latest parking plan. We've tried to get information about the application, but really have not had any success with that. The one that I saw a year ago had six cars parking on the lot on the property and two on the street. I will mention that Monroe Street has no parking on the west side, which is the side the home is on. And on any given day, there might be one space, well, any given night, there's typically one space on the east side that is not already taken by other residents. And having eight people with potential of eight cars, I don't know where you'll put them all. The parking plan on the property has cars stacked three-deep, and the first one, the last one in, has to be the first one out for the rest to leave. There's only one way in and one way out. And my understanding is the city has defined parking, well, my phone is messing up where I have this, that means a space for the parking of a motor-driven vehicle within a parking lot and having a permanent means of access to a street right-of-way without requiring passage through another parking space. It seems that this parking plan really runs counter to that. And I would strongly encourage the city, before they approve this, to relook at that parking plan. It's really an issue on the street already. And I know they've been operating, but my understanding is they're operating with less than eight residents currently until they get approval, which will increase the number of cars that are there. And I just also want to raise a point about what is required of this group. I'm not an attorney. I did direct the program at the University of Arkansas that operates the ADA Center for the State and have talked to some attorneys. And there was a ruling by the Eighth Circuit that seems to be contrary to what all of you have been told about being in fear of personal litigation if you don't approve. I'm really requesting delaying approval until you can relook at the parking plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The last card we have is Bob Kellner.
Well, I think my general comments are similar to what I said before, so I don't want to take too long. But he's right about the ADA and the Fair Housing Act. Those are, if you read the preamble to those, they're to protect individuals against prejudice and not really about businesses. So, there is a little bit of a difference there, and I think that was pointed out well. Yeah. And I think the other thing, from a neighborhood standpoint, I think it all has to do with just the density of the house. I mean, it could be a boarding house. I don't think it really matters if it's a group home or not. It's just that usage in the middle of a residential street, just, I have a hard time understanding how that could, you can't say that adversely impacts the surrounding properties in the neighborhood. I mean, just of the character of the neighborhood that we have. So, you know, I'm a little disappointed in just the way that I feel like this is getting, getting some pressure. But I know the commission has the authority to make the decision. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. If we can bring the applicant back up, please?
I'm a lawyer, and I'll talk all night if you let me. So, unless you have questions, I don't have anything new to offer other than this is just very similar to the last one. This is the women's version. Eight people is what they're requesting to live in the house. For most of the time over the last three years, it has housed, I believe, right at eight. There may be times where it had less, but.
All right. I'm going to see real quick if any commissioners have any particular questions. If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number four as recommended by staff and file number Z-9892-B.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. May I get a roll call vote, please? Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown? Hart?
Yes.
Hodges? McDonald? Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Hi.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for coming in, applicant. Thank you for, citizens, for coming out.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
All right. So, we're going to have, we have three items left, but they're all under the same owner. Item number 27, if the applicant is present, please make your way to the podium. All right. And while we're doing that, Monty, if you will, I know this has already been on the consent. They were actually pulled here by the board. And if you can, if you want to give a summary, you can just do a summary of it, please. And we actually have that for 27, 30, and 31.
Okay. For item 27, file number Z-10,001, 26. This is Orndorf Number One, PDR, 1211, 1215 College Street. The applicant does propose to rezone this property from our afforded PDR to construct a single-family residential development. Basically, it's two lots currently. The applicant requests to subdivide that into four lots with a single-family home on each lot. With, then I'll just go straight to the staff recommendation. The staff recommends approval of the requested PDR zoning subject to compliance to comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
Vernon Williams with Garnet Engineering.
Okay. All right. So, the board, you know, pulled this one from the consent to the regular. So, I want to open the floor now to any of the commissioners for any questions.
I don't have any questions. I'm opposed to it based on the style of the development. I think it's overbuilding the neighborhood.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, with that being said, then I'd like to make a motion for the, for pull of this item.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number twenty-seven as recommended by staff and file number Z ten thousand, you know, I'm just gonna do the individual number, Z dash one zero one two six, subject to staff's conditions and recommendations.
Second.
All right, I have motion and a second here. Monty?
Do we know if Commissioner Hodges left?
Hodges went to the bathroom.
Yeah, he went to the restroom.
I'm sorry, he stepped out, so.
Yeah, I think he just stepped out.
He should be back.
Can we wait till he comes back?
Should, should we, should we have given notice to this applicant about, how many commissioners do we have left?
Yeah, we, we have eight. I, I know that we made an announcement before the last, during the last application. I don't know if we did this time.
This was on consent, so I, I think it's going to get approved.
Yeah, this is actually on the consent agenda. We actually have, we have two, actually, board members that had to leave. And so, now we have eight left. One of the eight actually had to excuse himself for just a minute, and we believe he just went and took care of a personal item that he had to take care of, and he should be back momentarily. If you don't mind, do you mind waiting? He should be back here just shortly, if you will.
Wait a few minutes or wait a month, I'll, I'll wait.
Well, I don't think it's a month. But I...
We, we already been here three hours, so what's another?
Three? You need a clock?
I'm being conservative.
Yeah. Do we, oh, oh, he's, okay, okay.
Yeah.
A moment of levity here, so.
He's within sight. All right, Commissioner Hodges? So, we had item number twenty-seven that came off the consent agenda, and it was a motion and a second, and we are voting on that unless you have any questions or statements by the applicant. All right, so can we continue with the roll call, please? Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown? Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald? Person?
Aye.
Russell?
No.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yay.
Vickers?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, motion passes. Thank you. All right, item number thirty, and the applicant is present here. Can we just summarize a summary?
I'll just give the staff report, the recommendation.
Yes, thank you.
Item thirty, for the record, is file number Z ten thousand one twenty-nine, Orndorf number four, P D R, twelve oh seven College Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested P D R zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
All right, and we have the applicant present here, and we want to open the floor if there's any comments, statements, or questions from the board, and the commissioners. If not, I will take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number thirty as recommended by staff and file number Z dash one zero one two nine.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Brown?
Hart? Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald? Person?
Aye.
Russell?
No.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yay.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, and the last item, item number thirty-one, applicant is present, can I get the reading, please, or summarize the version there?
Item thirty-one is file number Z ten thousand one thirty, Orndorf number five, P D R, twenty-one seventeen, twenty-one twenty-one Rock Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested P D R zoning, subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and apologize for this one. I was looking at the wrong application. I have no issue with this application, so if we want to just make a motion and go through it.
Perfect. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number thirty-one as recommended by staff and file number Z dash one zero one three zero.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please. Commissioner Brown? Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald? Person?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yay.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, motion approved. Thank you, applicant. Thank you, citizens for coming out. At this time, do we have any new business?
You, you have, as I stated in my email, when I sent you the, the agenda, we have a special committee report.
Okay, great, awesome.
Right now?
Okay, I'm gonna be as brief as possible on this. Our special committee was called for to look at the master transportation plan area of, it's over here where the Pride Valley's going east and west. There's a subdivision that's starting through there, and just kind of look at that whole area. It's kind of been a deferred item for a while, so we're just kind of, we're requested to look at that. So, basically, what we did is we had two meetings. In the first meeting, we discussed really what the master transportation does, how it is revised and moved. Development usually defines how our master transportation, transportation plan is moved. And then, in our second meeting, well, I'll basically give a brief introduction of this. What we have right now is Pride Valley goes east and west through there. There's the blue dash line that goes north and south, is to the east, where Pride Valley will, is proposed to run into eventually. Running north and south, there's another line that kind of, you can see it goes kind of over a pond area. That's part of the master, that's a collector, and then on the bottom is, is, oh, what is that road? Capitol, Capitol Hill Boulevard, and it is proposed to continue across to that blue line as well. And that's the area we're really looking at. So, anyway, we discussed the possible issues and the problems with that, and then in our second meeting, we, through, with development and with our staff, we proposed a change of what we think should probably be done. And again, this was looked at by both staff and through stakeholders and developments in this area to come up with an idea. And what we basically decided and looked at is to take that road that goes, or the proposed road that goes over the pond and move it to the west to align with, that's Worthing Road, so therefore, it goes up to that Circle Drive, and then that would carry on up to Costco and all that area up there, which just makes more sense than the way that it was. And then also to move the Capitol Hill Boulevard road down a little bit to go towards the bottom and go between two properties instead of right through a property, and then go back up and meet in the exact same spot of where it would run into the blue line, which is an arterial that's proposed as well. And that's where our two, that's where our suggestion was, that was approved by the special committee, and they recommended that we make that proposal to you guys, if this is what our findings are, and that's, that's what we're doing. And so, that's where we are from there. Perfect.
And Mr. Chair, I will point out that after the special committee met, Mr. Worthing, you can see where his property is, he has made application to move, it currently, that road currently runs through his pond. He has made an application to move that road to the western portion, which is the example is, is on the, the screen right now of his, his proposed move. So, he's aligning with it.
And to add to that, also want to point out that that, his, our, our recommendation, that proposal, that also lines up with, because this is in the ETJ, this is also lines up kind of with Pulaski County's street plan as well. The move lines up with what their suggestions are as well for future roadlines.
Yeah, we, we will hear Mr. Worthing's application next month.
Good. That sounds great. Well, I mean, I greatly, greatly appreciate you all for all your work and progress on it, and, and hopefully, we can, we can really keep moving forward and, you know, making a great. Brad, is there anything on our end on, from the hearing and the reading of this, should we do besides putting it in the record?
Do we need to make a motion to hear this application next month, since it's been deferred so many times? This, I mean, I...
Well, so the, the application, I believe they were referring to is, is, is not the master street plan application, it's a preliminary plat that, yeah, King's Crossing.
Copper Run, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's, we're not, we're not dealing with, with that plat application right here. This is just the change in the master street plan. So, but we, we don't, we don't need, you guys don't need to vote on it or make a motion for anything this evening unless, unless I've misread the bylaws. But basically, this is a report, so that way you guys can consider it, and then, then later, we will address the, the actual, you know, vote, so.
So, then we will rehear the copper run next month?
No, no, that, that's not, I, I mean, no, no, that's, that's not my understanding. We're, we're, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna hear the master street plan issue, I believe, before we hear the, the plat.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it, so with the special committee, with our recommendation, I think we need to know as a staff where you would like us to go with this next.
Is this something?
No, go ahead, Commissioner.
Is this something that has to go to the board of directors?
Yes.
Okay. So, do we need to approve it or do just for it on?
Well, we know that Mr. Worthing is moving his piece next month, so.
I mean, based on that information you just gave us and the movement of that piece, we've been dealing with this for months now. We, I know you said we don't have to make a motion or approve it, should we just wait for the?
Could we?
Could we go ahead and move it and do our part?
Could...
Could we go ahead and vote to?
I mean, if we can, I'd like to make a motion.
We would, I think, I think that we would need to give notice.
Yes. Yeah, I, I, I don't know what staff has done as far as that's concerned for, for tonight, but we need to make sure that all the adjacent landowners have been noticed. I don't, I don't believe that the plan was to vote on anything this evening unless I'm mistaken. It was just, it was to present this so that way we could take it up at a later, basically the next meeting, I believe, is...
Were these, were these property owners not consulted as, as a part of this graphic that we're working, looking at?
The, so the, the meetings that occurred, folks were noticed for those meetings, yes, but I, but, but before the, the commission weighs in, I, I want to make sure that we've noticed everyone. I don't want to, I don't want to have, you know, an, an issue where we changed the master street plan and someone has not been noticed and doesn't get a chance to weigh in on it for, for the decision-making phase. It's my understanding that everyone was properly noticed for the meetings, and I'm, I'm gonna have to punt that one to staff because I didn't send the notice.
Mr. Chair, I think the, the committee made a report to you about potential changes. If you want to see those changes, I think all you need to do is tell staff you wish us to bring a formal application to you, and we'll do that at the next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be good. Just for the record, you can bring a formal application to the next meeting. We have heard the report. We've been reviewing this, and we've been dealing with this for months now, and then at the next meeting, you know, hopefully, God will, we can get this, get this approved. All right?
Does that have to be a motion, or is that just? That's, that's just the commission giving staff there. A directive.
That's, yeah, that, so, my, Mr. Chair, my, my understanding is that what we're doing here tonight is just getting feedback from the commission on, on the proposal, and I, I don't believe we need to vote on anything this evening at least.
Thank you. Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, staff. Do we have any, I guess we'll move on, do we have any other citizen comments? Yes, sir. Please state your name again for the record.
Yeah, my name's Justin Buck with the Wolf Street Foundation. I just wanted to make an offer to any or all of you to kind of review those national standards that I, I referred to earlier and, and maybe share some ideas to clean up the sober living, chem-free confusion that happens all over the city and, and frankly, leads to some bad outcomes for people that we try to serve. So, just an, an open offer, I'll, I'll send an email or, or something, but would love to chat with you about some ideas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other citizens, comments? Yes, sir. Please step forward, please state your name for the record.
Thomas Burnett. I just wanted to see, did everybody receive my letter that I sent? Get a chance to read it? The good one is states.
I believe that application is already...
The letters, the letters in the correspondence folder from Mr. Burnett.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I was just wondering, because I just bought fifty acres in there strictly because of those covenants, which you guys are, I don't know if you're saying they're not good? It's one of the reasons I bought it.
That's, that's not, I, I, I can't advise you on whether or not that covenant is good.
It's why I bought it.
I, I, I understand, I can't advise you on whether or not it's good. We, this body does not enforce restrictive covenant.
How can they not be good?
We, we don't deal with covenants.
I understand that, but you, but you're, but you're sitting there reading them.
Ms. Chair.
And knowing that I'm sitting there and they're pointing out that I just bought the land, and then everybody voted in favor for those guys without even asking how they're gonna pay for the place.
Ms. Chair.
Not to mention the fact that you don't have to rezone it to save trees, you just don't cut the trees down. The place is fourteen thousand five hundred square feet, so not many people can afford it, and that's why they want to rezone it, is to sell it for a higher price.
Also, not something that this commission deals with.
Right, but, but still, they said they wanted to rezone to save the trees, so the commission should know.
Mr. Chair, citizen communication cannot include items that were on tonight's agenda. They can include general topics, but not items that were on the agenda.
I'm just wondering what to tell the board of directors.
Well, we, we try to be friendly, you know, even though that's, we try to be friendly and try to hear everyone. But, no, look, I mean, you bought fifty acres, I understand your, your...
It's zoned R two.
I understand your concern.
With covenants that I'm bound by, that they all are as well, including Jane Green and including Bobby Wilkerson.
I understand. And, and you know what, sir? You know, we would love to, off the record, maybe listen to you, I'll definitely listen to you, but, I mean, on for this, due to the facts, we just want to keep everything, you know, within order.
Can I get a show of hands of who read my letter? I read your letter. Two? Three? Four? Okay. All right, thank you all.
Thank you, sir. If there's nothing else, meeting is adjourned.